Good afternoon, buenas tardes, and welcome to the July 20th Board Business Meeting. Welcome to our board members, MCPS staff, and members of our community who are joining us here today, and those that are watching this meeting via livestream. Now let us begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call roll to recognize board members and establish that we have a quorum. Let's begin with Ms. Yang.
Good afternoon, everyone. Julie Yang, District 3.
Good afternoon, buenas tardes. Grace Rivera Oven, District 1.
Good afternoon, Shepard Evans, representing District 4. Good to see everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. Lynn Harris, and special welcome to my new seatmate, Mr. Said.
Hello, everyone. Samia Said, representing students. Great to be here.
And we have two board members joining us virtually, Ms. Wolf and Mrs. Madrowski. So let's begin the meeting with the approval of the revised agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous with those present. Okay. All right, we're moving on to Agenda Item Number 3, Human Resources and Development Report. Dr. McKnight?
Good afternoon. I move forward. The monthly Human Resources and Development Report for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous with those present.
Thank you. Again, I have two death resolutions that I will share with the board this morning. Whereas the death on June 10th, 2023, of Mr. Nigel Pierre, bus operator with the Department of Transportation, has deeply saddened the staff, students, and members of the Board of Education. During the 14-plus years Mr. Pierre worked for MCPS, he was highly dedicated and supported the success of every student and staff by providing excellent service. Mr. Pierre was helpful, a great multitasker, and an innovative thinker. In addition to his bus operator duties, he also served as the new employee coordinator. Mr. Pierre demonstrated respect and consideration for others and was a pleasure to work with. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools express our sorrow at the death of Mr. Pierre and extend our deepest sympathy to its family.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous with those present.
Thank you. The death on June 22nd of 2023 of Mrs. Monica Proctor, school secretary with John T. Baker Middle School, has deeply saddened the staff, students, and members of the Board of Education. During the 16 years Mrs. Proctor worked for MCPS, she was prompt to ensure that students were not affected by any unexpected absences and promptly made aware of any scheduled changes that would impact their day. Mrs. Proctor was trustworthy and had strong communication skills. She was a team player and available to help whenever needed. Mrs. Proctor was extremely organized and professional. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express our sorrow at the death of Mrs. Proctor and extend our deepest sympathy to her family.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. Mr. Said? That's unanimous.
Thank you. All right, and I do have one Human Resources and Development appointment that I'll be moving forward today. And that appointment is requesting an appointment of Ms. Carla R. Britt as Supervisor, Elementary Mathematics in the Department of Pre-K through 12 Curriculum and Office of Curriculum Instruction and the Office Deputy Superintendent. Ms. Britt has been employed with MCPS for 23 years as a teacher, resource teacher, acting assistant principal, instructional specialist, content specialist, and most recently instructional specialist in the Office of School Support and Well-Being. Ms. Britt looks forward to joining the elementary mathematics team to guide curriculum implementation and professional learning and ensure staff deliver outstanding math instruction to the students we all serve. Shout out to Carla's spouse Jill and her big sister Kim, who are celebrating this accomplishment with her as they watch along online.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous. Okay. So now we move on to recognitions. Item Number 4, Dr. McKnight.
Thank you. Our first recognition is recognition of retirement of Montgomery County Public Schools personnel. The individuals on the attached list are retiring or have retired from Montgomery County Public Schools. And whereas each individual, through outstanding performance of duties and dedication to the education of our youth, has made a significant contribution to the school system, which is worthy of special commendation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education members express their sincere appreciation to each individual for faithful service to the school system and to the children of the county, and also extend to each one best wishes for the future. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution is published in the Employee and Retiree Service Center webpage and available to each retiree.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous.
And I think about that recognition and how we recently were able to return to our in-person recognition of retirees and to see the sense of pride and family that had just existed among them in Montgomery County Public Schools for over years, and with their families, who very much been a part of the journey, was just thrilling. So we just congratulate them again and are so excited. And as we said at the ceremony, we'll probably see many of them again soon. Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to public comments. Public comments is one of the opportunities we have to hear views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it's not our practice to take action on, at this time, on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, program, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of address for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, and other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Those who demonstrate disruptive or disrespectful behavior during public comments may be asked to leave the room. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. We have 19 people signed up today to provide in-person testimony. Each speaker will receive two minutes for comments. When your name is called, please approach the table, speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thirty seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on, accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Push the same button once more at the sound of the buzzer to turn it off. In addition to our in-person speakers today, we have one person signed up to provide audio testimony. We will play these submissions once the in-person testimonies have concluded. Copies of testimonies can be found on Board Docs where they are posted with their other materials for this board meeting. So if we could get our first three speakers to please come to the table. Jax Kobe, Kirubel Fresenbet, and Wobale Walde.
Hello to Dr. McKnight and the MCPS Board of Education. I'm Jax Kobe. I use they/them pronouns, and I'm a rising senior at Wooton. First, I want to thank you for your ongoing work towards inclusive and welcoming learning in MCPS. I want to let you know that it means so much to me to see your support, and I'm sure it means the world to those in the county who are younger or less comfortable with who they are. To see people in power standing up for diversity is a welcome relief. However, inclusive books are only one aspect of schools that feel welcoming. One shortcoming countywide is the inadequacy of gender-inclusive facilities. Everyone needs to pee, but as one of many non-binary and gender-nonconforming students in MCPS, I have struggled when it comes to accessing the bathrooms at school. Having gender-neutral bathrooms and changing rooms throughout all MCPS buildings would help make MCPS a more accepting and welcoming place for all. The inclusive facilities at Poolsville and Greencastle are great, as you and Mr. Adams discussed last meeting, and I would love for each building to have this style bathroom, but I understand that the high initial cost makes this unfeasible in the short term. But what about the more than 200 buildings that already exist? Here's a short-term solution. Replace the signs on the bathroom. Change the sign from men's bathroom to gender-inclusive bathroom with urinals. I know you all are busy, so let me make your life easier. On Amazon, gender-inclusive restroom signs are around $10 per sign. If 200 MCPS buildings each get three signs, the county would have more than 600 gender-inclusive restrooms for a cost of $6,000. In a county with a $3 billion operating budget, pfft, fine. And I've even made you a mock-up policy that could help you implement this. I'm graduating at the end of this upcoming school year. My goal is for each MCPS building to have multiple gender-inclusive restrooms by then. I believe that we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Kirubel Fresenbet, please.
Greetings. My name is Kirubel Fresenbet, and I'm a proud father of two girls that attend public schools in Montgomery County. I am here to express my deepest frustration regarding the recent addition of books in the English language arts and literacy curriculum with the sole purpose of instilling gender and sexual identities on children's mind. MCPS has made consistent effort to rationalize the inclusion of these books, asserting that they promote inclusivity and diversity. As an immigrant and a person of color in this great nation, the words inclusivity and diversity have deep and positive meaning to me. True inclusivity means embracing individuals without exclusion based on their identities. It does not entail actively pushing specific identities and agendas by force. Diversity entails acknowledging and respecting differences. It does not involve pressuring students to conform to certain identities through intimidation and authority by teachers. Anyone who reads these books and observe how they are spaced along different grades can easily see that they are not meant to promote diversity or inclusivity, but aim at glorifying LGBTQ lifestyles, breaking the parent-child bond, and indoctrination of sexual ideologies using a technique called the method approach. If anyone here have a doubt that books can instill gender and other identities, then you have a lot to learn about pedagogical science and self-awareness. I urge MCPS to embrace the genuine essence of inclusivity and diversity and refrain from bullying families. I urge you to give a priority to mental health of every child rather than purchasing books that reach few book publishers. Please, please, use your power for the good of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Wobale Walde. You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Wobale, and I'm a resident here in Montgomery County. I have children who are below two years old. I'm here to ask if every child is a child worth protecting in the eyes of MCPS Board of Education. I'm here to question if the mental health of every child is taken into consideration regardless of their sexual identities. Seeing how MCPS conducted the evaluation of books that promote eligibility identities to include them in the English language arts and literacy curriculum makes me to doubt what equality and inclusivity means for this Board of Education. I read the database of accountable evaluation system to see how these books are evaluated, and I found that there was no psychological impact assessment conducted on those books on non-ELGBTQ children and children from non-ELGBTQ families. This led me to question if the Board classified children in our community as first class or second class. It's important to understand the Board's position in this matter. It has significant implications for equality and inclusivity within our educational system. I would like to ask why MCPS is so oblivious to the fact that the Establishment Clause of First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution prohibits the government from endorsing or favoring identity, religious, or beliefs of a specific group in the society. This country was founded by immigrants who were forced to migrate from their homeland because of their religion and other matters. The Board of Education forgot this foundation. Promoting eligibility identities by force on the two children using the power given to you serves as a great injustice to non-ELGBTQ families and children. Indoctrination to our children is neither okay nor acceptable in any way, shape, or form. The school should prioritize matters in other science classes instead of the work agenda. Parenting is irresponsible to parents, not the schools. We, parents, have the right to make decisions with respect to our children. The school should be for education, not for political battles. The school shall respect parents' values and beliefs. We have been trusting you for long, but we were wrong. And as the saying goes, when injustice becomes law, struggle becomes a duty.
Thank you. Thank you. If we could get our next three speakers to please come to the table. Negede Walde, Rafai Arifin, and Mulat Abebe. And Negede Walde, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Negede Walde, and I'm a resident here in Montgomery County, and I have children attending public school. I'm here to ask if every child is a child worth protecting in the eyes of MCPS Board of Education. I'm here to question if the mental health of every child is taken into consideration regardless of their sexual identities. Seeing how MCPS conducted the evaluation of books that promote LGBTQ identities to include them in the English language arts literacy curriculum make me doubt what quality and inclusive means for this Board of Education. I have gone through the database of accountable evaluation system to see how these books are evaluated, and I found that there was no social impact assessment that was conducted on the potential physical impact of those ebooks on non-ELGBTQ children and children from non-ELGBTQ families. This led me to question if the Board of Education children in our community as first class or second class. It's imperative to understand the Board of Education on this matter as it is a significant amplification of quality and inclusivity within our educational system. I would like to ask why MCPS is also unaware to the fact that the Establishment Clause of First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution prohibits the government from endorsing, favoring identities, religions, and beliefs of specific group of society. Promoting LGBTQ identity by force to children using the power given to you serves as a great injustice to non-LGBTQ families and children. And as the saying goes, when injustice becomes the law, struggle becomes a duty. I can assure you, your parents will never surrender to your injustice. Thank you.
Rafai Arifin, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Rafai Arifin. I've been a lawyer, a civil litigator, for the last 13 years, but I'm not here in that capacity. I've also been an imam, a leader of a mosque, for more than 10 years, but I'm not here in that capacity either. I'm here because I'm a parent of a girl entering third grade and a boy entering fifth grade. Two years ago, we moved to Montgomery County because we wanted our children to be part of a community that embraced diversity as a positive engine for academic excellence. Politics have no place in the classroom, liberal or conservative. We know that diversity, equity, and inclusion as part of our curriculum reduce instances of bullying, improve academic outcomes, and foster cohesiveness within a heterogeneous student population. As a Muslim and also a lifelong liberal, I want my children to learn about people who are different from them. They have observed how I embrace LGBTQ clients, colleagues, and friends. However, I expect that they will learn sex education within the context of family life. In Wisconsin v. Yoder, the Supreme Court recognized the fundamental interest of parents to guide the religious future and education of their children. MCPS's removal of opt-out has been a disastrous move that has taken an enormous toll on thousands within our county. It has led to more students being bullied and made to feel unsafe in a school system that is already struggling with the dramatic rise in these incidents. Dr. McKnight and board members, you have the ability to ease these growing tensions at a time when many students are struggling with stress, anxiety, depression, poor self-esteem, and suicidal ideations. The last thing that children need is to be placed at higher risk of stigmatization and bullying because of their faith/identity. Don't put children at risk because of politics. America was founded by communities fleeing religious persecution. Restore opt-out today.
Mulat Abebe, you may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Mulad. I'm a resident of Montgomery County. I'm a father of two boys. Today I'm here to express my frustration regarding recent addition of book of promoting LGBTQ community lifestyle in English language and literacy circuit. If the childrens do not need to others to complain within their values of feeling confident themselves, nor do they need to others to learn about their life by forcing feel included. Mental and psychological problems cannot be addressed by evading law, and self-esteem cannot be established and strengthened by force indoctrination and bullying others' community member. Furthermore, I'm concerned about impact of those books on non-LGBTQ childrens who are being forced to read texts that contradicted their deeply held values and beliefs. Forcing non-LGBTQ students to read those texts coupled with physical and guarding meditation by their teachers will cause emotional disaster, divert their attention from the curriculum purpose, lead to alienation and marginalization, and hamper their cognitive development due to conflict identity being pushed upon them. I would like to ask all the board, is that the mental health of non-LGBTQ students are not a concern of the board at all? Are non-LGBTQ children second-class citizens in the eyes of the board? Imposing favorable belief on others will not foster antagonism among community. I argue, member of this board, to consider the well-being of all students, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have our next three speakers. Please come to the table. Please come to the table. Layali Esquidev, Teodros Shume, and Harriet Kunn. Layali Esquidev, you may begin.
Dear MCPs Board members, as the mother of two MCPs students who has taught her kids the values of modesty and respect for all, I join the voices of thousands who call on you to restore the opt-out option. At the parents' meeting with our elementary school principal back in March, there were parents of different faiths and even atheist parents who asked to opt their kids out of the LGBTQ inclusive texts readings in order to protect our children's innocence. We all had different faiths and backgrounds, but we all agreed on one thing: this is unnecessary exposure at a very young age. We did review the stories in the selected materials, and many did not seem to be based on science or facts. There are assumptions that all children are ready to receive and correctly process such complicated topics and information, and in reality, there is no set age for when each child is ready for this. Each family should decide when and how to educate their children on this according to their values and belief systems. It's not fair to assume that our ask to opt out and do this part of the education on our own terms automatically equals hate or rejection. Why operate out of fear and marginalize and push away so many on the quest to counteract hatred or exclusion? Making the public sphere less welcoming to and tolerant of differences in moral values and beliefs is essentially squeezing many of us out. Without considering the long-term consequences of who is being alienated and pushed away, you are making a bad situation worse. I also want to implore you to consider that we do have other options. We're considering homeschooling, moving, investing in private schools. So my questions to you are, with the potential exodus of so many of us who feel unheard and disrespected, would public schools with less diversity serve anyone better in the long term? And do you have a backup plan to come up with lost resources as a result of the alienating changes in the name of inclusivity?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teodros Shume, you may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Teodros Shume. I'm testifying today as a U.S. citizen who live on the county and also Orthodox Christian parent. In your recent communication targeting the protest against your decision to add LGBTQ books, you made it clear that it was not fair that someone identifies the addition of pro-LGBTQ books in elementary school. An LGBTQ curriculum, I ask you, is it fair that the school board introduces these books as reading instructional material when in fact the content and all the teaching guides indicate they are prepared toward teaching about sexuality? Is it fair that the board takes away our opt-out options on March 23rd, when until March 20, it communicates that there will be an opt-out? I don't want my kids exposed to sexual ideas that cannot fully understand what the implication and the consequence are at such an early age. I don't want the teacher enforce one-sided gender ideology, which goes contrary to my belief and my constitutional right. The school board denied my God-given parental rights and undelivered rights under the nation law by denying the opt-out option from instructional materials about human sexuality and sexual identities. I teach my kids to treat everyone with kindness, respect, and equality. I understand people suffer from gender dysphoria, but impressing and promoting one-sided gender ideology by force in classroom on young minds will only make things worse, not better. I'm telling you, all Board of Education members, you will regret what you're doing future young generation. If you truly aim to diversity, equality, and fairness, work with parents, work with community, and treat our ideas equal. Restore our opt-out. Thank you.
Harriet Kunn, you may begin.
I want to pass out.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm here to talk about a different topic.
Press your microphone.
Good afternoon. I'm here to talk about a different topic. Honorable members of the Montgomery County School Board of Education, I'm Harriet Lorenzki Kuhn. I've been a school psychologist for over 32 years. It's been my passion to advocate for helping children with the use of therapy dogs in schools. Over the years, I've had success in using a therapy dog with children and have witnessed multiple magical interactions between dogs and handlers in schools. This is a no-cost therapeutic counseling service that is needed in MCPs now more than ever. It's hard to find any program that matches having a kind and compassionate trained dog in a school being there to assist children. That is why I'm requesting that the Board of Education enact a resolution that legitimizes therapy dogs in MCPs and an additional board policy change that stipulates the specifics of how these trained dogs and handler teams are to be used in schools. I've previously testified in Annapolis regarding this, and I'm working to get a therapy dog bill passed statewide, but I want to start in my own backyard, especially since MCPs has used dogs in schools for many years. Once this pilot program is formalized, we will be a trendsetter in the state of Maryland and be the leader in setting guidelines and boundaries for this program, which will help other counties. MCPs has had an MOU with pals and a long history of using dogs in schools to help students. Data-driven research shows these specially-trained dogs improve well-being and mental health. Children exposed to dogs are naturally able to talk, they're naturally able to learn about kindness, empathy, and self-control. When dogs are allowed in schools, students make improvements in the areas of social-emotional functioning and in terms of empathy, kindness, and self-control. When there's a friendly dog in a school environment, walking the hallways, visiting classrooms, or being a part of a read-to-a-dog program, staff and students thrive and everyone wins. Therapy dogs change school climate. All MCPs students should have access to working with a therapy dog. Thank you for your
Let's have our next three speakers. Please come to the table. Chris Heiser, Berhane Teklemichael, and Azam Abdel Karim. Chris Heiser, you may begin.
Today, we are gathered here to discuss a matter of most importance, the future of our bright and intelligent young minds. It has come to my attention that some have raised concerns about how these students express their views, often seen as echoes of the parents' beliefs. But let us remember that our children are not mere parrots. They possess the capacity in critical thinking and feel comfort when confronted with information that challenges their deeply-held moral values, be it from the Muslim or Christian community. Yet there have been statements made by this board about labels of white supremacists and xenophobes. Shame on you. I believe such terms are often thrown around carelessly in certain circles, becoming convenient crutches when one lacks thoughtful responses. But my friends, name-calling does not lead us to a meaningful solution. It only portrays a lack of understanding, disconnected from the reality of society. Allow me to share a personal perspective. As a Maryland state trooper, I have encountered these hate groups. I witnessed firsthand a soulless hatred that they propagated. I looked into their eyes and saw the harm that they inflicted on humanity. However, I must emphasize that these groups do not represent our local Christian and Muslim communities. The vast majority of individuals within these communities uphold values of love, compassion, loyalty to God, and country. To those who have spoken divisive words, I've urged you to take a step back, apologize, and consider the impact of your rhetoric. Our community deserve respect. No, we demand respect and understanding, not words that divide and discriminate. Let us embrace true inclusivity and seek equitable solutions for a betterment for all. If you decide against us, shame on you. Our children, our choice, our money, our voice. Reinstate opt-out. Thank you.
Berhane Teklemichael, you may begin.
Yes, thank you. My name is Berhane Teklemichael. I'm a resident at the Montgomery County. I have been closely following the debates surrounding the inclusion of certain books in literacy curriculum. Today, I am here to express my concern and advocate for a fair and balanced approach to education. MCPs regulation clearly states that instructional materials should be selected to support the intended curriculum. However, according to MCPs media communication, those books are selected not for their unique and legitimate purpose of advising literacy standards, but because they celebrate and positively partially sexual identities. The inclusion of the books that focus on sexuality in the English literacy curriculum rather than compensative health curriculum is blatant attempt to mark the state's opt-out law. Forcing people to celebrate individual sexual identities is not inclusion, but forced assimilation, which is downright dictatorship. The Establishment Clause of the First Amendment bars the government from endorsing any specific group identity from religion. In case anyone here forgets, the Supreme Court of the United States has made it clear that the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution ensure parents' fundamental right to decide the care, upbringing, and education of their children. I don't know what gives MCPs to our city to violate parents' constitutional right by declaring institutions may not choose to opt out of such instructional materials.
Thank you for your testimony. Azam, you may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Azam.
Press your microphone, please.
This one? Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Azam Abdel Karim. I begin by seeking refuge and protection in the Almighty God from the cursed Satan, and I begin by God's name, the All-Merciful, All-Gracious. I invoke peace and blessings upon His prophets and messengers. I want to state that the U.S. judicial and public educational systems are inherently secular, as we all know. Understanding this fact does not equate to acceptance or approval what these systems advocate, particularly when it's direct conflict with God's divine laws. As he, the Almighty, frequently emphasizes in the Quran, Muslim's holy book, indeed to him belongs the creation, the dominion of the heavens and the earth, and indeed to him belongs all the legislation. However, to each his own, and as you do, as we do, we shall find, we shall discover in this world and in the hereafter. The Board of Education needs to understand that religion cannot, again, religion cannot be compromised when dealing with people of faith, and the value systems derived from such faiths, not allowing children to opt out of so-called sex education, is a direct infringement, total disregard, and disrespect to the value systems of families of faith. It is a brazen attack on family values and God's divine law, an attack which oftentimes bears many regretful consequences and implications. As a responsible parent of five children, boys and girls, and as spiritual community leaders, I strongly reject any mental or psychological manipulation of children and parents, especially when it's done via the educational system. It is not the job or responsibility of the educators to dictate to children or parents their value systems. Parents, children, and community leaders have been deceived by and lost tremendous confidence in Montgomery County's educational systems. It is time to reinstate freedom of choice and to restore opt-out. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could get our next three speakers to please come to the table. Nadira Rashid, you may begin. Just press the button under the mic.
Good afternoon, everyone. In the name of the Almighty, I would like to express my concerns about the decision made by the Board to prevent families from opting out of their children from the classes that require their children to study from instructional materials that conflict with the family's long-held religious beliefs and principles. As set forth in the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, the families have the right to freedom of religion, and they have the right to teach their children as they see fit on this matter. I'm speaking on behalf of the religious beliefs and principles of the Muslim community, as well as the Christian, Jewish, and other faith communities who share our beliefs on this issue. Your policy subverts the ability of the parents to teach their children their own religiously-held sexual ethics. Your policy violates their constitutional right to freely practice their religion and contribute to an atmosphere of intolerance toward faith communities. The Islamic opinion on this issue is firmly rooted in our religious texts, the Quran. Our opinion on this issue emanates from the word of the Almighty and not just a whim or thought. Every aspect of our daily lives are governed by what the Almighty says in the Quran and by what our prophet, peace be upon him, has said and done. Thus Islam being a complete way of life and not just a religion with various dogma and rituals. You say you want to protect the rights of trans children and their families, while simultaneously you violate the rights of other children and their families. Right now, other children are being bullied and labeled as bigots, and some of them are being, but unfortunately, they are not being protected by school officials, and perpetrators are not being reprimanded or dealt with. There is an imbalance and injustice in the push for the new classes being taught in the schools. If MCPs is determined to teach these classes, then those who do not wish to participate in the classes should be allowed to opt out. No one will be harmed if the children opt out of these classes. On the contrary, everyone will understand what true tolerance, justice, and fairness is. Your actions demonstrate that people should not have an opinion other than your opinion on this issue. Where's the justice and fairness in that? Tolerance and acceptance has to come from both sides. Inclusivity means protecting the rights of all the children, not just a few.
Thank you. We have your testimony. Mohamed, you may begin.
Greetings to the Board of Education members and Dr. McKnight. My name is Mohamed Amin Ben Yusuf. I'm a former MCPs student from the class of 2017, and as a representative of the Muslim community, I refuse to allow MCPs to mandate our children who as young as three years of age are reading books such as Pride Puppy, a book asking toddlers to spot sexual concepts such as underwear, leather, drag kings and queens. This is extremely inappropriate within a multitude of faith traditions. You see, opt-out does not undermine the existence of LGBTQ people. It merely allows various faith communities to opt out of books and class discussions, which compromises sincerely-held religious views on sexuality, including that which is heterosexual in nature. MCPs, you pride yourselves on upholding American values of inclusivity and democracy. Yet, in the name of democracy, you perpetuate indoctrination by dictating what children should think instead of focusing on how to think through education. In the name of democracy, you celebrate one community while also sending a message to multiple other communities that they do not matter and demand that they disregard their deeply-held religious beliefs. In the name of democracy, you perpetuate the continued ridicule, bullying, and ostracism being faced by those who do not wish to abide by unquestioning conformity. I would like to end by reminding the Board that the doctrine of communism forcibly pushes people into a melting pot which promotes a single uniform entity, where everyone speaks, thinks, and acts the same without any regard for diverse cultures, lifestyles, and philosophy. Democracy, on the other hand, can only exist when we legitimize free thought, expression, and protect human rights universally, an ideology which unifies human beings, preserves individuality, and truly celebrates diversity. Let us strive to uphold our pledge of allegiance and genuinely establish one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You may begin.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bezmer Beyeni. I'm a priest, and I'm a professional engineer, but I'm here as a parent, and I have children who go to the Montgomery County Public School, and I live here in Montgomery County. Maryland law grants parents the right to opt out of sexually-related materials in the comprehension health curriculum. The law is based on the belief that attitudes and values about sexual identity are subjective and that parents have the right to direct their children's education. I have deep concern about MCPs communication with parents regarding the addition of books promoting LGBTQ+ identity in the curriculum, since these books are misplaced Since these books are misplaced in English language art and literacy curriculum, MCPs insists that parents cannot opt out of these materials. Since MCPs does not have the authority to violate the rights protected under the Fourteenth Amendment, I kindly request that you address those mistakes, whether intentional or unintentional, you should consider relocating these materials to classes specifically designated for teaching about sexuality, which would allow parents to exercise their opt-out right. Especially when children's confused, they will become crazy. Not only children's, nowadays, parents are stressed out due to this issue. So we don't need crazies everywhere. So please, let's work together. And please, take back those books to the sexual classes. Thank you.
If we could get our next three speakers to please come to the table. Vinish Mustafa, Madiha Arson, and Zaeem Beg. Vinish Mustafa, you may begin.
A special kind of education-
That's the button.
Yep, sorry about that. Dear diary, it's hard being six. Today we read a weird book, My Rainbow. It was about a boy who wanted to be a girl. He was a transgender girl. A transgender girl? That's a big word for somebody my age, but it just got harder. My teacher asked me if I was a cis girl. Well, what's that? A girl who wants to be a girl? Well, why can't I just be a girl? Because, she said loudly, a girl can be many things. Can everything be many things or just people? My teacher said I was asking too many questions. But that's what happens if I don't understand things, hard things. So a boy just has to wear a wig to be a girl? So you can wear a wig if you're a boy, she said, when you're little, but then when you grow up, you can go to the doctor and be a complete girl? Dr. Stepansky, our dentist, does that? No, there are other doctors, gender-affirming ones. Let's talk about that later, but why not now? Can I be an animal, miss? A pig? Sure. I came home and mommy had made pork chops. I couldn't eat a pig being a pig. Mommy told me I was not a pig and that I was a girl, and it really hurt my feelings. I don't think mommy loves me anymore. I asked mommy if she was a cis mommy or a transgender mommy. Mommy said I was thinking too much. I think I was. Can we just keep it simple? I don't want to choose between my mommy and my teacher. Aren't they both supposed to be right? Now, I ask you all, can you guarantee that these discussions are not taking place post-reading My Rainbow? Children have unlimited imagination. There is no concept of censorship. Feeding them concepts that they are not able to digest, comprehend, and differentiate provides confusion and distorts view on their simple reality. I will not strip my children of this innocence. I will not put them in the center of a highway with traffic coming from all different directions. They are mine, not yours. Reinstate opt-out.
Madiha Arson, you may begin.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of the 80% of the population of different cultures and religion who have the mutual concerns regarding ongoing school issues. According to the new data released by the State Department of Education, there's a large decrease in language arts proficiency with only 42%, while math proficiency is decreased by 31% in MCPs. Moreover, restrooms in MCPs have become dangerously unsafe due to overdoses of drugs, assaults, and fights, according to The Washington Post. These statistics are self-evident that MCPs is failing to provide a structure that ensures not only academic success, but also a safe environment for the students, which is the sole purpose of the board members for which they were elected. Funded by parents' tax funds, the board has a great responsibility to trust the parents and protect the parental rights and work on improving academic achievements in a school while leaving the spiritual, moral, and social teachings for the home. Furthermore, restrooms are designed to fulfill the biological need and are not a place to determine gender identity. So the restroom should be separated by the biological gender in order to decrease the misuse of these policies, which has been proved by some terrible incidents in other states. School systems always have welcomed children with all types of mental challenges, as well as different religious ideologies, without teaching challenged behavior or one's ideology to the other students. We're asking board members to restore the opt-out, trust us, and convince us intellectually instead of depriving us from our constitutional rights. My last message is for the LGBT community. Asking for the opt-out from the LGBT subject doesn't mean we're denying your child's existence, and it doesn't indicate we're against your community. It simply means we all belong to a highly civilized nation under one God, who can respectfully agree to disagree on personal beliefs. Thank you.
Zaeem Beg, you may begin.
Thank you. So I think everyone said, you know, how we feel as religious families, right? We want to be heard. We want our choice. We want our option. And our option is to opt out. Unfortunately, what we're seeing is, you know, this other group is having the ability to control us. They're being able to tell us, no, you must sit down. NIH, CDC, American Psychiatric Association, they did a lot of studies on what's beneficial for the LGBTQ community. And you implemented all four of their, of what they said you should implement, right? They gave you four options. They said implement these things. It'll help them. I read through it. You did all four. You've done all four. What, none of those covered, none of those agencies covered? And I know someone last week spoke last, he said Trevor Project, 45%. They're throwing out numbers, false numbers, fake numbers. Go to NIH, go to CDC, go to the American Psychiatric Association and get real numbers. And there was nothing in there about what happens when you remove the opt-out. There's been no studies on this. This is just, I know you guys aren't making this decision. It'd be foolish of us parents to believe that you all are making these decisions. We know it's coming from somewhere else. You can have, one of you can have pom-poms about it, but it's not your choice. You had no power in that. We can tell. But you have the power. And if you're gonna sit up there and talk about like, my mom taught me, you know, in the South to stand up and this and that, well, stand up for us too. You know, she didn't say, don't stand up for them and stand up for everybody else. She said, stand up for everybody, right? So stand up for us too. There's a lot of us in this community, and we don't agree with that lifestyle. And when we look at it, we say, all right, let's see what they did. What's so beneficial about that? Let's take something from that. We don't see it. We like what we like. You know, I like the way my wife looks, what she wears. She covers herself. I like that. I think, damn, she's fine. I like that. I don't look at these other people in this other society and say, I want that. I don't want that. Why do y'all think I want what y'all trying to feed me? We don't want that. Just let us be. Let us live. Live and let live. Let us opt out. We don't want this. Stop trying to force it on us.
Final, a final in-person speaker is Rachel Hall. If you could please come to the table. You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Hall, and I am the parent of two MCPs students. Let me start by thanking you for the MCPs policy on inclusive and welcoming learning, particularly the use of educational materials that depict LGBT-plus characters and themes at the grade school level. I'd also like to thank you for empowering your queer staff to be open about their identities and family life, because it has been proven time and again that genuine connections are the foundations of learning. One of my children is non-binary and queer. At their elementary school, the staff has created an educational environment that includes and embraces LGBT-plus students and families by reflecting their diversity in its curriculum, staffing, and culture. This has benefited both of my children and their classmates enormously. But now, parents feel they must remove their children from class completely rather than let them learn about families like mine. Much of the opt-out arguments are couched as parental rights and religious freedom. But what it boils down to is that the LGBT-plus community is being told that their very existence is abnormal and that their identity should be a source of shame. My child is normal. Their transgender classmate is normal. Their lesbian teacher, mother of four, is normal. I believe that an opt-out policy would have the effect of othering my child, which is exactly what MCPs's policy on inclusive and welcoming learning is designed to prevent. I encourage this board to continue to support its educators in incorporating LGBT-plus-themed materials into the general classroom setting, where all children will benefit from learning about the diversity of the people that make up the MCPs school system. Thank you for your time.
We received, we received one audio testimony. The testimony comes from Richa Tripathi. If you could please play the audio.
Good afternoon, Montgomery County Public Schools Board of Education. My name is Richa Tripathi, and I am a student at Kennedy High School. A few years ago, I watched an episode of No Good Nick, a TV series on Netflix. This episode featured two gay teenagers in a relationship. I didn't understand, because at the time, I didn't really know what being gay meant. I'm ashamed to say this, but back then I also thought it was a little weird, since I hadn't seen a queer relationship before. I continued to watch shows and read books with queer characters, and eventually I did understand by educating myself. Not only do I now understand the concept of being queer, I'm also a queer student myself, which I did not know at the time. Note, this episode did not make me gay. What this episode did instead was introduce me to the concept and the community behind it. It opened doors for me that, to this day, I'm glad had been opened. Now I'm an advocate for the LGBTQ+ community in several organizations across the county. This is why I fully support MCPs LGBTQ+ inclusive curriculum without the possibility of opting out. Including this diversity in our books and our curriculum means giving every student the opportunity to humanize those in the queer community, because we are real people. Removing the opt-out option allows students, regardless of their own beliefs or the beliefs of their parents, to be able to at least understand the community, since after all, we, the students, are the real customers to an all-rounded education. This means that we can't just cherry pick things we want our kids to learn about for the sake of our own beliefs. And instead, we should teach everything. Thank you.
This concludes our public comments. The next business meeting of the Board of Education for public comment is August 24th, 2023. Signups for public comment will open on Thursday, August 17th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. In addition to the online signups for public comment, we allow for in-person, same-day signups when space allows. Unallocated slots may be filled on a first-come, first-served basis on the day of the meeting. In order to sign up in person, please arrive 15 to 20 minutes before the start of the open session and sign the form. In-person signups will close 15 minutes before public comment begins or when all slots are filled. I will now open it up to my colleagues to see if they have any comments or questions. Please turn your light on. Mr. Said?
I just want to first say it was great to see students here. And I think that, you know, the ideas brought up by the student and also just around therapy dogs would be great to look into for MCPs staff. I know that, you know, Richard Montgomery, where I go, had therapy dogs, and, you know, it worked great, so it'd be great to look into that. And then just in relation to a couple of comments I heard, I think that, you know, no matter which side you're on, it would have been great to have more communication and just, you know, clarity throughout this process to just prevent misinformation from spreading on either side. So I think in the future, you know, when this whole process is going out, it'd be great to just have a lot more communication and engagement with the community. And I don't know what that would look like, but it'd just be great to look into that. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I just wanted to specifically thank our two students, Jaxx and Erika, for their testimony, because it shows a unique courage to come forward publicly in the midst of so much going on, including a room full of people that would deny your biology and devalue your humanity and say, just having somebody representative of you in a storybook is unacceptable. And I, I think it does show unique courage, and I really do appreciate their willingness.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if there's no other comments, then we will-
Hold on, I did have a question.
Ms. Evans?
It would not turn on, sorry.
I just, for, since I'm new, and I, and I would just like to have some history behind about the books and how that whole process started. I think that would be helpful to many of us.
Thank you, Ms. Evan Rivera. So I think it's a great question. How did, how did we get here? I'm gonna ask some of our staff to come down, representative from curriculum instruction and legal, because I think it's important, as you just said, to even maybe build some context to the interest of our community, how this came about, and why we are here having the conversation. Why don't you start, Dr. Pugh, because this really was something that began from implementation of curriculum some years back. So why don't we start there?
Sure, thank you. So back in 2017, Johns Hopkins reviewed the current curriculum that existed and recommended that you go to a purchased curriculum. So in 2018, an RFP was put out, and we went through the process of looking for a curriculum. And part of the requirements was that it would be a culturally-responsive curriculum. And Benchmark was selected and implemented as a pilot, implemented in a limited number of schools. And then those schools were surveyed on a variety of topics of what they saw. Overwhelmingly, they felt that the curriculum resources that were selected that we thought were going to be culturally relevant and inclusive lacked diversity. They did not look like our students. Our students didn't see themselves in the stories. And they were not relatable to both culturally and economically diverse backgrounds. Both groups that were surveyed, that included staff and parents and instructional staff here at Central Office, stated that the materials were not inclusive of all cultures and all identities in what they thought they were originally purchasing. So Benchmark, the company, worked with the curriculum team here to build out additional text, to supplement it, so that our students could see themselves in the books that they were reading. We don't have a curriculum. We have a curriculum for English. And in teaching English, the skills of understanding literature, reading, responding, writing, we use a variety of texts. And it was intentional around our own policy that those texts be representative of our community and who is in our community, including ethnic groups, gender, age, people with disabilities, and orientation specifically. So once those things were revised and additional texts were identified, there was some professional development that occurred with the reading specialists that exist in each of the elementary schools. And in 2021, one book was introduced as a read-aloud that was a supplemental text that had to do with LGBTQ population. It was called Call Me Max. After that first initial launch, then a committee came back together. There was a book evaluation committee in the spring of 2022 to approve more books. And they went through a selection process. Those books were then purchased in the spring. So the books that we're talking about here that have been recently added to the curriculum, the seven of them, arrived at the schools in July of last year, so about this time. Principals received information that said, just inventory them, hold on anything. We need to do some professional learning. We need to do some training. We need to do some guidance around it. So then, over the summer, 130-plus reading specialists, counselors, and media specialists attended the training that was voluntary at that point, but it was offered to support in implementation of use of the materials. There was a principal update that then came out in October from the compliance unit that explained what was coming, what they were getting, what the intention was to use it, to make sure that we were using texts that were representative of our entire community. Once that memo went out, several of our schools went right out and started using it. It was a five-minute read-aloud in a class, and there was guidance around it, and others were struggling with their communities and asking for support, asking for the district to give them the language to use to be doing this work. And so we paused, and we had several stakeholder meetings. We had several internal discussions about what the challenges were, what was happening in the community. in the community, what was being heard, and what was happening. So as we paused, we then took a look at what was happening in schools where people were choosing not to be in the class when this was being read, and what was happening is it was having a discriminatory effect on a whole population of students that was unintended. And so in January 5, we sent out a Things to Know communication that stated about that we were doing this, we were adding these texts in response to what principals had asked so that our community was aware of what was happening, and a link to those texts was provided out to the public. Then in March, we had a principal professional learning community where we said, honor what you've said to families to this point, but no longer can people choose not to be part of instruction because it is inclusive of different types of people. And so that is sort of the big timeline as I know it.
And in speaking of timelines, what are some timelines that we need to be on the lookout in the coming months in relation to this topic?
Ms. Silvestri, in response to the background, with response to the timeline, you are aware that six plaintiffs have filed a lawsuit against the district asserting that the decision to discontinue the opt-out is in violation of their religious and parental rights. That lawsuit will take some time to go through the judicial process. So in the meantime, the plaintiffs have filed what's called a motion for permanent injunction, which would stop, would require, if granted by the court, would require the district to reinstate the opt-out. The district has filed an opposition to that motion, that those motions will be, that motion will be heard on August 9. And the plaintiffs requested that, ruling doesn't always come at the same time as the hearing, and the plaintiffs have requested that a ruling be issued by the start of school, before August 28, the first day of school. So sometime between August 9 and August 28, we may hear from the court about whether or not we will be legally required to reinstate the opt-out.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Just very quickly, for clarification purposes. We're hearing a lot that these books are part of the sex education curriculum. Could you just clarify for me and for those in the community if that is actually a fact?
So, no. Actually, I think we're confusing quite a few things. Opt-out is a term used in the Code of Maryland to be able to opt out of or not participate in very specific sections of the health curriculum that deal with family life and human sexuality. That's a very governed process, specific, parents are given notification, and then they have that option. In what was happening at the beginning of all of this is people were doing something called alternative texts. They were giving students who requested it, whose parents requested it, an alternative text, doing a different read-aloud, if you would. So it's not a curriculum about sex, sexual identity, sexual orientation. It's not a class that doesn't deal with sex. It is an English class that deals with teaching and learning of the standards of reading and writing, speaking and listening, that uses a variety of texts. And those texts are purposefully intended to be supplementally inclusive because our original curriculum purchased did not have representation in it. And so a variety of texts are used to help students learn those skills needed for reading, writing, speaking, and listening.
Okay. Mr. Said?
And then just another point of clarification, just for anyone who doesn't know, are the teachers required to read all of the inclusive texts, only some? Kind of what does that look like?
Yeah. So it is the expectation that they use the resources that the district has purchased to help the students learn the skills. And in each unit, there's a variety of texts for them to choose from.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, thank you. I just will reiterate an observation that I've made, because I think the history here of going back to the Hopkins review and our intent to purchase a curriculum that was fully inclusive and that, for many reasons, the board at that time thought that the Benchmark curriculum was going to meet the standards that we were looking for in fully inclusive curriculum. We learned relatively quickly that was not truly the case, and so MCPs then looked to supplement the deficiencies in the Benchmark curriculum by providing, you know, English-language arts materials that were fully reflective of the community. But my concern remains that when we chose fully inclusive texts that were reflective of different cultures and religions and different, you know, racial groups, we chose to treat these books that were reflective of members of our LGBTQ community differently. And that is, I think, work we need to do. Why did we believe that our LGBTQ community was somehow different from our culturally diverse community and our racially diverse community and all of the different religions that are practiced here? And again, that the fact that we chose to treat this level of inclusivity or this type of inclusivity differently is troubling to me, and I hope that we can, in our own internal work, seek to understand why that was.
Okay. Any other comments? Dr. McKnight?
Thank you, President Silvestri. So I just want to thank everybody for coming and sharing comments as you have for the past few board meetings. I think for all of us, this is about reflection on change. Change, even though we may see it all differently. I want to remind us of the one thing that we have in common, and it is our children, that we know, and that they are healthy, that they are happy, they feel valued. We have not met one adult in society within their lives, and they have not, if they have not felt valued, we don't see the cost of that. So I am saying, this is not going to be easy for us, but I will say, the board and myself, we continue to make a commitment to listen and to hear and to engage with our community. Because after this decision and many other decisions that will impact us, we still have to be able to come together for our children. So the question for us is now, how do we do that? And I think we must. We must. They are watching us, our children are watching us, and they are expecting all of us to do what's best for them. And they all are very different, and we've got to deliver for them. So I will say I look forward to our continued engagement with this community that we love and know, that we value, every single one of you, every single one of you, whether we agree or disagree, we value you. And so we are going to continue to make a commitment to listen, to work with you, and to have our path moving forward and really trying really hard and fighting to figure out what that is so that everybody feels valued. That's the commitment. So I just wanted to share that, as I know there are many questions and thoughts, and unrest around this, but at the end of the day, we have to do that, and I believe that we will.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. Thank you, Dr. McKnight. We will now move on to our next agenda item. That's agenda item number six. It is a presentation of our board retreat priorities. So I will be leading that discussion. So every year, the Board of Education meets to identify its priorities for the year so that we can direct the superintendent in terms of what we would like the superintendent to focus on for the upcoming year. We were overdue. We had some new board members, so it was time to refresh our board priorities from the previous retreats. And so we met, and we would like to take this opportunity today to present to you our board priorities for the year. We have a fabulous strategic plan, which has a lot of strategies, a lot of data points and metrics that we use to measure progress. But that's a lot of information, and so we want to provide the superintendent more focus, and therefore, that's where the priorities come from. We have four priorities that come from our strategic plan that we hope will give focus because if, you know, if you focus on everything, you don't accomplish much. So that is our goal here, to focus on some things that we can have some clear deliverables. We want to clearly articulate to the school system and our community how we're going to focus this group, this work. And so after looking at the current climate, looking at our data from previous years, listening to the community, we have come up with these four priorities. Next slide, please. I will cover one priority at a time, and then I'm going to ask my board colleagues, after I cover each priority, if they want to elaborate or add anything to what I have said. So our first priority is for MCPs to improve math and literacy skills, specifically in the transition grades of three, six, and nine. And the board will hold the system accountable through progress monitoring, using a robust system of continuous improvement that regularly evaluates data, sets metrics to gauge progress, and provides high-quality intervention to improve achievement in math and reading. It's clear that we want to continue to focus in literacy, but we also want to see an emphasis in math because our data shows us that we need to make more progress in that area. It's not unique to Montgomery County. We see systems across the country struggling with the same type of struggles with math, and it is our expectation that the strategies that we will see implemented this year will help us trend in a positive direction. Now, how will we measure progress? Our strategic plan already has measures that we track year to year towards literacy and mathematics, and I urge our committee and I urge the administration to revisit those outcomes. Generally, in 21, 22 school year, we met our target for math and literacy. But when we disaggregate that data, that's when we see the work that needs to be done, the urgency for us to focus on those areas so that we can make progress. Each board meeting, we'll be discussing how we're progressing on improving outcomes for students in math and literacy. So throughout the year, we will discuss items such as how our math coaches being rolled out, professional development, and the success of the implementation of structured literacy, the academic impact of summer school, et cetera. So now I will open it up to my colleagues if they wish to add anything that I have missed. Because I really don't want to be the only one speaking here. Ms. Yang?
Yes, we are all very excited about this priority because for school system, how to teaching and learning, prepare our students for college, community, career, and life is our ultimate goal. That's what we are working for every single day. And the board, I think this year, choose to focus on transitional grade three, six, and nine, that's intentional and purposeful. Transitional grades this year, as we have evaluated, that it's at times our students experience more challenges because of the changes. By focusing on transitional grade, we are actually are connecting the lower grade and the higher grades. It's a trickling effect, and it's ascending effect. So those grades were chose, were picked so that we are intentional in helping our students to do well in math and literacy and to improve our instructions in these areas. So we have put in the resources, like Ms. Silvestri mentions, the math coaches. We have increased our special education staff and our ELD, English as a Second Language staff. So all these things are going to help us move forward.
Thank you. And I see Ms. Wolf has her hand up.
Thank you. I had to get off of mute first. I don't want to be repetitive, so I'll just say that the Strategic Planning Committee will be taking up all of these areas, and you will see at our next meeting, is it our August meeting or September meeting, we'll be presenting our plan for the year. So you'll know when to tune in to whatever it is you're specifically interested in. Elsie, can you tell me which month we actually are going to talk about the plans?
September.
Okay, so if you tune into September, I know Lynn has you all believing that she has the sexiest committee, but we have the committee that has most of the responsibility for academic performance. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. I truly believe that we can be a leader in this country in terms of our academic achievement results. We have incredible talent in this school system. We have resources, and so I look forward for the upcoming year because I know that we can really move the needle on the academic achievement of our target groups. So moving on to our next priority, which is building a safe and inclusive school climate. MCPs must provide the well-being of its students and staff by fostering a climate in which everyone feels safe, welcome, valued, and engaged in order to be ready to teach and learn. The board will hold MCPs accountable and evaluate the effectiveness of ESAR-funded well-being initiatives and review attendance and safety and security data. So we know that along with academics, safety and well-being is fundamental so that we can learn, so we can socially and emotionally grow. We are committed to this goal as a board, and that we, but we also recognize that many of our well-being initiatives were funded through ESAR dollars, and those are concluding and drying up this year. And so we are prioritizing the evaluation of those programs, our social and emotional programs, to see which have been the most effective so that we can advocate for the continuation of those programs in our school. Again, I urge folks to look at our strategic plan because they are yearly targets that we're holding ourselves accountable to meeting every year, and that data is found in our strategic plan. In the strategic plan, we measure trainings, surveys, and district-provided health and wellness programs for students and staff. In particular, in our retreat, the board identified student attendance as a significant concern and identifying which initiatives, as I mentioned, provide the highest return on investment in terms of social and emotional well-being. So I'll open it up to my colleagues to see if they'd like to elaborate on that. Ms. Revetta Oven?
This is a nature that's been always close to my heart, the safety and the well-being of our students, and I think we have heard from the community and even our own principals and teachers about issues, especially in the high school, of attendance and the impact that COVID-19 has had on our children and our youth, still having an impact mental health-wise today. So I'm really glad that we're able to support MCPs, to support superintendent in ensuring that we have and we are a safe haven for our children and our young people and our staff. So I'm excited, and people can go and look at some of those things that we're going to be doing. But, you know, it's just the challenges that we are facing, and this has a huge impact on academic achievement, especially with populations that historically have struggled even before the pandemic with a lot of the issues, including of access to healthcare, to mental health, to even just getting vaccinations to be able to start school on time, or, you know, just getting a physical to be able to play sports after school. We have a socioeconomic divide in this county, and I'm glad that we're recognizing that and we're able to put in the support, especially with our wellness centers in many of our high schools. Thank you.
Ms. Yang?
Yes, I'm also a longtime believer of that attendance, student behavior has an impact on our teaching and learning. If we do not address that, we'll be putting out fires all the time. Now, I would like to see, I know the system is working on looking at attendance and looking at safety and security data. I would like to see that while we engage in this conversation, that not only central office staffs are involved, but we include attendance secretary, we include teacher office staffs are involved, but we include attendance secretary, we include teachers, principals, community members, so that we, we get the perspective of boots on the ground, what measures are feasible, what kind of impact it will have. So I hope that, you know, it will be voices of different stakeholders will be heard.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I just wanted to say how much I am appreciative of the, the way the board and the school system are now really intentionally focusing on how well the work we're doing and the money we're spending on it is achieving the goals of the system. And that's comprehensive from our academic benchmarks and our academic goals, how well of our students, especially in, in transition grades doing, but also on our wellness and well-being work. And I think the only way to know how well we're actually doing and to make good decisions about what we keep, what we don't, is to make sure that we are continuously doing that monitoring and evaluation. And I really do see a renewed, or I really do see a very focused prioritization of that work now, which I, again, really appreciate.
Mr. Said.
Yeah, Ms. Harris stole the words right out of my mouth, you know? Like, I think that from the student perspective, seeing how students have utilized these programs, the specific focus on wellness and mental health, you know, putting that at the forefront, saying this is what these programs are for, we're here for you, they've been working. You know, my, my school has a Bridge to Wellness program. We have mental health specialists there. I've seen wellness centers, you know, across the county, and you know, one that really stuck out to me when I visited was Watkins Mill High School. They've had a wellness center, I think it was since 2013, and I, I look and they have couches with students talking, counselors walking around, interacting with them, hey, do you need anything? Are you okay? And it was almost like the idea that I had in a near-perfect wellness system was kind of done there. And so I really, you know, want to continue the work of looking at what's working, and let's expand that, because I'd love to see those programs, and also ensuring that students know about these resources. Something that I've said, I think, a million times, but I always continue to say is when I went and talked to thousands of students, and I asked them, do you know the name of your school psychologist? Do you know the resources? Half of them said, oh, we have a school psychologist? And then, you know, the other half didn't even, you know, really know the names or any of those resources. And so I think we need to continue communicating that information, what that looks like, you know, it could be a million different things. But I know we did have, you know, over a thousand, you know, referrals, self-referrals. So I think it's definitely working, and we just need to keep innovating on that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I will move on to our next priorities. If we could get the slide. Priority number three is to support two-way communication between schools and families. MCPS must improve its communication infrastructure to build more trust and understanding among families, and enable timely sharing of relevant information. The board will hold MCPS accountable for improving the ways in which families receive information, engage with the school system, and provide their feedback. Now, we've had incredible progress in this area, but we want to keep focusing to improve our, our communications. It's a big school system, so it's always a challenge to reach everyone. So we have to do it in various, wear various ways, you know, every channel possible to us. It is complicated. People get communication in different ways, and it's hard, you just have to offer it in many ways, so that they get it the way that they want to receive it. And it comes from the teacher, it comes from the principal, it comes from the school district. But how families engage with the school system is so important, making sure that they have a voice, that they can and do provide ongoing, authentic feedback to inform our decisions, including how they want to receive communication. That is a big priority for the board. We will be working with the superintendent and her administration to prove, to explore how to build out ways for families to talk to the school system. We acknowledge how challenging this work is, but if we keep doing what we're doing, we're still going to get the same results. We have to reach into all communities of Montgomery County and welcome them to the table. Colleagues, anything to add? Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I do, I really do appreciate the way the, the work, the two-way communication work is being prioritized and is evolving. And I think I'm so glad that we, that MCPS has moved away from having just, this is the way we do this, this is the way we communicate with community, this is the way we communicate. Now we are really moving into a time of understanding that the needs of the communities and their, the way they prefer and most effectively communicate is continuously evolving and changing. So in some ways, we will never be, we'll never be done figuring out how to do it, because it's never going to stay the same. It's always going to move and change. And I think I really appreciate the way we are bringing in newer, younger, and I, as somebody in my seventh decade of life, I can say that, younger people who get the, the way communications has changed during the last couple of decades, and are helping us do that work, and we're also valuing our students, who are truly expert communicators in, with the communication, I can't remember what you're calling it, advisory group? Anyway, we have students now advising us on communications, and that, I think, is going to help us make a change, too.
Ms. Evans.
Sure. And I just want to add, as the chair of the State, of the Communications and State Guard Engagement Committee, that the board and the committee has been working very closely with the superintendent's staff to make sure that we providing an avenue to allow our community to come in and to share their thoughts and their feedback. We've been able to hear from staff members, as well as parents and students. So we're continually engaging the school system and being informed, as a school system, I should say. And then I want to just give a shout out to the Communications Department, because they've worked really hard to make the changes that we've been seeing, just around crisis management, how we're doing that differently. If I had to pull up another example, Dr. Trim Camp came before the committee, and we got feedback from the community, and by the next committee meeting, we were able to show our community how we were taking their feedback and putting it into immediate action. So I think we've said this quite some time, and, and you've heard it repeatedly, we don't have to be sick to get better, but we're continuously trying to improve. And we are trying through the Policy Management Committee, our chair, Ms. Pandrowski, is online, through our Policy Community Engagement. We are really trying to make sure that we're intentional about how we engage our community, how we involve them, and not just talk to and speak to our community, but listen. So continue to email us, come to our board presentations, give your comments, come to our community forums and share your feedback, because we do welcome that. And I just wanted to share that. So proud of the work that we're continuing to do in our priorities, how we're infusing that in the presentations that you see here at the board table, how the superintendent is making it a goal of hers, and how you see it infused into our budget. So stay tuned.
Thank you. Ms. Revetta Oven.
Thank you. Not to be repetitive, but I, I'm really looking forward to changing the paradigm of engagement, in a sense. What does engagement look like after COVID-19? What does engagement look like after the huge demographic changes in our community, and how non-traditional groups, you know, engage, or how they don't engage, but yet they, they represent a large part of our population and the children in, in our schools? And how we engage with them? You know, the traditional email, Google translation no longer really get us there anymore. And, and owning that, I really appreciated that this, this year, saying, you know what? It's not really working. Let's look at other avenues. I'm, you know, really glad they, they heard about the WhatsApp, and that that's a way of engaging, especially with our immigrant communities. And letting it go of the idea, you know, we've been doing this for 50 years, or 30 years, or 20 years, and also the engagement with our own students and the, the Student App creation, and getting feedback from our students, and, and validating their points of view. I'm really excited for, for this area, that I think, you know, it's a great area to actually get more, more community engagement from those groups that traditionally either feel like, you know, this is not a place where they belong, in a sense, or they don't know how to access it. And just to be able to walk in our community shoes, that not everybody engages to the traditional email, right? So I'm really excited in, in working in this area.
Okay. We can move to the fourth priority. Next slide, please. And this priority is about improving recruitment, retention, and the distribution of high-quality staff. This is not a new priority, but we want to continue to focus on this. We would like for MCPS to improve the processes by which it recruits and retains staff with a culture of respect. This will foster a diverse pool of highly qualified staff and leadership that can be equitably distributed across schools and classrooms. The board will hold MCPS accountable to improve its educator pipeline by expanding the, expecting the, the expansion of the Grow Your Own Initiative, supporting strategies and initiatives that create opportunities for authentic partnership between the school system and employees, and implementing practices that result in the equitable distribution of staff through appointments. Again, you know, having our schools fully staff is incredibly important, if any of our other efforts are to bear fruit. We must be able to buck the national trend and attract more highly-enabled people into the education profession. We know that we have a fertile field to recruit from right here in the district. That's why the Grow Your Own is, initiative is so important to us, and it must be expanded aggressively. We know that this won't be a complete solution, but showing our students why coming back to, to work at MCPS is a good option and should be a component of our strategy. We also know that retention of our staff is dependent on a lot of things, but a key component to any retention strategy has to be predicated on building a sense of belonging, a sense of ownership, and of community. That comes from staff having opportunities to authentically partner in the work, beyond giving input, actually helping to craft solutions. Finally, the board is committed to the equitable distribution of talent throughout the county. These actions, this requires intentional review of data, the identification of trends, and the willingness to take corrective action to place educators before the students that need them the most. Our strategic plan, under the Operational Excellence Pillar, has objectives of improvement for the recruitment strategy in order to increase high-quality workforce diversity. I turn it to my colleagues to elaborate.
Sure.
Ms. Evans.
Yes, I was going to say, stay tuned. Ms. Keys, our chief of OHRD, has been here for like, two days, two hours, two minutes, or whatever, and she is working it out to make certain that we are diversifying our, our workforce. So I just say, stay tuned, because we are doing great things, right? There is, there is a shortage, but she is finding a way to make a way to, to make certain that our teacher, I mean, not our teachers, I'm sorry, that our students see themselves in, in the front of the classroom. So just thank you.
Ms. Revetta Oven.
This is an area that I have not been shy about sharing my feelings, where there needs to be improvement. And this is not recent for me, as somebody who is a product of MCPS, who did not see anyone who looked like me, you know, from elementary school to almost high school. But again, we have seen a huge shift in our demographics in our communities, and I think it's so important that our children see themselves in the professional staff that is teaching them. It is just crucial that that diversity that our school population has is seen in our professional, even development or training and so on, with those who interact with our kids. So I'm really excited about our Grow Your Own program, but it's not just about growing your own program, to me, it's about growing your own, you know, your own talent, but mentoring your own talent, right? And then promoting your own talent. So supporting especially those like myself, who are first generation, who, you know, this is not a traditional career for my family, or this is not a career, you know, that my, my grandmother or my great-grandmother have been in this trajectory. For me, the mentoring part of it is so vital in order to be able then to achieve, right, the diversity that, that we need in order to, to make sure that our kids feel like they see folks like themselves. So I'm really excited about this as well, and I know Ms. Keys has a great energy, and she's already, you know, working on, on a lot of these benchmarks. But again, it is so vital that we do that, because we do have schools in this system that we have up to 90% representation of, of certain groups. And yet, we have less than 5% of that community represented in the professional field. So it is really, really important. So I'm really excited about this benchmark as well. And, and I want to thank Superintendent McKnight for, Dr. McKnight, for supporting this initiative. And I know this is something that is, is close to your heart and, and those, those officers who are sitting around the table right now. Thank you.
I just wanted to make a quick correction. As a person whose name is mispronounced on a regular basis, I said April Keys is Key, singular, right? Not plural. Just wanted to make, I wanted to point that out.
Ms. Owen, it's Oven.
Are you talking to me? Are you talking to me?
For her.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I just want to appreciate my colleagues, Ms. Rivera Oven and Ms. Evans, for mentioning the Grow Your Own, because the component of Grow Your Own that is most exciting to me is our long-term strategy for creating the most vibrant and truly diverse workforce that reflects the reality of our county, is the kids that are in our seats in our classrooms right now. And so the, as we really look to model a workplace that we want them to aspire to joining, and as we really encourage them to think about us as the place they want to build their profession and their career, once they are, you know, walking out of their, you know, high school graduation, I think, you know, looking to see how we're doing that work to encourage them to think about a career with us, not to, you know, in the classroom, and, you know, in the finance office, and in the nutrition work that we do, and so many professions are embodied here. Join Dr. Kapunin's staff as a healthcare, somebody with a healthcare, public health background, you know, all of these are careers that are integral to the work that we do. And helping the kids in our classrooms right now see that, and, and want to come back to us and see that possibility, to me, that is the most exciting part, and that's our long-term solution right now, anyway.
Ms. Yang, and then Ms. Wolf.
My colleagues have highlighted the Grow Your Own initiative. Under this priority, I would like to highlight the, really the authentic partnership between the school system and the employees. And as a mom, and as an educator, we always talk about how to instill the inner drive, or promote, or enhance, or bring out the inner drive in our children or students, and have them take ownership of their learning and development. I think it is same that when we work with adults, that we treat it as sincere partnership, that there are ways for everyone to contribute ideas, solutions, so that all of us take ownership of the work we do. So I'm really excited, and to, as the system, have this priority to see what we can create together.
Ms. Wolf.
Am I, okay, I'm off mute. I, I don't want to be repetitive, but I do want to associate myself with the comments of my colleagues. You know, I am always been most concerned about retention. We hire good people, but they don't always stay. And so I want to remind people that we've been working on an anti-racist audit, and we're hoping that the results, that the application of what we plan to do as a result of the audit will result in improved retention. But I also want to suggest, while we always talk about Grow Your Own, it always seems to be in the context of teachers, and Ms. Harris just mentioned, you might want to go to work for Dr. C., Dr. Kev. I think it would be a good idea sometimes for our various compartment, departments to go to career days at the schools and share out what they do, because people don't realize the various employment opportunities that are here at MCPS. They do think it's teaching principals, assistant principals, they don't think about things like engineers. So I think it would be a good idea if we could sometimes rotate people through the departments to see what they're doing. Thank you.
Ms. Sylvester, can I add something? So thank you for all of that. I appreciate the, the focus on diversity and on, you know, a great workforce. And it had me reflecting, reflecting on a, on a story. Just yesterday, I was over at the Just yesterday, I was over at the print shop, just meeting some of the staff and seeing how things are going over there, and there were several student interns who were working there over the summer, and then several others who had graduated in the last couple of years who were working there full-time now. And so that's just another example of a space outside of the classroom where we have opportunities for kids, and when it comes to diversity, we need to look no further than our own student body. So I was very pleased to see that, and it really fits in well with some of the topics that the Board has brought up today. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. So those are our priorities for the year. Again, we have a very robust strategic plan, but we wanted to focus the work for the year, again, improving our math and literacy scores, safe and inclusive schools, two-way communication between schools and families, and improving the recruitment, retention, distribution of high-quality and diverse staff in MCPS. So we will use these four priority areas to drive our agenda setting for the year. So all of our meetings will be focused on these four priority areas, and of course, the things that we have, we are mandated to report on at the Board table. But that is how the Board priorities translate into our directive to the Superintendent and to the staff, and we are very excited to begin the school year implementing these priorities. So thank you for that opportunity to share our work, our Board retreat priorities, and now we will move on to agenda item.
Can you comment before we move on?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Go ahead.
So I just first wanted to thank the Board for the work that you did to make sure that the system is getting some clear direction around what it is that we want to accomplish together. That's always good, and the nice thing is, these goals tie directly right back to our strategic plan, right? So we've been consistent with our community and with our work around the things that we believe are going to allow us to make progress in the system. I just wanted to come back to some data that we have been looking at and talking about, because it gets to a lot of, and how we see it, we have moved the needle significantly in this year, and I wouldn't dare take all the credit for it. The staff in the system is amazing, and they have made a strong commitment to these areas in terms of ownership of the strategic plan as well. This year, we've spent a lot of time talking about the progress of literacy, knowing that math is right there when we need to really double, you know, double down on that. But this year, you know, we had 11 to 23-point percentage increases in above-benchmark in our DIBELS assessment, the science of reading, what we said we knew would represent significant progress in the area of literacy. So I say that because it's not "but," it's "and." You know, we are going to, you know, we've started that progress, and we will continue. And we're going to continue that and look in the specific, as you've said, you know, subgroups, because we've got to make it a level playing field for every student within the system. So that continues to be our commitment, and I am excited about it, thrilled about it, and I know we're going to have much to celebrate as we continue to buckle down in these areas. I love the idea, you know, continue to have boots on the ground. Every role in the system helps us to achieve all the priorities that are here. And I think about our students, you know, being the benefactor, beneficiary of all of that planning, but also a part of the solution. Ms. Wolf and Ms. Harris, you mentioned the Grow Your Own program, and then, Ms. Harris, you mentioned it being the long-term product of it. That's exactly right. So you think about, and I say it all the time, and I mean it, everything that we need in the system, they're sitting in our classrooms, and the good news is, there are 162,000 of them. We have 25,000 staff now, so we're going to be sitting in a really good position, you know, in future years. But that's not going to happen tomorrow, right? And when I think about our students, particularly thinking about fastest-growing populations of students in Montgomery County Public Schools, many of them, we take much pride in helping them to become first-generation college students who can then come back into these professions. And so when I say that, I'm saying they are who we're looking towards in terms of making that shift. And so I wanted to share that, because I do want to say, this is going to be something that we continue to focus on, but we have, yes, immediate strategies, but the long-term strategy is going to get us more of what we want over time, and just continuing to acknowledge that. And thinking about our students, is Max here today? Max is one of our interns that we have in Communications.
He was here earlier.
Yes, okay. Anyway, he's one of our recent graduates who's going to college in the fall and is doing his internship here in the district this summer. We hope that Max comes back. You know, Mr. Hall talked about the students over in the print shop. We have actually learned that the more we bring them into the fold, and like you say, beyond just the positions that are in the school, but even into Central, I mean, we have one of the best examples, I must say, sitting right over there, Eric Gersi, you know, who is a former SMAB but is now an assistant in the Office of the Chief of Staff. So he actually went to Career Day this year. Stop by his office, you'll see the signs that the students wrote to him and saying, "You're what?" And that's the example that we want to continue to share with our students. There are many things that you can come back and do in this school system, and we need them to do it, right? To fill out a reflection of what we want to accomplish in the community. Oh, there he is, see? There he is. Hi, Max. Thank you for coming over. See, and this is how we train them. When you're needed, show up. And here he is in minutes. So, I mean, just him being in and around Communications, that's where that reciprocal learning starts to transfer. He's not just here working, but he's actually teaching, as I say about our students all the time. We're teaching them, but they're teaching us just as much. And so I wanted, Max, thank you for coming in. I just wanted to give you a shout-out. And he actually emailed me and said, you know, is there an -- I think it was back in the winter, is there an opportunity to do some internship in the building in the fall? And thank you, because you lit a fire, because we were like, you know, we need interns all over the place. And so that's why we have so many in this district, and we continue to build that out. So I am excited about our students, you know, leading the school system, because none of us will be here forever, and who's going to continue to be able to take on the reins and run the school system to be the great school system that it is, and it's them. And so thank you again for your feedback, your thoughts, your commitment to these priorities, and I look forward to us continuing to work together on every single one of them as they continue to be a focus, and as you will see, will be a focus of the system as we receive that direction from you. So I'm excited about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. And now we are moving on to our next agenda item, which is Agenda Item Number Seven. Item for Discussion, the MECA Business Learning Institute Charter School, and I turn it over to Dr. McKnight.
All right. All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Silvestri. So I will ask Ms. Hazel and members from the MECA Business Learning Institute, MBLI, could come to the table. Thank you so much for joining us today. And today, we're going to engage in a discussion regarding the MECA Business Learning Institute, other known as MBLI Charter School, and the Board action. So just to give us a premise of what has happened up to this point, on June 28th in 2022, the Board declined an award to a charter to MBEF College and Career Academies Incorporated to open the MBLI Charter School in Montgomery County Public Schools. And then, on January 26th of 2023, in response to an appeal by MBEF, the Maryland State Board of Education directed the Montgomery County Board of Education to award contingent approval to the charter for the '24-'25 school year. So that's not this school year starting in this fall, but the next fall. So the Maryland State Board of Education also set a directive setting the condition for approval that MBEF demonstrate by July 1 of 2023 its ability to meet the financial requirements for attaining and renovating a suitable building that could be used for that purpose in Montgomery County. On June 6, 2023, MBEF requested and was granted a waiver from Policy DNA Management of the Board of Education property. This allowed, this waiver allowed for the required request for the RFP, which is Request for a Proposal Process, be allowed for MBEF to pursue a temporary lease of MCPS property, meaning we did not set forth, or you set forth, that there would not be a requirement to go through the RFP process. So as a part of that approval, the Board specified that approval of a lease would require MBEF to provide a facility plan that included a transition plan to mitigate the impact of opening the school in a different location than previously planned, and for the change to a new permanent location shortly thereafter. Just reminding us that the original location was to serve our Gaithersburg Union, and the location that we shared was available is in the Potomac area. So today, MBEF will present their plan to address the requirements of the contingent approval and a facility transition plan. So thank you for joining us, and at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Hazel.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight, and good afternoon, President Silvestri and Board members. When we last met about the MBLI Charter School, as Dr. McKnight shared, the Board approved a waiver of Policy DNA so that MBLI could pursue a temporary lease of MCPS property while they were pursuing their permanent location. Members of the MCPS Curriculum Office, Facilities Team, Finance Team, and the Legal Office met with MBEF. We've been meeting regularly from March 31st to June 23rd to provide ongoing technical assistance to them. On June 16, 2023, MBEF submitted a draft of their facilities plan, and the MCPS Technical Assistance Team provided feedback related to the fiscal and facilities requirements to meet the contingency established by the State Board. On June 30, 2023, MBEF electronically submitted their plan to address the requirements. You have received a memo that contains an analysis of the Charter School from the review team, and now you're going to hear from them as they present their plan to you. After the presentation, the Board will vote to determine if MBEF application to operate a charter school in Montgomery County is approved or denied. So at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Lashandra Graham and Tracy Cooper from MBEF College and Career Academies Incorporated.
Thank you, Ms. Hazel, to President Silvestri, Dr. McKnight, and to the Board members. We thank you for allowing us the opportunity to see you face-to-face. We've been talking to most of you all virtually for the last couple of years, so it's actually delightful to be able to be face-to-face to sort of have this exchange, and we hope that the presentation today will lend true understanding of what we're trying to do and sort of can solidify a partnership with MCPS, which has always been our hope. And so we put together, like Ms. Hazel said, a presentation. We were directed to create a presentation that did an overview of what we're going to do, and so that's what the presentation today will just, it'll highlight some of the components of the plan. It is not all-inclusive, but it's a highlight. So we can get started, and she already introduced us, but I'm Lashandra, and this is Tracy to my right. So she already introduced us, so we can skip that part in the agenda. But we can go to the next slide. I don't know who's controlling this slide. So in our agenda, like I said, we just have a couple of things that are highlighted. They've already been shared with you. You've seen the presentation, so we'll just start to flow through it for the sake of time. You can go to the next slide for me, please. As Ms. Hazel mentioned, we were awarded our approval through a reversal of the 2022 denial of our application. And so we started with this slide so that we could really spend time talking about what does that actually mean. Montgomery County right now doesn't have any charter schools authorized, and to date, I believe there has been perhaps one. But our team comes from a background of authorizers. We've worked for school districts that have authorized a number of schools. We've actually consulted with charter operators directly, and so we have sort of a more succinct understanding of how to move in this space. So we wanted to start at the very beginning, which is the Directive by the State Board to reverse your decision to deny our application and to award us a contingent approval contract. And so as a part of the Board's opinion, there are six elements that we want to sort of go over and sort of more strategically identify and discuss. First being contingent approval. That represents an action taken by the local board that involves an approval dependent on certain circumstances. It represents a safety net for the local board on a charter operator's performance. The next part of that, condition. A condition is a requirement involved in a contract that details the duties and rights of those involved. Ability to meet is defined as can act in circumstances, including performing a job, reasoning, or making decisions. Financial requirements are defined as financing required to launch or establish a new product, organization, or business. In Opinion Number 2303, the Maryland State Board of Education wrote, "Having found no reasonable articulated basis for the denial of the charter, we reversed the local board's decision." Again, this is not a review of our application. This is a discussion of where we intend to locate in the county. We applied last year. The Board unfortunately denied our application, and we appealed that decision. So the decision regarding our application has already been determined. The other component of this is attaining and renovating. Attaining is defined as to succeed or accomplish something after effort towards an expected end is accomplished. Renovating, modification of an existing structure or a portion thereof that results in a disturbance of painted surfaces or renovation that does not include minor repair. I'm sorry about that. So for us, in this scenario, we, as a startup organization and registered nonprofit, do acknowledge that we require financing to launch our public school. That's not, that's never been of question. The financing requirement actually requires two components, working capital and long-term capital. We approached four different financial institutions, M&amp;T Bank, Highmark Schools Development, Charter Schools Development Corporation, and Enterprise Community Loan Fund to fulfill this requirement. Each of the financial institutions have conducted an analysis of our comprehensive business plan, financial projections, and budgets outlining anticipated revenue and targeted expenses, as well as evaluated our credit risk. M&amp;T Bank is a multi-state community bank that has been in business since August 29, 1856. That makes them 166 years old. Highmark was founded in 2005. That's 18 years. CSDC has been working specifically with charter schools since 1998. That's 25 years. The Enterprise Community Loan Fund has been around since 1990. That's 33 years. When taken together, these financial institutions have nearly 250 years of experience and expertise delivering financial products and solutions, providing technical assistance, financing the acquisition, development, and operation of affordable quality school facilities, and supporting communities by facilitating expanded access to school choice program options. They are the experts. Based on their expert pre-qualification evaluations, each of the four financial institutions mentioned offered us various financing options with approvals, quotes, and term sheets, which were submitted to you guys as we obtained them. The actual repayment terms, which are subject to the project scopes, amounts borrowed, interest rates, duration of the financing arrangement, can all be negotiated and will be finalized once we receive the charter contract from MCPS. The documentation provided to MCPS from each of the financial institutions is evidence that we have the ability to obtain the financial resources needed to support facilities, including startup and renovation, and should relieve concerns about our ability to do so. Next slide, please. Okay, so let's talk about our plans. As Ms. Hazel mentioned, we have petitioned to rent the Radner facility. We were apprised that the rental would only be for two years, which we are okay with. It is our goal to actually prepare our long-term facility, which we also presented as in Germantown. It is our goal to actually ready that property prior to, but we've given ourselves the duration of the two-year period in order to make sure that we are adequately able to do that on time. So we have two parts, like we mentioned. The first part is the temporary use of Radner. The second part would be the transition to our long-term facility. Next slide, please. So we gave you some friendly pictures. So Radner, you all are familiar with. The second part is the permanent facility, which we're calling the Century 21 Complex. We don't actually know if that is the legal name. That's just what we're calling the building. But our plan is the immediate occupancy of the building that is in the middle. It is comprised of three facilities, but our initial plan is to go into the building that's in the middle, which is 220. Next slide, please. In our interim location, as we've mentioned, we've discussed using that for two years max, and because max, and because it is a short-term lease, we are going to forego costly renovations and focus only on completing the requested repairs that will not be covered by MCPS. This will ensure that more financial resources can be dedicated to the establishment and the moving forward of our long-term facility project. MBLI's uses of Radnor benefits both the district and MBLI. It provides us with quick access to a suitable school facility while putting a shuttered taxpayer-funded facility back in operation. MBLI plans to continue to work with MCPS staff to negotiate the terms and finalize the lease, as we have been doing. We have been pre-approved for up to 3.7 million in funding to support facilities. The MP, like we mentioned, the MBLI use of the Radnor Center would go no longer than two years, and again, supports timely planned opening and minimizes the need for excessive initial financial resources to create a suitable facility. MBLI will be guided by qualified school design, construction, and financial professionals, each of whom will ensure that we have the appropriate tools in place, including funding to support startup. Next slide, please. In this slide, we have presented a timeline, and our feedback that we received during our meetings with the staff members, Gary Mossman from the facilities office, worked with us to sort of articulate and discuss a timeline for how we could move into and phase into our plans for the transition to our permanent facility. And so we went and worked with our architect, Casey Smith of Horr, Copley, and Maugh, and Susan Castellan, who is a vice president with Wyatting and Turner, and we are confident that the timeline that is presented will ensure that we're able to get into our permanent facility prior to the end of the term that is planned at the Radnor Center, if not before. We have given ourselves, because of a number of things that are out there impacting construction and various, the two years will ensure that we're able to do that. But again, it is our goal to get into that facility before, and we're supported in that endeavor by the bill, the facility owners. Now, let's talk briefly about our permanent facility renovations. Embarking on a renovation project requires a lot of time, effort, and money. However, as a startup entity, as I mentioned, we endeavor to minimize cost. To that end, in both spaces, Radnor and the Century 21 Complex, MBLI intends to lease and not purchase. Therefore, we will forego costly full-scale gut job renovations and focus, as we've mentioned, on completing only the requested repairs or updates that are either not covered by the landlord or by a tenant improvement allowance. As mentioned previously, we are guided in this work by professionals with Wyatting, Turner, and Horr, Copley, and Maugh. Having previously worked with dozens of charter schools, both Susan and Casey are familiar with charter school facility conversions and more than capable of appropriately advising MBLI. Next slide, please. Okay, let's talk about the money. You can go to the next one. Okay, as a part of our efforts, when we were trying to figure out what it meant for financial requirements and being pre-approved and going through the processes, we used our application that we submitted to you all last year, a number of attachments and supports, including a comprehensive business plan. We also developed a communications plan. We completed pre-approvals and pre-qualifications with each of the financial entities that we've mentioned before. As a part of that, we have been pre-approved for up to $4 point million to support our facilities, and our plan is to use those funds only, as we've mentioned, to complete the necessary repairs. We're not going to be renovating buildings. We're not making them brand-new facilities. We're not tearing down walls. We're only adding to the existing structures, which would minimize the cost that we have to borrow. And so we have, as a part of this, we've introduced a partnership with Highmark Schools Development in March. Highmark was a part of our conversations back in March. It is not articulated on this slide here, Ms. Harris, I see you looking, but Highmark Schools, we brought the partnership to the table in March of this year. Highmark actually flew in and met with the staff of MCPS and explained the intent to work with us directly to both fund and help us acquire, locate and acquire property that we could purchase and then use and develop and renovate, and you know, all of the things as it relates to getting that going. However, because we were unable to secure the actual contract from MCPS, which solidifies our ability to actually do the work that we need, closing the loop on the pre, on the pre-approval with Highmark, we missed the timeline. There is an extensive process when you're going through, as we all know, if you have homeowners or, you know, have desire to homeowner, there's a process when you're purchasing real estate. And then Highmark had articulated that timeframe for us, had explained it to the staff, and also indicated to the staff that what we needed at that point to close the loop would be the contract. Because we still have yet to receive the contract, we had to pivot. And then in pivoting is how we ended up leasing or trying to inquire about leasing a facility and trying to lease a facility. Spaces at a premium, as the school district knows, as it's trying to grow and move students around, develop new school buildings. And so in leasing a property, we were finding that trying to determine a suitable school space would take us just a little bit longer than we had initially envisioned, which is why we approached the school district about the use of potential facilities that may be available for a temporary use. That is where the Radnor Center came up. Initially, we were not necessarily aware of the concerns around the use of the Radnor, but we moved through the processes. We submitted the waivers that we were indicated that needed to be submitted, and as Ms. Hazel mentioned earlier, and then Dr. McKnight mentioned, you all approved the use of the Radnor facility for us. So we do thank you for having done that, and so that's why we're here talking about a lease. It is because that is where we are, having to have pivoted away from the Highmark acquisition package that we had presented earlier in the year, sort of, and I believe March was maybe 30 days after we had received the decision, Highmark was willing to come to the table to do what they needed to do on our behalf. And so as a part of the leasing of the facility, not just Radnor, but just in general, each of these entities has committed funding to us and has pre-qualified us for funding. That funding is, however, contingent on the scopes of the projects. So right now, there is no way to know specifically what we would need at Radnor. We've been trying to work with the school district, but time is of the essence. And so we moved through the pre-qualification projects just so we could see if we could determine a sort of a, maybe a base level of what the funders would be comfortable with based on the information that they have at their disposal now. Each of those lenders, including Highmark, has either in writing or directly to the board, mentioned that we are still waiting for the contract. That is the last piece that we have been waiting to solidify our approvals, to be able to solidify any leases, to be able to move forward. We have been working in earnest with each of the members that Ms. Hazel, each of the departments that Ms. Hazel mentioned, to sort of make sure that everyone is understanding the terms, that we're able to move through the pieces to get what we need in place. We have brought four qualified entities to the table that are willing to support us. M&amp;T Bank also wrote a letter indicating that they would provide whatever product that they needed, that we needed as it pertained to the facility. But because we had already moved and worked with Highmark Schools, Charter School Development Corporation, the Equity Loan Fund, we said that we would come back to M&amp;T Bank because we had the three that we had already identified and thought that those resources would be more than enough, because we do not plan to go through any full-scale renovations of any of these properties because they're leased properties. We will not be the owners, and so we don't want to make costly investments in properties that we don't own. And then we also don't want to incur significant debt as a new entity. This is all new for the school district, and so while we are filling all of this out, while everyone is getting their bearings in this partnership, we want to make sure that we're prudent on the resources that we are given. Our goal is not to spend all of our money on facilities. Our goal is the education of our children's body and to make sure that the community is comfortable with sending their kids to us to be educated. That is our goal. And so we saw the Radnor facility as a, as a start and a support to that, to get us going. It is not our permanent location. In terms of making sure, and while we're here, we're just going to talk about all the other points that are there, because they're, they're sort of all interconnected, right? The reality for us is that the transition and the concerns about us temporarily being in the Radnor facility, which is necessarily out of our initial locale, we are still planning to provide yellow bus transportation. When we approached the school district before, we've always said that we were providing yellow bus transportation to the students enrolled in our program. That will continue even at the Radnor facility. Transportation is the biggest hindrance around why parents don't allow their children to participate in various programs, attending programs and participating in before and aftercare programs, or extracurricular activities, all of the sort. And so we have always included as a part of our plans, transportation, to ensure that that is not a barrier to accessing our services, and that will continue. As a part of what we wrote to you in our written facilities plan, we explained that. We also explained the intent to communicate both with the surrounding community in the Radnor facility, as well as the community that is, that is in Germantown and Gaithersburg, and inviting all of the communities that we're working with, internal and external with us, to ensure that everyone is, is involved, everyone is aware, we're not, we're not doing anything in a silo. Everything is going to be very transparent. And we've been working in earnest to try to make sure that we have a startup plan for 2024 available, as well as also now starting our permanent location. So we have been, since January, when the decision came, planning for both of these things to make sure that we're prepared and directed as the state has indicated, and our bringing the four entities that represent financial institutions that are experts in this, in this space, that have required us to provide not just the application to you all, but business plans, credit information. We have put a lot on the line to get qualified and to make sure that these people are able to support us and these entities feel comfortable in supporting us. They have submitted documentation to that effect. They, two of them have even put letters of support in there indicating that they're willing to provide whatever is necessary. That was the Charter School Development Corporation letter, the most recent one that we submitted. And in that letter, they have been doing this work for 30-plus years. They know what needs to be done. They know how to evaluate a budget. And actually, going back to what Dr. McKnight said, if we go to the next, you can go to the second slide, on the per pupil allocation and the revenue, it's important to understand that we don't open this year. We open in 2025, right? That fiscal year budget is not under works. You guys just solidify your, your 24 budget numbers. And so for us, we will be in a projections space until the 25 budget is available. And so the people that have pre-approved us have pre-approved us based on just projections, and that's a big feat in and of itself, because we have been begging these people to work with us to make sure that they understand that we need something to give to you all to denote that we have this capability. So providing our application, sitting through their pre-qualification processes, providing our business plans, developing communication and marketing plans, we created a social media plan for them. We did a lot as a part of this evaluation process is for these people to feel comfortable. And so we want to make sure that when we're looking at the numbers, we're keeping in mind that we don't open in this fiscal year, we open in the next fiscal year. And so we will be in a projection space with targeted expenses, targeted revenue, until those numbers are determined. But we have built-in contingency plans. Should the per pupil allocation change one way or the other, we have contingency plans built into each of our budget categories that will support us being able to make adjustments in our targeted expenses so that we can make sure that we're still able to provision the academic programming that we've planned, and it doesn't impact operations. And so we, we presented sort of how we anticipated the student enrollment, looking in, in this slide, the, the plans for enrollment, our projected per pupil calculations, and then we also explained how we allocated in these numbers, the revenue for our facilities, facility expenses. We based on, initially on publicly available information, and now that we are moving into spaces where we can finalize that arrangement, then these numbers will be refined as the permanent information is made available to us. But until we have those numbers, we will be perpetually in a projection and a planning space. But that's just the nature of where we are, because we don't open right now. So that is what this, this slide is attempting to explain and articulate to you guys, is that we are functioning under the operating revenue that is coming in from the board. We have, we have taken the feedback that we've gotten over the last iterations of our applications with MCPS, and we're making sure that we're able, able and capable of running our program under the per pupil. Next slide, please. Or I can go, you can go to the next one. And so as a part of our efforts in developing our facilities plan, we wanted to think about project mitigation. They are articulated for you on the screen, the areas being timeline, supply chain, insurance, performance bonds, and backup plans. And so what we were trying to do is demonstrate our ability to think through all of the pieces that are associated at the high level with mitigating circumstances that could impact our ability to move forward in these spaces. In the timeline, like we said, we are guided and have been guided in our efforts around facilities by accomplished professionals with Wyatting Turner Construction and Horr, Copley, and Maugh. Both Casey and Susan have worked extensively with school districts, have worked specifically with charter schools, and know how to manage the timelines to prevent slippage, to make sure that we are identifying sort of our initial plans and backup plans, to making sure that our supply chain is not impacted, that we have various options for selections, for features, whatever it is that we're trying to do. They are more than capable of guiding us, and we have been leaning on them extensively for their expertise. As a part of this, we will look at our business insurance, making sure that our insurance coverages support any claims that may arise during the projects. We are also going to be requiring performance bonds from our contractors to make sure that, as I mentioned before, that we are being feasible, prudent around the fiscal responsibility that we have with the dollars that are coming from the school district in support of our facilities. And then our backup plan, during the development of our facility, we're going to work on identifying alternative locales. Things happen. Once MCPS and the, now there's a new process where the state of Maryland reviews the leases and the, the charter locations. So the state may determine that they don't like the facility for some reason or another. There are other people that involve beyond just the board, so we have other stakeholders in this. And so we are always working to have our plan and then a backup and then another backup. And so we tried to sort of articulate in this slide how we are going to cover some and mitigate some of the high-level concerns associated with the facilities project. Next two slides, please. Okay, so what's next? For us, the next piece is going to be to get our executed charter agreement. That is what we have been waiting for since the decision of the Maryland State Board was released in January. We have been waiting for the actual agreement. We attempted to work with the staff members to start the negotiations of the terms. We have the 2020 document that was provided to us by the MCPS General Counsel, and we have been working and hoping to move forward with revising that template to get that going. So in terms of next steps, that is the main piece, is to get those terms negotiated and finalized, and then to execute that documentation. In terms of the interim facility, we need to continue to work with MCPS to, to review that facility, to get the lease discussed. We have been waiting to discuss the lease with them, so we are hoping that in the next, the next stages, we can start to finalize that component. Then we have to submit the lease to the state of Maryland, as we mentioned before, along with the charter contract that has to also go with the lease to the state. And then we will then initiate whatever necessary approvals for the facility process before the board, and sort of presenting the full package to you. For the permanent facility, we need to also get the contract from the state, from you guys, over to Rickman Management so that they can see that we are able to move forward. We need to submit it to the financing companies that we're going to work with so that we can get our final approvals established and presented to everyone. And then we need to make sure that Rickman Management is okay with the timeline for entry and that we are prepared to relocate our staff, I mean, our students and our staff from the Radnor Facility out to the Georgetown campus.
Germantown.
Germantown campus, I'm sorry. Germantown. And in conclusion, as we were tempted to highlight in this presentation and as in our written facilities plan, evidence has been provided which addresses our ability and compliance with each of the following. The Maryland State Board of Education July 1 contingency. MECA has been pre-approved for up to 3.7 million in funding to support facilities. The MCPS Board of Education request for awareness of where our permanent facility was going to be. And then our plans for school year 2026 and beyond are in development, and we are working with the property owners to ensure that we are able to move into that space timely, if not early. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions, or how do you want to move forward with the next part? We'll turn it back over to President, President Silvestri or Dr. McKnight. Thank you.
Colleagues, if you have any questions, please turn on your lights. Ms. Yang.
Yes, hi. Thank you for that detailed presentation, and congratulations for getting pre-approved for 3.7 million in facility funding. I'm trying to get a understanding. I have been to, I have actually visited the Bethesda location, the Radnor Center, and I know that it has significant ground upkeep or inside work that need to be done to reuse again. So I wonder whether our staff have a, a, a projection of how much does it take to make that location usable? And I also know the Century 21 facility, and I also wonder how much, you know, is, is it $1.5 million able to turn that into a functional school building that have to move? it $1.5 million able to turn that into a functional school building that have to need a lot of code, right? As schools, we have a very strict codes for fire, for hazard, safety, bathroom, the windows, our window heights are different, there are a lot of regulations. So I'm just wondering how those numbers play out.
Okay, there we go. So thank you for your questions. So around the Radnor facility, we did do a walkthrough with Gary and with Dr. Marcus of the Radnor facility. We looked at the facility and talked about the current state of the building, and we did mention to them some of the spaces that we thought may need modification and update. But those are not, they're not major changes that are required. It is more what we would consider a refresh of the building than necessarily having to do major modifications. We did get from them also sort of an idea of what it would take for the common area maintenance. So let's just say snow removal and grass cutting and all of that. And that could actually be negotiated as a part of the lease of the facility, is if we go a full-service lease, then the school system would manage that on our behalf as a part of our lease arrangement, or we could opt to contract out. And so we had started the discussions around what would be more prudent, to go with the full-service lease and let the school district maintain the building and provide the services and the staff and the supports, and then control the cost that way, or would we want to go down the road of contracting those services out? We started that process, but we have not yet completed a full analysis of whether the full-service lease would make more sense, or whether we could go about it a different route with independent contractors. So that is the space that we're in as it relates to the maintenance and the upkeep of that facility, if that is the part that you're talking about for Radnor. Because we're not planning any major modifications to that building, we're going to use the building as it is. It is a temporary site, and so we're just going to do refresh, maybe a painting of the building to update it, clean the building really well, make sure that all of the spaces that have not been used, make sure that all of the spaces that would touch children are ready for operation, and work with MCPS.
Radnor is located in the district I represent. I visited a couple times, and I also is looking at, you know, the air condition and the heating, all that component. So you explain, and also, the Century 21 is three buildings. I see you allocated 1.5 million for the renovation, and that wasn't built, the Century 21 building wasn't built, they won't build as school buildings. So can you talk a little bit about the numbers there? That is less number than you are allocating to the Radnor number, which is 2.2 million. For a school building, just one building, we're talking about three buildings that are not designed to be schools.
Right. So the, in how we presented the information around our approvals, they were, they came in at different times based on the information that we received from MCPS. And so when we were talking about what we needed in terms of satisfying and supporting our ability to demonstrate financial, you know, our financial ability to meet the requirements to get in, these numbers were preliminary numbers, but they were not based on a scope. This was solely them basing it on what they saw on our budget. But those numbers, as I mentioned before, all of the scopes around what needs to be done will have to be reevaluated and presented formally to the financial institutions, and then our levels of actual funding will be adjusted based on what it is determined that we needed. We were trying to figure out from now, because in every iteration, we were told that we needed a number, right? We needed to know what we could do, what we could do, what we could do. And so the package is a package. So each of those entities, that money can be combined and used either one place over here, a part over here, a portioned over here. But because it came in, the Enterprise Community Loan Fund, we were told that we needed to have dollars available to support the 2024 building that we would start in. Then we were told that we also needed to be able to demonstrate that we would have the ability to start the pathway of getting money in place for our permanent facility. And so we separated out the entities just based on that alone, because we were, we received guidance around, we needed one thing that showed this and another thing that showed that. But at the end of the day, facility funding is facility funding. It can be used for whatever project we need to use the money for, and we've communicated that to the financial institutions. But until we actually know what we have to fund out of these arrangements, either after they have negotiated through the lease, because a part of it too, in the Century 21 complex, that's an office building, yes. But can it be converted for use? Yes. Have we already been talking to the property owners about what they can do in that space? Is it feasible? Yes. Will it take $1.5 billion? We don't know yet, because we have not negotiated the lease. There is a tenant improvement allowance that is typically a part of commercial leases that allows for the funder to provide money towards whatever needs to be done to make the space suitable. But we have not completed the lease discussions with the Rickman Group to determine what that amount is. We have not completed the design as of yet. So creating scopes around these projects is the next part, but we have not been able to move to the next part, because the piece that we have been missing is the charter contract. We're not able to move to the final parts of these funding conversations without knowing that we have the actual document and the agreement and the terms negotiated with MCPS, because that is what the funders use when they are trying to evaluate what they will do, what is required of it, how they will get their money back, and all of these various pieces that are part of lending. And so we are not necess-
If we could just, a lot of people have questions, so I-
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Ms. Yang, are you done, or can we, Mr. Rovin?
Yeah, just, so like my colleague here, she's very familiar with the Bethesda location. I am very familiar with the Century 21 location in Germantown, that's my district, and this is actually buildings that I actually had looked at for opening the Thriving Germantown Consortium at County, which is a consortium of various nonprofits that came together to be under one roof to be able to allocate services, a one-stop place. So I'm very familiar with these buildings. So along the lines, I guess, what I'm trying to get a better understanding is, and I'm glad Seth is here from facilities, I was shocked last meeting that we had, there was a bathroom renovation, and it was like just for one bathroom, including that the plan was already in the ground and everything in a school located already. It was over 90,000, one bathroom. So my question, and I understand that they're pre-approved and so on, but I guess where I'm going with this is, because I'm familiar with these buildings, they are, some are office, you know, they're office building, they have loading docks in the back and so on. I'm trying to get a better understanding of what the number is, because by the time you move into the Germantown facility, you will be doing first through fourth grade, correct?
Six to seven.
No, we'll be six, seventh, eighth, and then we will transition to ninth.
Okay, six, seventh, eighth, ninth. So that's four grades. Okay. So it will be about how many students, about?
350 to 400, I believe, is where we'd be at that point.
At that point, in Germantown.
340 is what we'd be transitioning over.
Okay, so that's about how many classrooms?
You lay this on, you don't have to.
Oh, I didn't know. That's about 10 classrooms, we would, 10, well, no, 15 or 16 classrooms, I think, to cover the middle, to cover the middle school in totality.
Okay. So your intention is to use all three buildings?
No, ma'am, we're going to start, we're going to start in 220, the middle building.
To 201.
Because it goes 10, 20, then 30. So the middle building is completely vacant right now, and so our plan is to go into that building and then phase into the other buildings as we are determined that we are able to do that, and then working with the Rickman Group to do that, because they offer the entire property to us for our use. But we're going to go into 220, and that building has enough space for us to take all four grades into that building. So we actually gain another year by being able to put the ninth grade into that square footage. So while we were initially planning for two years to be able to roll over to the high school, we actually have three years to roll over to the high school, because the ninth grade can go into that building initially, because of the square footage that is available.
Right. So I guess, I guess, I guess my question, I guess, are more specific to the cost of making sure that those classrooms align with the codes that are required to run a school. In Montgomery County, we're very known for very, for codes. We love codes. And rightly so, because you're running, you're going to be running a school, so that would be, you know, how many bathrooms, they will have to be accessible, then I know that building, we have some issues with ADA compliance. So anyway, there's just, so is that the magic number then? That's how much it would cost?
No, these are, these are not magic numbers. These are just denoting that we moved through the pre-qualification process, absent, secure, and final information from MCPS. This was our best effort to say, hey, based on what we bring to the table as founders, based on what we're able to do, can we start the sort of pre-underwriting process so that we can get it going? But we don't have magic numbers yet, because no one has been in a space to put magic numbers to the project scopes yet, because those are negotiated as a part of the lease arrangements. The Radnor piece, we talked about some of the updates that we looked at with the Radnor, the painting, the refreshed lighting, and all of those pieces. And so if it looks like MCPS is not going to do that, if we choose to do that, then we would pursue that project scope, but that would be a limited project scope, not a four or five million dollar project scope to update lighting per se. Let's just, I'm just, just for example. But we don't know that yet, because we have not negotiated any of those components. It is not until we negotiate it with the owner of the property that we can then say, this is the part of this project that we are responsible for, and then take that scope back to the bank or to, to the Charter School Development Corporation, to the Equity Loan Fund, say, hey, they're telling us that our portion of this is 400,000, so we're going to need 400,000 to do this. Or taking it all, and we may be able to get full and total approval through M&amp;T Bank. We might not need to do, you know, a piece with Charter School, or the Charter School Development Corporation could just decide that they're capable and able of doing all of the pieces. But there's no magic numbers that have been presented yet, because we were not asked to get magic numbers. We were just asked to demonstrate our ability to be pre-qualified and to get as many of those pre-qualifications denoted.
Mrs. Evans.
Yes, so thank you for your presentation, and I know you just said that you weren't asked to get the magic numbers. The difficulty in our position is having to really think about what it will look like. And so in trying to secure this, the hope would have been that that's something they just would have anticipated. And the only thing that I'm thinking about in terms of the cost of renovating a school, a building that is not outfitted for our students, what comes to mind for me is, a couple years back, we were trying to get a similar facility that was not outfitted for our students in Silver Spring, but when all the costs came back, it was something that we just could not afford as a school system. I don't know what the Century 21 building looks like, but I did visit this other site, and I think Mr. Adams is familiar with what I'm talking about. In terms of us going there, we were so excited, right? They had everything that we thought should be able to fit our students and to work it out, they came up with the prices, and we were like overwhelmed with the cost. And so I guess for me, the pause is us not having what that number looks like. I just wanted to state that. So earlier I heard you mention, with the Radnor building, that what you would do is, because it's a lease, not try to be focused on all the repairs, but just on the requested repairs. Do we have an idea, does the school system have an idea of what the cost of the requested repairs would be? I'm sure we didn't anticipate that that would be what the response would be.
We actually submitted a list of what we thought some of those things would be, but they did not come back with any cost, but we did submit the list.
And then do we know, I don't know how we would know, but do we have an idea of what it could, what the cost could be to retrofit Century 21 to be able to accommodate students? Would we know that? Would the school system know that?
But the, but the, I think the main piece though is that we're not retrofitting the building. We're working with the existing footprint. And I think maybe that is a big part of maybe some of the confusion around how we're operating in this space, because we are going, we are making an existing space as an alternative use. And so we're using the existing footprint. There were offices in that bar.
I understand that.
Oh, yeah.
I know that it has to be set up.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not saying renovation as if it's, you know, some big 25 million dollar investment. We're not gutting the bill, that we're working with the existing-
Yes, I clearly understand. I'm sorry, I just used the wrong choice of words and thinking about. Mr. Adams, are you coming up to the table?
Mr. Hall has light on.
Oh, okay, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, would you like to have Mr. Adams come up? He can speak a little bit more in detail about some of these facilities.
If he's able to, that would be great.
These are all obviously very relevant questions. I would say while we have not looked at, you know, the Century building in terms of specifics, what we do know, and we have done much exploration in this, is converting office function to educational purposes, right? It's very different. There's been other school districts that have attempted. It's cost savings, it's to occupy office buildings, and I can say through, you know, working with these variety of districts, as well as our own experience, is that it usually is not a cost-effective approach to go from a commercial to an educational purpose. You're talking about replacing, you know, your life safety systems. You're talking about all the elements associated with egress, accessibility, but beyond that, programmatic spaces, right? Offices don't have the same programmatic spaces that we, not only just as a school district, but, you know, for curriculum purposes, you know, different aspects, different elements. So we have found that it is not cost-effective to go down that route. We have found that typically the costs exceed, you know, what we would typically see in even just constructing a basic school building. Our recommendation in these types of situations is obviously not to try to retrofit, but to look at a different option or look at different approaches that are maybe more cost-effective going to educational purposes. On the Radnor facility, I would just say, we are not at the point where we're pricing, and we're not going to call them repairs. I think what we're calling them more is, you know, any of the renovations that would be required to accommodate secondary school use, right? Just want to be clear, Radnor is a old elementary school, so transitioning from an elementary school to a secondary use does, will and does require some elements of renovation. So I don't want to maybe mix up repairs with that of facility work that would be required for that purpose.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay.
Ms. Harris.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So the first question I had, you've identified here both an architect and a construction contractor. Now, have those folks gone with you to look at, so the purpose for these folks would be to work with you in the renovation, retrofitting of your permanent space, not Radnor, correct?
Well, they are, they're experts as a part of our planning and our team, and so we would ask that they be involved in the review of anything that we're doing as it relates to facilities, because they are the experts in that space. And so, yes, they would be guiding anything that is happening in our permanent facility, but we would also ask them to be a part of our conversations around the Radnor facility or any alternate facility that we may be leasing. We've been engaging both Susan and Casey as our experts to sort of help make sure that we're understanding what needs to be done to set realistic expectations. So we've been leaning on that expertise, and we would do that with both the Radnor facility as well as the Germantown.
So they haven't looked at the Germantown facility to give-
No, they, no, they, we did a walkthrough of Germantown already, yes, ma'am, but we did not, they were not available to do the Radnor facility walkthrough. We were hoping to schedule a second one. They were both on travel, one was at a professional conference and then one was on a vacation. So the date that we went with Gary and Dr. Marcus to Radnor, they were unavailable, and we were planning to have them come back and look at Radnor with us.
And so when they did the walkthrough of the Century, the Germantown site, what, were they able to ballpark for you, since they're, you said their expertise is in the educational space? So were they able to give you some guidance as to the kinds of retrofits that would be needed to convert the commercial office use to the educational use?
The only thing that was mentioned was about having an adult restroom or a single stall restroom added for adult space on the floors. The current bathroom setups would accommodate the students, but they wanted, we wanted to make sure that there was a separate restroom facility for the adults that are on that floor. And so that was one of the things that Casey pointed out, was this, the secondary use for the adult space, and then potentially around understanding the, like he's, I think he said, the egress and eflows for the, how the kids would enter and exit the building. And we started engaging Montgomery County, planning and zoning around what that would need to look like from the fire chief's perspective as well, because again, there are multiple stakeholders that are involved in this outside of just us and MCPS. So we had started the conversations and had, you know, plans underway with having those people come and see the spaces, because they are the ones that would have to say whether they would sign off. The same thing with the State of, the State of Maryland would have to sign off on it as well. And then Casey did point out about the difference on the kitchen, so whether we would do a full commercial kitchen, whether we could do a warming kitchen just for service. And so we talked about those components, because there's no kitchen- And so we talked about those components because there's no kitchen in the building, but there was a sort of like a cafe-type space and what it would take to maybe bring in that. So we would be able to evaluate commercial versus just a service. So we did explore those pieces, but not from a dollar value, but just what the building would potentially need. We had not yet gotten to the space of full dollar values and projections because that part of it, you know, takes time and effort for them to do as well. But those things we were working through, those are the parts that we were working through.
Okay. And so just looking at your, kind of the detail on your financials, the, the primary revenue source, so you have given us some projections for an F Y 25 school year, 24, 25, based on a 250 students enrollment. So your, your, your funding stream is dependent on your enrollment. And so just doing, and I do not know the answer to this question, so just doing some quick math, your operating, your overall operating costs here, it looked like with the total revenue of the 4 million, 489, 559, and your facility, your projected facility expenses, that would be about a third of the overall revenue and leaving you two-thirds for operating cost, staff salaries, that kind of transportation, that kind of thing. Is that about accurate? I, I don't know, for the operation of a school?
Well, we targeted our expenses, and so as we mentioned before, a lot of this is predicated on the actual information, being able to sort of go in and update and to refine, but we targeted our plans around the, the initial salaries for the student, I mean, for the teachers. We targeted how many staff members. So we have looked at our full staff plans, how many staff we want every year. We incorporated a 3% adjustment that we were told to take into account from the budget office, as well as the 18% that we were told to account for, for the employee benefits. So we've tried to create sort of a very modest budget that grows with the students, and so that information is all accounted for. And what we put, what we did not denote in there is necessarily paying back bonds or debt because we had to show the financial institutions what our available resources would be. And so when we originally presented our budget and our plans, we had line items for paying the loan back, and we tried to create sort of this loan payment schedule and all of these things, and then we were directed by them. Take that out. We need to just see your bottom line without you trying to figure out what the bottom line is because all of what we have to work with is a projection. The same thing with us trying to figure out what we may be able to do in Radner versus Century 21 and all of that. They are all projections, and none of that can be solidified until we get our contract, until we're able to go back to the, to the, the leaseholder and negotiate our tenant improvement allowance. Because in commercial spaces, as I was mentioning, I don't remember to who at this point, but a lot of times you're able to negotiate for the owner of the property to do some of that work as a part of your lease. The same thing that we had mentioned to M C P S. Hey, we did a preliminary walkthrough, we looked at the flooring, the lighting, you know, is any of this a possibility that M C P S could, you know, update? And so we were discussing those terms, the same thing that we would be doing with Century 21 and have started doing with them. But again, it's all still predicated on projections. Those are just targeted, but that is our total number because it accounts for all of our staffing and our needs.
Okay. So I guess two base, just ballpark questions. Looking at the, the financials that you've put together here based on per pupil allocations and facility costs, and you're, you know, you're looking at a year-one projection around 250 students, year-two around 350 students and growing by grade. So have you, do you have a sense of what is the absolute essential number, what is the minimum number of students, committed students for year one that would allow you to meet your expenses? Since most of your funding, your operating funding and your, your, this is based on the per pupil allocation. So what is that cut point where if we don't have X number of students, we won't be able to operate just because of the dollars and cents?
Well, what we did was, we called it in this space, an enrollment sensitivity analysis, and we looked at 5, 10, and 15% adjustments either way in terms of our enrollment. And so what we felt was like anything that was over 15% or more of our students would impact our startup. It doesn't necessarily mean that we could, we could be, we wouldn't be successful, it's just that it could potentially impact startup because it takes six years for us to get to full enrollment. And so we're going to have to be very strategic as we're adding on the grades each year with what we're spending our money on, making sure that we're being, you know, cost-effective in our decisions and in our choices. But anything that's sort of above a 15% could impact our startup. But it does not mean we couldn't recoup it on the back end because as we know with budgets and everything, those numbers sort of stay with you, the, the available money rolls forward. It, it is not just a drop of if we don't have these students, then we can't, we have to close our doors. It is just that we are mindful that it's going to take six years for us to get to full enrollment. And so we may have slippages that occur. It could be one year that the, the benefits go up in M C P S, right? And then we, we, we have to adjust and make, you know, make a modification according to that. The per pupil could go down one year. So there are a lot of components that we haven't looked at and evaluated what could go and try to be mindful, which is why we have the contingencies built into our budget so that in event that we have to touch something or adjust, we're not taking out of the classroom. First, we're taking out of the contingency budget. And so we'll also use that to make sure that we have whatever resources we need at our disposal to make sure that academic programming is not affected. What it may impact is like, hey, instead of adding maybe two sixth grade or three sixth grade, because initially we want to make sure that we have everything that we want, we may have to say, okay, well, we might have to do two right now and then maybe bring on another one in the following year. We'll look at all of our plans sort of against the backdrop of what it takes to make effective operations and doesn't impact academic programming.
So I guess I'm trying, I'm looking for a much simpler answer. So let's say, I'll just give you an example then. So with the, here you're looking at a location which is outside the community you intend to serve for a temporary purpose, so there would be the, the back and forth transportation for the first two years. And so say, instead of the 250 students, you're, you're, you're looking to program for year one, you only had 100 families, 100 students that would commit because of, say, look, when you're in Germantown, yes, but, but for this back and forth for two years, we're not interested. So if you had 100 students, so that's going to take your, take out a significant chunk of your budget because you're, you are looking at just per pupil allocations, your main funding stream here. So if you're looking at losing, you know, more than 50% of your projected enrollment, is that going to allow you to still operate? Or is that, at that point, would you be saying, hit the pause, let's build up the enrollment, let's look to reopen it in the, the following year?
I, I can speak to that. I, while I understand, you know, the, the question about worst-case scenario, we have factored in worst-case scenarios. We're constantly revising our projections and our planning. We also will be continually engage in the community. So to project an enrollment of about 100 students, I think that would be quite abysmal, actually, in considering the communities in which we are seeking to support. That is a highly overpopulated area with regard to the school capacity. And so I think that what we have put, presented to the schools district to date is a more realistic planning. If not, we'll probably, if not erring to the side of caution and being very conservative and such that we will likely have more enrollment than what we have projected. And so what we could do after we receive more detailed information from the administration with regard to salaries, enrollment, and what the revenue projections would be, I think we could probably refine what our plans are. But I think that we've done a, a good, best effort at this juncture as to what our enrollment and, and break-even point would be.
Ms. Harris, if we could, can we keep going around the table?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back to you if you have more questions.
But real quick, I think it's important also to make sure that we emphasize that as a charter school, we are open to all of the schools, I mean, all of the students in the county. So even though we had targeted a locale that sort of demonstrated an academic concern and an academic void and a support void that we could support, the students can come from wherever in the county. We cannot say only students from Gaithersburg or only students from Germantown can attend. It could be students that come from Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, all over that could come and still would be trying to come to see us. We, so it's, we, we can't keep creating this silo that because we're planning to be in Germantown or Gaithersburg, that that's where all of the students are going to come from. Charter schools have to by right be open to all of the students in the county. So we, we targeted a locale to operate based on the demographic need, but in terms of it being open, it is an open program, it is an open boundary program. So it, it doesn't matter where we're located.
Thank you. Ms. Wolf.
This, this getting on and off mute is a little bit difficult. My question is for Seth. Can you talk a little bit, did you walk through and evaluate the property to come up with the 22 million that you suggested, or is that just a ballpark figure based on your understanding of other renovations or, or changes to buildings?
Yeah, so that was not a specific detailed estimate of, exactly of this building, but certainly it's based off square footage, it's based off understandings of site elements, right? A bus loop, a drop-off loop, you know, there's, there's elements that, that we obviously have historic data on related to cost. So when you look at it from a cost standpoint of renovation of, of a, a commercial space to an educational use space, certainly it falls within, you know, that 22 million falls within the normal typical cost per square foot that we're seeing in this current market.
You know, this is a very difficult discussion because there are no, no actual projected figures here being given out. And so I'm wondering, one, if, if we did a charter agreement with additional time and a delay in the start, how would that impact anything? Could somebody talk about that? I know that you said you needed it by a certain date so that it could go in the, the catalog for students looking for that grade level, but if you extend the due date for things which would delay opening, what's the implications?
Dr. Manek, could someone speak to that?
Yes, so I'm going to maybe go across the board here generally from facilities on. So if, if we talk about timeline, the goal is always that there is engagement with the community to understand interest. I'll use the example of programs, you know, that we have within our school system. The process of information sharing around those programs happen in the fall. So the fall for getting ready for next school year, you know, we are coming up on months of that. And then the process of understanding courses, engagement with families to get ready for the registration period starts December, January. That's why the initial engagement tends to start in the fall because then everyone needs to have time for consideration and then get prepared for that registration. When the registration happens, or that process begins in January, February, that's when we're, we're able to then finalize all the particulars around. Then how do you provide transportation? How are you providing meal services for the number of students, all of those pieces? So the, the decision for what we often have to do for the next year, you know, this is why the summer becomes a very critical time because it's almost like planning for the following year does start to happen in the fall with engagement, sharing and information. So, so that is really, really important, not to mention all of the other pieces when you think about programming. Normally, depending on specific programming, we have to do specialized professional development provided for staff in particular areas. That's engagement then with our associations, you know, and all of those pieces, so.
But I guess I'm wondering if finances are essentially the main problem at this point, and, and their side of the problem is that they don't have the charter agreement, but if they were willing to consider extending their opening date, is that a possibility?
Turn your mic on.
Turn your mic on.
And what I'm really trying to figure out is, could you have a charter agreement with certain conditions attached to it and give them a longer period of time in order to meet those conditions, which would then extend the date that they're actually going to be able to open? So they would not be able to open maybe in 2025. They might have to go to 2026. Is that a possibility?
Dr. Manek?
Yes, I believe the staff wants to, to share some comments on that, but I will say that the finances become a really, really big, important part of it because when we think, without moving things to a whole nother fiscal year, when we think about the finances that are required, that's our starting point. If we are not clear on that, then what could happen, and, and, you know, the, the staff shared this, is that then we then have engaged parents and students in a process, and then if it does not work or we don't have as much room to adjust, if, if anything is not clear on that financial part initially, then it then began to impact enrollment across schools within the district. Because at that point, students have to have someplace to go. So when I think about timeline and the importance of, you know, really why we, why we, you know, were very clear on this part about the financial piece, because I understand that there are adjustments that are, that are made in a process. We know that going through all of our capital projects all the time. But the estimates and what we know about facilities, and I will say what we know about our community and facility expectations and all of those pieces, come into play because if we don't have estimates that are close or clear to what we've been able to do in terms of building facilities, then it could put us in a situation in which we start, and if we aren't able to meet those requirements, then we then have to, again, have a plan B for where our students go, and then that begins to shift enrollment in communities and then capacity later in the year. So it's just something for us to consider as you, as you asked that question about timeline, which is why the financial estimates do become a critical part. And, and I just want to say that in the process, you know, I think we've been very clear, and if we need to, I'm happy to have staff come to the table. I personally, you know, talk with them about how often were we meeting, what were the conversations, and what were provisions we were making on our end in M C P S to ensure that we were doing everything we could to provide the right information, the appropriate information to be supportive.
But that doesn't, that doesn't quite answer my question about whether, whether if they are willing to extend the opening date by another year, could you do an agreement with contingencies regarding finance?
So if I could just chime in, the, the state board directed that we be rewarded a contingent approval starting with school year 2024. That was the directive that came from the state board, right? And so if anything were to happen at this point, it would be a mutual negotiation around what would be feasible for us, but not additional conditions. The only condition that was put out there by the state was that we demonstrate our ability to acquire the funds and access the funds that were necessary to start in 2024. In 2024, we have identified a temporary facility that is available in M C P S that is, that we can use, that does not require costly renovations. The monies that we have been able to be pre-qualified for more than enough cover whatever would be undertaken at the Radner facility because we were told that major modifications would not even be allowed. So that's not even something that we needed to pursue. We would only pursue that, and Seth mentioned that, that would, what would be required in order to make the space suitable. But the holding facility is used by the school district for students regardless. And so it was our understanding that the use of that space would already be deemed suitable with the waiver and all of the other pieces that we submitted in the discussions. And so as we're talking about this, I think it's important to understand that the state already indicated that they reversed the denial of our application and directed the award of this thing to happen. And so what we were supposed to be doing is bringing to the table information that supported our ability to go out and do something. That ability has been hinged on getting a finalized contract from M C P S and negotiating the terms from M C P S. And so can it be negotiated that the timeline changes? Yes, it can be negotiated and it can be, all of this can be discussed, but create, I mean, maybe using the words conditions and creating additional stipulations in this environment after the state has already indicated what was going to be required in terms of actions from the board is not, is not in keeping with the directive that has already come down from the state of Maryland.
Does that answer your question, Brenda?
Yes, I, I'm satisfied. I'm having a hard time understanding. I'm having a hard time understanding how they're going to get the money to do this in time for, to get in this year's program listing. Thank you.
Mr. Said?
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask a really quick question about, you know, the facility in reference to its location. I don't know if you can answer this now, but has there been, you know, any assessment to the impact or how to mitigate it of the fact that, you know, your temporary facility will be in a different location than your target, target group that you're trying to get?
Again, our target is all sixth and seventh grade students in the county that are interested in a business learning curriculum. So while we had a planned locale based on identified demographic need, our student body is any student that has interest in this type of learning. It is not solely predicated on the students that live in the planned locale based on the demographic data of need. We cannot, like I mentioned before, we cannot solely say that applicants coming from Gaithersburg or Germantown, that sector are the only ones that can be entered, enrolled in the school. It has to be open to any student that has interest. So there is no impact to the community because the community is countywide.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Said?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so, you know, I do understand that, but even so, there will be students coming from those areas, you know, whether the scope is large or small. And so I'm saying, is there any sort of, have you assessed that impact? Is there any sort of mitigation to that? Because they will be coming from those communities even though they don't have to. So there still needs to be, I think, something there to address that they will be coming from different areas across the county.
So I guess to your question, though, is what do you mean by impact? Because if the students can come from anywhere in the county, what, when we're saying, what is the impact to them? That is not clear. The main barrier to entry in any program is often transportation, right? And so what we have committed to is providing yellow bus transportation for all of our enrolled students regardless of where we are determined to locate. So in terms of, and where they come from. And so that is what we've identified as the main barrier to entry, but not necessarily impact. With us willing to provision yellow bus service, we are supporting the students coming from across the county to wherever we're located. But in terms of distance, our planned locale and then the Radnor Center are maybe 25 minutes apart. And so it is not, you know, a two-hour bus ride or whatever, but it is, the yellow bus service will support eliminating the barrier to getting to the programming.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Ms. Yang?
Yes, I would like to ask about safety and security. Student safety and security is very important. And maybe we have invested heavily in our building, how to make it secure and safe for our student. So I want to hear your plan, your investment, the money allocated for that perspective, for that area, especially in your permanent location. Or if any staff here can provide some general idea, how much is it to secure a building? I would appreciate that.
Sure. And we actually included security staff as a part of our FTE plans for the building to make sure that we are able to provision and support security. We identified our visitor programming system that would cross check anybody that's coming into the building, similar to what is available through MCPS. And so we can, we can use the products that are available through MCPS or contract our own, but we did identify systems that would help support vetting the visitors to our building. And then we also will have a security company that will be responsible for maintaining the physical security, the external security of the space, as well as interior to us. And so we, but we do have that provision in our budget in terms of security staff.
Are you also considering camera and other?
Camera?
Camera and, and secure exterior doors?
Yeah, the Radnor Center and the Century 21 complex have cameras that are already installed and that were left behind. So provided that that equipment remains there and is functional and usable, we've already been told that we could use those, those security systems that are currently in place. If we needed to do any updates, that would be a part of our budget plans and our project scopes in terms of the modifications and the updates to the spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you. You mentioned the state guidance on moving forward with the charter. We do have a resolution that kind of outlines what that guidance was. So I'm gonna ask the superintendent to move forward with the resolution. We can still have more discussion. I just think it would be helpful for us to hear that. And then Ms. Harris, I'll get to you.
Okay. Yes, so the resolution reads, "At the June 6, 2023 board meeting, the board affirmed by resolution that prior to obtaining the board's approval of a lease of an MCPS facility, MECA must submit a facilities plan as required in Board Policy, CFB, Public Charter Schools, as well as a facility transition plan, including but not limited to how to mitigate the impact on MECA's community of the revised location and a subsequent change in location shortly after starting the program. An acquisition plan for the permanent facility, a modified transportation plan, and other factors related to enrolling students in a temporary location. And whereas it is unclear what steps MBEF will take to mitigate the impact on student enrollment that may result from the distance between the interim location and proposed service area, which is more reflective of the demographic population MBLI is designed to serve. Whereas there is no evidence was provided to demonstrate that families in the community they primarily intended to serve would be willing to attend the school in the interim location. And whereas MBEF did not provide an acquisition plan for a permanent facility to include a cost estimate for design and renovation of the proposed facilities. The MCPS cost estimate for design and renovation is approximately $22,897,944 as compared to the MBEF budget of $150,000 for renovations, a difference of $22,747,944. And whereas while the proposed financing is inadequate, the budget does not include debt service for any of the proposed financing, which would be an estimated $163,500 and $156,792 per year for five years, respectively. Additionally, the loans will have an estimated final balloon payment of $700,000 and the $1.15 million at every year five. There is no demonstration of MBEF's ability to meet such financial obligations. Now therefore be it resolved that since MBEF has not met the criteria for obtaining the board's approval of a lease of a MCPS facility for school years one and two of the proposed charter school, and MBEF cannot meet the financial requirements for acquiring a permanent facility, MBEF has failed to demonstrate that it has, quote, "the ability to meet the financial requirements of attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in Maryland as set forth by the Maryland State Board of Education." And be it further resolved, the MBEF application to operate a charter school in Montgomery County is denied."
Can I get a motion? Move for approval. We can still have discussion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I, so just two questions, looking for very clear, straight answers. So it sounded like, based on what you said just a few moments ago, that your interpretation is that the MSD opinion was that the condition is only showing the ability to meet financial requirements and state, federal, local laws associated with attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in Maryland for the first year of operation?
Mike? They identify school year 2024, '25 in the opinion. And so the Radnor, our use of the Radnor Center supports the ability to be in that building for 20, I mean, to be able to start up in 2024, which is the date that was identified in the opinion by the board. So we, we focused on the startup because that's what the indication, indicated by numbers, 2024, 2025.
Okay. And so one of my, one of my big concerns is the lack of any parameters or ball parking around what are the projected costs for converting the Century 21 property for academic use from its current, its current setup. So I'll just ask this. Since we don't have anything to, I mean, you've provided some pre-approved funding that gets to about 3.7 million, but we don't have any projected estimates of what the cost would actually be to do the conversion for the site. What would be a level of facility renovation or whatever we would call it costs that you could not meet? So if the cost of converting the Century 21 space to academic use was $10 million, would you be able, do you believe, to meet that cost? Or would that be?
Well, one of the considerations that I mentioned in the presentation is that we're leasing these facilities.
Right.
And so 10, 15, 20 million dollars is a significant investment to make in a property that you don't own. And so it would not be our goal to undertake a $10 million renovation. If it were determined that only a 10 or 15, 20 million dollar investment was required, that is why we talked about in mitigating, our mitigation component is looking at alternative spaces so that we are already ready to pivot should the Century 21 space. But that is the point of having a contingent contract. It protects the school board so that in the event that what we said we were going to do, rent the Radnor Center, then after the two years, we don't have this facility, or during the process, we identify timelines and we get things placed, and the things are not moving the way that we agree that they need to be moved, then that is what a contingent contract does. It protects both parties so that if we need to exit, those conditions and those terms and those things have been agreed. And so we all know, if you're unable to do this by this date, if this is what this is happening by this date, then we have the freedom to exit the contract and exit the agreement. But starting in 2024, we have a location. We are able to start moving forward with the plans with the district in terms of advertising it, in terms of making the space available. And we all, we talked about in our plan, the willingness to communicate that we have a dual function plan, I mean, a dual function in our location. And we were talking about that from the beginning and making that information available to our, to our school community, that while we're starting here, this is a temporary location and our ultimate location is to be in this space. We intend to fully disclose that throughout the process. And we have been talking about in the willingness to be able to do that throughout this, throughout this time period. But the state directive indicated 2024, 2025 school year.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, I don't have a copy of the MSD opinion 2303. And so I guess I, is Ms. Williams?
It's in the memo.
Is it in the memo?
Highlight in the memo.
Okay. I just want to be, I want to be crystal clear about the directive from MSD to this body. And so I'm gonna pause and take a look at that. Oh, thank you.
Dr. McKnight?
My wonderful seatmate is gonna just shove that right over me.
You can let Ms. Williams come to the table if necessary. There was one thing I just did want to point out in terms of this space of being very clear about the directive from the state. The state said that given, that, you know, essentially there needed to be appropriate facility and finances to be able to meet the proposal that was given. One of the things that I intentionally talked with the staff about was when that information came, particularly around what the cost would be around the facilities, how would we be working with them? One thing that I think would have been beneficial in this process would have been if we actually had estimate, you know, there had not been an estimate that came from another party for what it would be in terms of the facilities. And I want to put that on the table because I actually had to say to staff, okay, then we have to provide an estimate for MECA Business Learning Institute. So there was an opportunity for, I would hope, for there, for the organizations that you work with around facilities to have provided that information. And that would have been something that you could have included, but that was not met. So MCPS then came in, and that is how our facilities actually got more involved in the process, was because, well, we have to have something that speaks to what the finances would be. So we then stepped in to provide that estimate because one was not given to us. So I think that's, you know, important to consider in this process. You know, if there's any thought around, how did we come up with this? You know, we, that was something we needed to do.
Are we able to ask questions? I know this is your question session, but I think there's a breach or breakdown in communications from what was, what was communicated from the administration to the board because I'm hearing Dr. McKnight say that what wasn't provided, however, that was not requested of MBLI. And what we were requested to do was to provide a presentation that would speak to the actual transition from the temporary space into what it would look like in, you know, by our permanent, when we're actually moving into a permanent space. So I think that there's a lot of omission of communications. I think that there's a use of terminology by the administration that was not indicated at the time in which we've been meeting with the administration. We have met with the administration almost on a bi-weekly basis, and that was at the initiation of MBLI because we're very familiar with the new school opening process, and that's what we were trying to guide the administration to do. It's unfortunate that more than a month and a half after the MSD communicated to both MCPS and MBLI their decision, we still had not been reached out to by MCPS. So we have constantly been trying to facilitate and move through this process to demonstrate full capacity in being able to plan and open a school of choice to the community. We have been constantly met with opposition and delay. And so to constantly hear at this time that we have not evidenced something, or we haven't provided something, I think it's very essential for the board and any other third parties to be very aware that we have been provided very little information from the administration, although we have constantly requested detailed information.
Thank you. So, but what is clear is what the state has mandated, right? And that is a facilities plan and a transition plan. And I think to Ms. Harris's question, you have Stephanie here, Ms. Harris, if you have a question for her.
Just, just for, so everybody knows who everybody is. I'm sorry, we know who the other two colleagues are, but I don't, I don't know your position.
Nikisha, board chair of MBLI.
Oh, you're the board chair, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, so if you could just clarify, what did the state require for the charter school to have, to demonstrate at this point so that we can move forward with the planning, which we're saying has not been demonstrated?
Sorry. So I will read the relevant language from the state opinion, which is in your memo as well. It says, "contingent upon, contingent approval of the charter beginning with the 24, 25, beginning with the 24, 25 school year, on the condition that appellant demonstrate by July 1, 2023 its ability to meet the financial requirements and any state, federal, or local laws associated with attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in Maryland."
So that the state is saying you have to have evidence of financial requirements for July 1st, and I think that's what my colleagues and I are saying we're not seeing here today.
And I, and I think that's sort of unfair, which speaks to what I think Nikisha was getting at. I think the problem is that we are trying to accomplish two things at the same time, right? So we needed to be able to have a suitable building to open for school year 2024, 2025. That is the date that was identified. And then at the same time, because that is a temporary facility, we started down the road of also making sure that we had a sufficient plan for where we could transition to at the conclusion of this temporary lease, right? And so that is what our efforts have been around. The money that we brought to the table supports whatever we need to be able to do in 2024, 2025, which is part of 2025, which is part of the directive. What the MCPS is alluding to is that now we needed to have in place today, money that is predicated on where we would be financially three or four years from now. And so what we, what we tried to do was go to these institutions to explain to them that, hey, we need some money to be able to go into this place. Can you also look at our ability if we need to be able to start this project for Germantown or Gatesburg or alternative facility now? Technically, we would not be required in any other scenario to have two facilities going at the same time, because that's, that's what it equates to what you've been asking us to do, is yes, you can lease this building and get this building together, but also at the same time, do this over here, which is paying two mortgages.
So the Radnor option was introduced when?
At our request.
When?
During the time period that we've been talking, I don't know.
It was, we, we requested it around April, May, and then we were told that we had to submit the waiver for use, but we started exploring vacant possibilities.
Yeah, but so you, you must have had a plan for Germantown before you had the Radnor option and must have met, working towards me, meeting the financial requirements of that option until that was granted. So that's, again, that was a recent introduction, and I'm not seeing evidence of the work that you had done to meet the financial requirements of your Germantown facility.
Yes, and that, hello, everyone, that is actually in process, much to what we have been saying. We need the signed agreement with MCPS in order to move forward and finalize some additional pieces in order to fully go through our Century 21 location. And so while we are in negotiations, again, we are pivoting and moving and adjusting based upon constraints and parameters that have been thrust our way as a part of this process. We had a very solid partner with Highmark Schools Development Corporation that we brought to the table in person in March with hopes that we could move forward with the agreement. The only thing that was required was the agreed upon contract between us. Once that was finalized, we could then move forward toward acquisition and full development of our permanent facility, which wouldn't have required the use of the MCPS transition space at Radnor. Once that process did not manifest and fell through as a result of not having the agreement, we pivoted again in order to work on another option, which included a lease. And we began negotiations in a number of locales, including the Century 21 building. But again, we're stymied because we need the lease. We need the agreement between us. Once we do that, we can then move forward more meaningfully. We are still in negotiations and discussions, but this is the key piece that we need in order to finalize. And that would help us round out both our projections and our planning, because then we can be clear about what supports the Rickman Management Group and the owners of Century 21 would be able to provide for us in addition to the development of our renovation budgets and finalizing our financial products in order to cover the cost for those renovations and adjustments.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, question. So you wouldn't have the per pupil funding available to the 24, 25 school year. So is this, am I reading this, that the $900,000 charter school, charter, school startup grant, is the money that you would use to get Radnor ready for opening in the fall of '24? Is that the funding source there?
So that funding is available for use for Radnor, yes, ma'am. And so we are able to submit budget reallocations. Once we know from a project scope what we are responsible for, for that space, we would submit a budget reallocation to the state to have them realign our budget so that we could acquire whatever may be needed in those spaces. But yes, that money, that $900,000 can be used for the startup of the facility.
And I think it's, it's complicated, because while you're saying you have enough for the start for the first year, there's no evidence that there's enough for the future years. And again, we are starting our students in a path that we don't see a sustainable plan for implementation. Ms. Williams?
So I wanted to refer back to the state's language that I just read about beginning in the, a contingent approval of the charter beginning with the 24, 25 school year. A charter agreement is, is, is four to five years to start with. So at the time that this state board opinion was written, and, and the initiation of our conversations, there was no contemplation of a two-phase, an interim or anything. So, so as they were not able to find a permanent facility, then the conversations began about, well, do, do you have anything in your inventory? We looked at the CIP, told them about Radnor. So I don't think there's ever any contempl, it can be adequately read that this means that they only needed to have a facility for the first year, because that's, a charter is, is, is at least four years. So this, this interim use of Radnor was an effort to begin the process of being able to house, to house the students.
But if I can jump in real quick, I think it's fair, yeah, just briefly, to make sure that we understand, we brought Highmark Schools to the table initially. There were, like, too much to Stephanie's point, we were not looking at trying to alternatively locate initially. We had a sound plan, a solid agreement with Highmark Schools to work with us on finding property, vetting that property, renovating that property, going through all of the various real estate components. That is what we were doing for the first, maybe two to three months of our conversations with, with MCPS staff. The vice, the vice president for Highmark even came and met with the staff as a part of one of the meetings and explained the efforts that Highmark had already engaged in with, and explained that the last piece that they needed for underwriting was the actual contract. And so because we have not been able to get the contingent contract document, we were not able to maintain the timeline that Highmark needed in order to get us through the real estate phases and making sure that we have sufficient progress to open for 2024. So then, yes, we did pivot and say, okay, well, Highmark can't, we missed a lot of the milestones for Highmark because we still don't have the agreement, what is an alternative? And then we went through and we asked about the alternative facilities that may be in the MCPS portfolio. And then we went through the steps. So it's not that this was the original plan, this was the plan B. But what we are being asked now to do in terms of explaining not only money that we would need today, but money that we need two years from now, to me is where I think we are, we are varying far, because the contingent contract supports that. That is what that language is for.
Thank you. Ms. Harris, and then we're going to wrap up the conversation.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, I'm just looking at the, the rather vague language of the state opinion here. And it's simply not stated the extent to which the forward planning is required at this stage, so.
Good. Ms. Williams, do you have any comments in terms of the, the contract not being available and that preventing further exploration?
So after, so after we reviewed the, which I don't see that the applicants have attached, if I'm overlooking it or have overlooked it, please do point it out to me. I don't see where they have attached the Highmark agreement that they're talking about as a reference. But that was a, as an attachment to the application. But it was a letter of intent, and it specifically said, this is a letter to continue conversation, the continued discussion about the possibility. And there were numerous contingencies on that, in that document. But in response to the concern about the contract status, because we are in, in the process of an agreement in order to have a contract, on May 11th, Miss Silvestri issued a letter that indicated that the county board formally acknowledges that by virtue of the issuance, issuance of the Maryland State Board of Education's opinion at its January 26 meeting, the county board has awarded MBEF College and Career Academies, Inc., with the contingent approval of its spring application to open a new charter school beginning with the 24, 25 school year, provided that you meet the, MBEF demonstrates the following over the next five months. And then repeats the state board language of the opinion in, in, at the request of the applicants, we added clarification of what that means. So we added, i.e., property development agreement, loan commitment documentation, or binding letter of intent slash memorandum of understanding from funding sources as appropriate for property acquisition. And we added language about the September 15th of a lease sign, of a signed lease, so that in the event they were able to have financing in ahead, ahead of schedule of the actual completing an agreement with a, a facility, they would have from, until the September 15th to sign a lease. So that provided extra time to get the financing and then, and then sign a lease together. We did not hear back that this document, in which signed by the board president, assures that the charter will be issued, and the charter has all of the charter application. A charter agreement incorporates the terms of a charter application, which included the per pupil funding amount that was contemplated at the time the application was made in 2022. Our budget team advised that the more recent PPA is, not only was it presented to them, but it's available on the website that anyone else could, could readily see. We did not receive any feedback that this letter was not sufficient.
That's, that's actually not accurate. When we met in the following meeting, we explained that we received a notice, but that there was an additional stipulation that was outside of the July 1 contingency that was mentioned by the state. The state only talked about July 1. They didn't mention anything about September 15th. So to Ms. Harris's point, there was no specific language talking about out-year planning from the perspective that that memo, and we mentioned that to you, Stephanie, that you've added an additional stipulation. The directive was only to award a contingent contract. And we shared that the contract being contingent protects the local board. We also shared that for us to solidify any of the things that we needed to do from an action basis, we needed the actual, fully executed contract. That language, had we worked together to develop it, would have protected both the board and us, should somebody have aired. So if there.
Thank you. Well, I, I don't see any further lights. I think the board has to make a decision based on, on the information that we have heard here at the board table. We, Dr. McKnight has read the resolution, we have a motion and a second. If there is no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor? Please raise your hands. Can you say the, the final resolve, so we're sure if we're?
Yes. Therefore be it resolved, since MBEF has not met the criteria for obtaining the board's approval of a lease of an MCPS facility for school years one and two of the proposed charter school, and MBEF cannot meet the financial requirements for acquiring a permanent facility. MBEF has failed to demonstrate that it has the, quote, the ability to meet the financial requirements of attaining and renovating a building suitable for use as a public school in Maryland, as set forth by the Maryland State Board of Education. And be it further resolved, the MBEF application to operate a charter school in Montgomery County is denied.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Mr. Said, Mrs. Evans, myself, Ms. Revetta Oven, Mrs. Modrowski, all opposed, raise your hand. Ms. Harris abstaining. Ms. Yang, Ms. Wolf. Okay, Mrs. Mandike, how many was that?
Four to approve it, one opposed, two abstain.
Okay. So what? Can you repeat who was?
Ms. Revetta Oven, Mr. Said.
Mrs. Evans and Mrs. Modrowski voted to approve.
And myself.
My apologies, I didn't see your hands.
Okay, so the motion passes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Our next agenda item is item number eight. We have a very exciting discussion today about our school improvement planning process, and I will ask Dr. McKnight to proceed with the presentation.
Thank you for calling me exciting after all the study. So I am just giving us a moment. I know we, it looks like we have the entire OSSWB staff in the building. Welcome, everyone. So we'll go ahead and get started, but what I did want to say is, as you see them all coming to the table, you see a beautiful picture of, as we embrace the conversation around school improvement, that there are multiple offices represented in this work. I am so thrilled and happy that everyone found their way over to this room, because I think it just further exemplifies the importance of, as we support schools in the process of school improvement, there is so much that is involved in that, and we cannot silo that work. And so we have intentionally really coordinated the, the process to really embrace that. And I want to thank the staff and the leaders for doing this, because this is a conversation that they have taken and built and took feedback from our schools and recognize that after COVID, you know, we want school improvement to be targeted, focused, and get back to how are all of the students in that building excelling and reading their full potential? So today, they're going to actually come and share what that reimagined school improvement planning process looks like, and what it's going to look like in its implementation for this upcoming year. One thing I wanted to point out about the, the new school improvement process planning that, you know, this process was also very inclusive of the findings that we, we, we acknowledge in the anti-racist audit. And we talked about the action planning from that audit. We really focused in on what are all the processes that we have that exist but need to be strengthened or renovated, I would say, to make sure that we are addressing the needs of the things that came up in the anti-racist audit. And one of the first deliverables of the anti-racist audit action plan, under the domain of school culture, states that a new anti-racist school improvement process will be implemented and will include input and feedback from students, staff, and families to reflect the diversity of that school community. It stated that it would include intentional and purposeful actions to recognize, respond to, and redress issues of bullying, harassment, and discrimination. And we heard a lot of feedback from our community around what that looks like and in particular areas of our county. It also would include instructional priorities identified in the pathways that will ensure equitable achievement on the competencies and experiences that all of our students receive to continue to decrease variance that exists in terms of services to students across the district. And then finally, it included that data analysis, data collection, and monitoring to dismantle structures, policies, practices, and ways of being in order to ensure the elimination of racial disparities within all aspects of school culture, including but not limited to academics, discipline, and attendance, would be addressed. And I wanted to state those things because as we talk about the anti-racist audit, its findings, and the work planned to address it, the school improvement plan, which is something that all schools will engage in in this system, is a key lever in how we continue to make that come to the forefront of the success of all students in Montgomery County Public Schools. So I just couldn't be more excited to have the Office of School Support and Wellbeing here at the team, our office of, of Stephanie's office. Thank you, Strategic Initiatives. I should know this. Strategic Initiatives. And just so many variation of positions that we have within the offices that really does focus on how we make that major shift from what school improvement has been in the past to what it needs to be today for the students that we have in Montgomery County. So I'm thrilled that we're going to have this conversation, and I'd like to turn it over at this point to our acting chief of the Office of School Support and Wellbeing, Ms. Diane Morris.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. We are so excited to join you this afternoon. It would be impossible to fill this room with all the people who have worked on this reimagining of school improvement. We name the Office of Strategic Initiatives, but we've also partnered with OSIP, as we've talked about, our student groups, and it has truly been a labor of love. And this afternoon, we're hoping to be able to share where we are with the school improvement planning process. with the school improvement planning process. As you know, it is designed to organize the priorities at the school. It's a combination of short and long-term planning. And it's really a process that we use to identify where are the gaps? How do we fill those gaps through instruction and intervention? And how do we monitor? We, I was super excited sitting back there as the board was sharing their priorities because I wrote down, "The school improvement plan operationalizes the priorities that you shared today." And I think that you will hear that in our presentation. We hope that it's more of a discussion than a formal presentation in terms of learning from one another, hearing feedback. But today, if we go to the next slide, we're really going to spend time engaged in going through the reimagining of the school improvement plan, how we got here, the why behind the reimagining, how we have purposefully and deliberately built the capacity of our school and central office staff. We know that we can't roll something out and not prepare folks. And so this was really about how do we front-load? And how do we communicate our vision about this work as it is aligned to the strategic plan and as Dr. McKnight shared, with domain number one around school culture and the voice data that we received over the last 18 months? We have also enhanced parent and caregiver engagement, also known as family engagement. And that has been done by meeting with many, many people, by bouncing ideas off, both with our internal partners, principals, central office staff, school-based staff, as well as our external partners, which we know we need to serve better so we can serve their children. And then the strategic monitoring. So we did this, and that's really great, but so what? And how do we ensure that the implementation is done with fidelity across schools? And that is why you see a huge presence from OSSWB, specifically the directors and associates who are coaching and supervising principals. Next slide, please. So when we talk about our why, as I shared, we have been collecting voice data for the past 18 months. And in that voice data, we have learned from many members of the community, internally and externally, that our school improvement process was not meeting the needs of all students. So it was not doing what it was designed to do. So we needed to look at what is the design? And how do we enhance the design so it meets the needs of all students? We also, what was confirmed was when we looked at our student outcome data for achievement and well-being. And so that really called us to action. But we didn't want to just jump in without looking at the research. Wallace Foundation, we were benchmarking with other districts. And we wanted to pull the concepts that were out there to really make sure that our plan was comprehensive and inclusive and that our plan really outlined what are the expectations that we expect from all schools? And where might there be opportunities for some autonomy? And during our discussion today, we're going to talk through that. What you should expect to see as you visit all schools and review school improvement plans and where there might be nuances that are really tailored to individual school communities. When we went through and met with the community as well as our internal partners, some of the things that we heard, the themes around school improvement planning that needed to be embedded was it needed to be data-driven. What data are we looking at? How often are we looking at that data? We are starting to see trends about the frequency. It seems like that two-week cycle is really where it's at. When you go beyond that, you've lost so much time to be able to go back and fill in gaps. When you're doing it like teachers do in real time, that has great opportunity in terms of when you're talking about standards. So we know we needed to do work around data. The other thing we needed to include was that it was cyclical. So there's not a start and end date with school improvement planning. It's a plan-do-study-act model. And it's got to be a living document, which means you don't write a plan and put it on a shelf. You've got to be in the plan. You've got to be updating it as you roll out professional learning or as you engage in surveys, as you examine the academic data. All those things need to be happening on an ongoing basis. Professional learning is key. We have to build the capacity of our teachers, our school-based staff, as well as our central office staff. We've engaged in now three days where we have been in retreat. And much of it was on how do we norm our practices so that when we go to schools, they experience the work of our office in a similar way in terms of the predictability and that the expectations are clear with the nuance of differentiation? Because we know that schools might need different things based on what their data tells us. Coordinated support, this was another huge piece. When we think about the MCPS theory of action, one of the levers is differentiated deployment of resources. And so when we look at what our 211 schools need, we know that it needs to be coordinated between and among offices. And in order to do that, we need to really analyze the data to know there might be a need at this elementary school in literacy because their DIBELS data, for example, didn't show the gains we had expected. And so we wouldn't, we would welcome a colleague from OSIP to come along and provide that support. So it's really sitting down, cross-office, and thinking about, this is what we know about the school story, and this is how we're going to respond collectively as a central office team. Next slide, please. So when we talk about the school improvement planning process, we absolutely believe that there must be organizational alignment that results in growth. And we believe that this new reimagined school improvement plan does that. As I've shared, it does operationalize the strategic plan, the anti-racist audit, the MCPS theory of action, and the great news is the board priorities. So because we are aligned, we should be able, the arrows now are pointed in the right direction so that we should be able to attain our goals. Again, the function of school improvement planning is to ensure changed outcomes for our students that we have not served well yet. Okay? So it is, we often hear from folks, can we add facilities into the SIP? And can we add this into the SIP? And we want to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the school improvement planning process and that it is focused on the achievement of our students. And I'll get to in a bit that within that, there is well-being and culture also. We know we have these multiple avenues for how we evaluate, as I've shared through the pathways, and it is aligned. And it all merges and comes to life through the school improvement planning process. Next slide, please. So what's new about the school improvement planning process? Here are the things that my colleagues will talk about today. And I'm so excited for the star of the show, Erin Martin's joining us from Tacoma Park Middle, to talk about how she's been experiencing these things and, more importantly, how it's changed, how they're engaging and thinking about learning for students that have not been proficient or successful to date. And so the first thing is it's a three-year plan. Traditionally, it has been a one-year plan. And the reason it's a three-year plan is we know that change takes time. And we need to build it and provide the opportunity for growth and adjustments as needed. The items that are on this document are non-negotiables. So these are not things that you will see that vary from school to school. The three-year plan will be from school to school. You're probably thinking, well, if there's a new principal, how does that work? The data's the data. And Mr. Adams will talk through how we engage in a root cause analysis and how that data identifies our goals. So if you engage in that process in a meaningful way, it should not change dramatically the work of your school. And again, because I said it's cyclical and living, you are able to make those adjustments as needed. So the three years allows for the time, but also the adjustments that need to happen. This school improvement planning process also has attainment and growth goals. We have never done that before. We've only had the attainment goals. And so I want to just outline what those are. Achievement is a point in time. And it's how that, it's a measure that evaluates how well students perform against a standard. So it's a one-shot deal. How are they doing? Did they meet it? Did they not? And we know that's important, and we know that's what we get, how we get measured from the state in terms of how well we're doing. But we feel that growth is equally important because this is the progress measure. And this is students, the growth that they're making over time. And usually, the overtime is over a year. And so we wanted to be able to measure those things for our students because both are relevant and both tell the story and both really account for all students. For some, we're really focused on that attainment. We've got to get them proficient. And for others, we want to see how they're growing towards the standard. And if they've already met the standard, how are they continuing to grow during their time in MCPS? So all of the SIPs, you'll see that they have attainment and growth goals. The goals are in literacy, mathematics, well-being, and culture. We thought it was super important to add the well-being and culture because we know that our kids need to be well in order to be successful. And when you think about well-being and culture, we think about that the culture are the conditions that are created in the building, usually by the adults in the building, how welcoming it is, how inclusive it is, all those components. So we have some control over the culture in a building. The well-being goals are how do our students show up every day? Those are the things that sometimes we control as the adults who have them during the school day. And sometimes there are things that are outside of our control because they come in, they work a job after school, and maybe they work till midnight. Or maybe they're taking care of a sibling the following morning. Or maybe their parents are, you know, there's been instability. Who knows? There's a variety of reasons. But we want to be able to capture that. And we do that through attendance, voice data, suspension, all those pieces. And then the last piece, we are expecting all schools to increase engagement with parents and caregivers in the monitoring of the SIP. That is a non-negotiable. Where they are on that continuum will vary depending on a number of factors. How long the principal has been there, the togetherness of the community, how well they're bonded or not. So there are conditions that might impact that. But the non-negotiable is that all families will be, that all schools will engage in a deeper and more meaningful way. So I'm going to turn it over to our acting associate, David Adams, who's going to walk us through those key shifts to ground us a little bit more in our understanding.
Good afternoon, President Salvestre, members of the board, Dr. McKnight. Glad to be here this afternoon to talk about the SIP shifts. Because we know that our anti-racist audit is grounded in, excuse me, our SIP is being grounded in the-- pardon me, I'm sorry. I'm a little bit nervous. I'm going to get it together right now. Thank you. Because our SIP is designed to address the needs of our most marginalized students. And we know that there's a stark difference between what our families say and what our, what our staff says about how we serve our African-American and Latinx students. We are requiring or expecting our staff to engage in the root cause analysis that's grounded in anti-racism. That's shift number one. This process leads schools to develop the problem statement, the conditions, the problem statement about the conditions our students are experiencing within the schools. And from there, schools examine why that problem exists, which then leads us to the root cause analysis. And if we can go to the next slide so that you can follow along with this process map. So as you can see, we're, we're, schools again are analyzing why the problem exists, which then leads to the root cause. And then we're asking schools to think about and evaluate through the levels of racism. So I want to give you an example. If I were a principal, after reviewing data and starting my data story, I might glean from the data that I'm seeing trends in how my African-American boys are doing in math in third grade. We would go through this root cause analysis, seek and try to understand why that problem exists. And then we ask, what's the, what's the root of that problem? Is it because our staff is not doing something in their planning? And it could be an example, I'm just going to throw out an example that there's not a conceptual development happening for our students during that instructional block. So we would then go through what level of racism that was and then what needs to change in the way that I'm instructing or delivering instruction for students. This process is really about how we are ensuring that students, our schools are not engaging in blaming our students for the problem, but focusing on the adult shifts. We don't fix kids, we change conditions to help them thrive. So we've also engaged in some learning around or throughout the system for leaders to support them, to develop the skills to understand what it means to engage in anti-racist practices. So our leaders have had an opportunity to engage in ANS and other professional learning with Janita and some other professional learning staff. Next slide. So shift number two is really about the part where we're asking schools to analyze or think about, what are you doing differently? Schools are asked to determine four to five actions while selecting from the action planning document that you see on this slide. What shifts does the action that you're, you're talking about or determining whether or not it's going to change outcomes for students? What is that action addressing? So in this action, in these action plans, we're asking schools to think about whose voices have been captured. As Diane said, have our families been included? Have our students been included in this conversation? Then how is it anti-racist? And what is, what is the intended outcome or desired outcome for our students? Additionally, schools will collect data to monitor that progress, that progress towards their action. I think it's incredibly important for us to note here, as schools are engaging in data analysis processes, as Ms. Morris mentioned, it's frequent, but it's also tended to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all students. So we know that the SIP is about how we are supporting our marginalized students, but we want to make sure that as we're reviewing that data, we're able to accelerate students when they need to be and enrich them when they need to be as well. So if I go back to my example, I would incorporate as an action step here in this document, I would say that we would really spend time as the principal, I would want my teachers to really spend time to develop that conceptual understanding. And then we would say the shift that's occurring is around instruction. So the change in what's happening in the classroom is really taking time to develop that conceptual understanding for students. And that, again, should lead to improved outcomes for our students. And we would see that through the data monitoring. And so that, again, is about how frequent, how frequently we're revisiting that data and acting on that data. Another note to make about this is as we, as schools are filling out this action plan, this is an opportunity for us as directors and associates to really have an understanding of where our, where our schools are focused in terms of the shifts in adult practice that they're making so that we can figure out how to best support them and coach and provide the resources to, again, support the shifts that they feel are going to make the change for their students.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
With your, following along with your example about African-American male students, you said you were going to, can you just restate what the action would be?
So in this particular example, it was just an example that I made up. So one of the areas that we might see that in a classroom that needs some support would be, how do we tend to, not just the procedural math, but how do we develop conceptual understanding of what's happening when you're doing this math? And so I was just trying to paint a picture of an example of something that we would be doing in a classroom to enhance instruction for students, to ensure that they really have a grasp of the, of the why that you're doing the math.
The formula, but really understanding the math behind the--
Yep. Six times six equals 36 is procedural. Conceptual is the array, right? Developing the array and really painting that picture of what that means.
So where, where in the plan, I mean, that takes work with teachers.
Yep.
Where, how, where in the plan do you outline what, how you're going to help teachers do this so that it can reflect, be reflected in the rest of your plan?
I can start, and I let my colleagues jump in here. As part of, as part of the planning process, principals are working with their IELTS right-- As part of the planning process, principals are working with their IELTS right now to go through this process of what is our action, what is our shift? And then we've got to really think about what professional learning is occurring at the school level to support the shifts that we're asked, that they're determining whether or not from their data analysis. So you have your data analysis, you go then through creating your actions. And then the next level work is how do we get our teachers to understand their work and being able to implement that into the classroom?
So you might capture that in leadership responsibility or next steps?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would anybody else add anything?
There's a separate action plan where the principals, the school teams, not just the principal, develop the learning that the school will engage in. So we together, so Janita serves as the coordinator of organizational development and our office is really working closely with the folks in Stephanie's shop, strategic planning, strategic initiatives, just kidding? Strategic initiatives so that we are providing the macro learning for everyone district-wide. And then they go back to their schools and they tailor the learning that they need. So if that's the instructional focus that they've pinpointed, that our kids, when they look at the standards, are saying there are deficits there, what learning then do the teachers in their PLCs or school-wide need to engage in? And then how do you go in and monitor? So we then shoulder walkthroughs, we might look at informals, we might visit PLCs. So that's how it all comes together.
And I would just add that that's also the work that our LASs are doing with our staff development teachers. Learning and achievement specialists are supporting the staff development teachers in creating that learning progression that aligns to the SIP.
Mr. Say.
And then just like a few general questions of just clarity. So you guys in the beginning talked about like voice data. So I just want to know like kind of how that was gathered, kind of what the voice data means? Were those discussions? Like, how did that kind of work?
So I don't know if we, Mr. Landsman's going to talk more deeply when we get to the family engagement piece. So I don't know if you want us to go through and then.
We can wait.
Does that, is that okay?
Yeah, we can wait for that. And then, oh, sorry. All right, am I good? All right. So how specifically, I don't know if this is going to be addressed later, do you measure growth? So when you look at just achievement, right? You know, I definitely think that's extremely important. But when you look at achievement, you know, you can see if you're meeting a standard. But with growth, how are we going to ensure that every individual student is getting that measure of how much they're growing? What's, how is that going to be measured? Just what's that's going to look like?
Hi, I'm Janita. I'm the coordinator of organizational development, as Ms. Morris said. Our growth goals really are individualized for student groups. Our pathways, measures, as DIBELS, MAP, those kinds of things, already provide for us a benchmark for student growth. And so it really comes down at the school level. We talked a little bit about this earlier, how schools are putting structures and processes in place to identify those numbers. What is that individual child's growth? And how do we make sure they meet them? I can use my own incoming sixth grader as an example. I get his MAP report and it tells me exactly how much he was supposed to grow. And so how are schools monitoring that, looking at that and making sure that we're moving students along that continuum towards what their projected growth is? And monitoring that in a systemic way, not just child by child, but how are we looking at groups performing, classrooms performing? That's how, I think. Does that, yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, that kind of answers my question. And then, you know, one last question before we move on and everything. So in the root cause analysis, I love the steps outlined there, especially the step that says identify the levels of racism within the root cause. Are there going to be other metrics just generally related to discrimination, whether it be racism specifically or kind of other aspects related to that that are also going to be taken into account?
So yes, and that will be, we'll talk a little bit about that in shift number three.
Okay, perfect. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Veradav?
So at the beginning, you were talking about well-being and culture, the well-being part. So I just want to, that would be, so truancy will be under this then, right? And attendance. So you will look, you would try to look at the root cause, all of that. And then you will measure it how, I guess?
Improvement, you mean?
Yeah.
So when the schools write their goals, they write them, I believe it was Dr. Addison who came to the table a few months ago and talked about smarty goals so that they are specific, measurable. So they will look at their data and say, if we have 30%, for example, truancy rate, we want to get it down to, they will pick what is, you know, over three years, what that looks like. So at the end, we've closed that and it's not happening. That's how they look at it globally as a school. But then they look at the individual students. And many times, we see an overlap. So a student who's not in school is not performing well. Why? And we might ask, and that might be a technical fix, like I gave the example of a student working and they're, they miss school because they're working till 2:00 in the morning, as an example. And so is an abbreviated schedule appropriate? Again, technical. When we're talking about an instructional, we have to dig down a little bit deeper to say, where is the student in the curriculum lacking? What are those skills that are preventing them to move towards the standard? So there's school goals and then there are individual goals.
And I think that's great, but I guess maybe my question then also is looking, is looking at the school as a whole and who is in that building, comparing to the population that they're teaching? And do we look at that? Do we assess that? Is that part of it? And how do we assess it? And what is it that we're trying to reach? You know, like we have a school that's 90% Latino, 5% professional staff. Do we look at that? And looking at, maybe we need to shift some of that in order to improve parent engagement, academic, truancy, communication? So I'm just trying to see what are the benchmarks on how that is done?
So for that example, we do look at staff and how they either mirror their student population or don't. And that's what I'm hearing at the core of that question. You know, we have staff that move involuntary transfers and those pieces in terms of staffing. So we're not focused on necessarily moving folks within the system, but how do we build their capacity so that it is culturally relevant? So that they can, they are aligned with the students for which they teach and that they understand. So some of the things that David was talking about in the first shift during the RCA is exposing, for lack of a better term, those nuances around culture and understanding and well-being and connecting with students to understand how they show up, whether it's culturally, religiously, whatever the case is, so that we can make them feel welcome, supported, and understand their perspective, more importantly. And hopefully have curriculum that reflects, that reflects that as well.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, a quick question, clarifying question. So what are we calling? We used to call them OSSI directors, now it's OSSWB. But what are we calling this, the level of the teams that are supporting our principals in schools? What are their titles now? Directors?
So they're still, the principal supervisor is still a director in OSSWB. However, we are putting together support teams that will speak to the need at each school. So one support team might have a colleague from the Delmay office because it's a large English EML population at this school, where another school might have a math specialist because their math data is just far below other-like schools. So it's very personalized, but we are putting together support teams for schools.
So I just want to say, Ms. Morris, I so appreciate the positive energy and the diversity and the kindness of those people. And they're all around the room, so I was just wondering if they could raise their hands.
All the directors?
All the directors, yeah.
And we have several watching from home who just couldn't be here.
So, yeah. We can proceed with the presentation. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Mrs. Mandrowski has her hand up, but I can't see her, but she just texted me. So if we could.
That's good, thank you. So, you know, Ms. Harris basically just asked for the first part of my question about the role of the director in the supervision of the principal. But my question, my follow-up question would be, you know, basically, how long can a school not be meeting their implementation or improvement goals before our system, our directors take action and we, you know, kind of resolve ourselves in terms of accountability?
So Dr. Moran will be speaking to accountability and via, by way of implementation. So he will dig a little deeper, but it has already started. We are already in schools, we're already looking at data. We're coaching around what is your root cause analysis? Is your goal on target? Is it rigorous enough? And then how do we ensure we are supporting and holding folks accountable? And the accountability is also for this team. We have talked about our structures for accountability because at the end of the day, it is all of our responsibilities to make sure that student achievement is improving. And we hold that at our core. So Dr. Moran will walk us through that in a bit.
We can proceed.
All right, so next slide for the third and final shift. And I think that'll address some of the concerns that you had. So schools are creating goals specific to school culture, climate, and well-being. Schools are expected to unpack how school culture, climate, and well-being connect. Through the root cause analysis, we should be able to uncover the beliefs, the norms and the ways of being, ways of beings of adults and how that contributes to the student experience. Through the analysis of the data, the development of goals, schools can address the behaviors, the mindsets, and the expectations of adults. Schools can also use these shifts to address actions around students, student-to-student bullying, hate bias, and discrimination. So we also know that the school system has made great investments in counseling and psychological services for our students. So this is a great way for us to make sure that we're monitoring how schools are implementing those services and supports and the impact that they're having on our students in schools. So now I'm going to turn it over to John Landsman, Executive Director in the Office of Strategic Initiatives.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Again, I'm John Landsman, Executive Director, yes, in the Office of Strategic Initiatives. I'm just going to say that a couple more times. I'm also the co-lead for the Community Engagement Action Team that resulted from the anti-racist audit. I've worked with many of you on family engagement. It is a passion, it's personal to me. I've shared this at the table before. But I myself would not have made it out of high school had I not had a mother who understood how to navigate the system. I would say the same thing for my son, who just graduated Einstein High School and is on his way to college. But without family engagement, I don't think he would be on that path. Today, I will explain what we mean by family engagement, why we believe family engagement is important in the school improvement process, how we are providing the support and professional learning for family engagement, and how we are holding all schools and central office accountable for family engagement. I do want to say that my presentation on family engagement is strictly about the school improvement process. There is an action team, as I just mentioned, that is working on comprehensive family engagement. That will not be the focus of this part of the presentation. Next slide, please. So this quote comes from the anti-racist system audit and it represents a lot of what we've heard from our families. It actually begins, "The general approach to communication and family engagement is very biased towards white, English-speaking, professional families. As for MCPS, I graduated in the 90s. Since that time, I've seen very little change in the achievement gap and support for Black and Hispanic students." The speaker goes on to say, "So the question to me is not about how well Montgomery County schools seeks input and participation in policies, but how well they hear what families of color are experiencing and making the necessary changes to resources to support populations that need the most support." I heard that earlier when you all were talking about your priorities. It's not just about going out to engage families for the sake of engaging families, it's about what we do with that information. This quote leads to two fundamental points that underline what we believe family engagement is and why it is important to school improvement process. The first foundational point is that family engagement is not an end in itself. It's an integral component to having high achievement. According to the National Standards for School and Family Partnerships, decades of research shows that family engagement matters for student success. Students whose families are engaged are more likely to attend school, avoid discipline problems, achieve at higher levels, and graduate. That report also goes on to say, "Family engagement also helps schools. It is equally as important as school leadership or a rigorous curriculum to predict school improvement." The second foundational point is that MCPS must use family engagement to inform our programs and practices to support academic and social-emotional success of all of our families. Many of our students and families tell us that family engagement often feels like it's just a check in a box. And we need to go beyond just events and one-way communication. There have been many valid questions from this board over the past year about engagement. You've asked, whose voices are we listening to? Are we engaging the families we most need to hear from? And how are we using all that information for our schools and making sure that our schools are being held accountable to engage our families? The truth is that anti-racist and culturally responsive family engagement requires the same level of intention that Mr. Adams described for the other areas of the school improvement plan. It requires the belief that families have experience and expertise that we need for our schools to be successful. It requires structures, tools, and professional learning to support effective anti-racist and culturally responsive family engagement. And it requires accountability to ensure all of our schools are implementing effective engagement strategies. Every school will be required to engage families in the school improvement process. What that engagement looks like, however, will be different at each school because of the needs, the experience, and the trust between the staff and the families. Next slide, please. The anti-racist audit told us that many families of color perceived that MCPS intentionally miscommunicates with them. The audit also told us that many MCPS staff don't feel like they've been given the resources and professional learning they need to effectively engage all families. Both these findings illustrate the need to improve the way we support our staff to engage families. Just like the school improvement plan, just like that the school improvement plan is a three-year process, shifting our practice on family engagement will take a process and it will take time. The good thing is that the school improvement that the anti-racist audit told us that we actually have a lot to build on. They said we have many strong practices. The problem is that those practices are not consistently implemented across the district. So our first step is to give everyone the professional learning about anti-racist and culturally responsive engagement and then to ensure everyone is taking the training and implementing a plan. The Community Engagement Action Team is working on a comprehensive plan for all staff. I will briefly review a training module that is specifically targeted to principals and the school improvement plan. Everything was created based on current research, along with a great deal of input and collaboration over time from our families and community partners and how we currently implement engagement and how we do this better. For example, for some of the input that we've received includes Francis Frost, who is on our planning team, who is an expert on the National PTA Standards for family and school partnerships, and also, which also serves as the foundation for our Board of Education's Policy ABC, family and community partnerships. Last year, several of us engaged in a year-long collaboration with the Black and Brown Coalition to develop best practices. As you know, we had over 130,000 responses to the anti-racist system audit that helped inform the current practices and the current experiences and our ideas for action. And also, this work is based on thousands of hours of study circles with families. Some of you participated in those study circles. The focus groups that we did last year for the new community engagement policy and the expertise that our parent-community coordinators have who successfully engage families every single day. I unfortunately don't have time to go over the entire module, so we will send you the module. But I'm going to go over just some of the major points. So the module is designed to help school leaders engage families in developing, monitoring, and revising the school improvement plan. All schools will be held accountable to go through the following five steps that you see on the screen. Step one, every school must decide what the purpose is for engaging families in the school improvement plan. Again, we don't want to engage families just for the sake of engaging families. We're engaging families to. We're engaging families to support the school improvement plan, and they need to do that based on their school's data story and their goals. So the family engagement for the SIP, for the SIP, will connect to the school improvement plan, I mean, their school story and their goals. For example, a school data story might show that 40% of Hispanic students are reading below grade level. The school's root cause analysis showed that teachers don't have the skills to build a collaboration with the families of these students. This is all an example. Therefore, the goal is to teach the staff how to build those relationships and learn from the families. That's why we're engaging the families. Step two is, who is our focus audience? Again, it goes back to the school story and, and the SIP and the root cause analysis. We don't want to just engage generically. This step requires that schools have conversation about their focus for engagement. Who are, based on their story, who do they need to engage? In the example I just gave, it's the 40% of Hispanic families, the families of the 40% of Hispanic students who we need to engage. But in this process, we want schools to go further than just saying it's Hispanic families. We want them to have conversations about who those families are, what are their cultures, what are their backgrounds? We need to go beyond just this generic idea that we're engaging Hispanic families. Step three is the level of engagement, which I'm going to explain a little bit more in the next slide. I'll just say this, the level of engagement must also relate to the data story and the engagement goal. So this is a process we're building. We want to know what our goal is, who's our focus audience, and what is the level of engagement to reach that audience and that goals. Schools must plan for the level of engagement needed for staff to change their practice and for families to have the tools and resources to support their needs. So step four on this slide and in our module is a discussion and analysis of the barriers to engagement. And this is just like what Mr. Adams described in the rest of the SIP. They need to do a root cause analysis about what are the barriers to engaging these families to meet that goal? The analysis is specifically targeted to the engagement goal and the focused families. And it's important, before I move on, to say, a family's racial background or the language they speak are not the barriers. The barriers are our beliefs about what the families from that background can offer or the lack of structures we have set up to engage families who don't speak English. And so we want to be clear about what we mean by barriers. And then finally, step five. Step five is putting all of this together. We know, we want to make sure that we have a process that builds on the barriers, overcomes the barriers, to reach the level of engagement, to reach those particular families that meet the goal. One of the shifts that we're making this year is the recognition that schools can't necessarily do all that on their own right now. As I mentioned earlier, we have a Community Engagement Action Group that is working on tools and professional learning necessary to support all schools. We also recognize that schools will have to work with their parent-community coordinators and other community partners to effectively meet this plan. Next slide.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I want to make sure, so it's good seeing everybody at the table, people that I haven't seen in quite some time is love. Were you once an instructional specialist?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay. Glad to see you at where you're at. So my question is, and, so how do we go about, and if this is coming up, you let me know, how do we go about including the families to help develop the story? And if, in fact, they are not a part of developing the story, how do we get them to buy in to what we're saying the story is, right? Because that's part of engagement as well.
Sure.
That's an excellent question. And I think that part of the birth of this reimagined SIP is understanding that it has to be grounded in things that we haven't been grounded in before. The first is understanding that caregivers' families, a student's village, matters. And how do we ensure that the village is part of the conversation when schools are developing what it looks like to improve achievement for, for students? So we have started our school improvement plan process by asking schools to develop data stories. And we use narrative intentionally because we can always look at graphs and charts, but narrative is universal. Stories give us emotion and tell us more than just what quantitative numbers tell us. And so we've asked schools to develop their data stories and include families in that conversation. I got communicated to by my son's school about their data story, and so that happened back in May. Schools were able to put back out to their school communities what their data story were. They identified the data that they looked at. They identified what they learned by looking at that data, and they also identified what, as a school, they are committing to by looking at that data. And schools, again, did that process in a variety of different ways and invited families in, communicated with families in a variety of ways to start that process. I hope that answered your question.
It did. It did. I think it's important for our community to know what the work looks like, because there can be a lot of assumptions that we're doing the work on our own. And this just goes to all that we say that we're going to do to include their voices in the process, right? And particularly going through the anti-racist audit, which is now a plan, that we did capture some voice data, right? But we want the community to know that we're being intentional about that voice data being representative of that particular community, right? Because you can get the data that we've heard and try to apply it across the system, but we want people to know how we're doing this work. So no, so far, what you've been talking about and, and saying in this presentation has been great and is really good for our community to hear. Mr. Adams, we know that you do great work. So you were down here, you said you were nervous. We, we know you know the work, so no, keep on, keep on letting us know. And we are a friendly crowd. We are a friendly crowd, right? We're going to ask questions, but we know you all are doing good work, so just wanted to say that.
Ms. Yang.
Yes. Thank you for explaining the narrative story. I have a question. Does every student, will every student be able to see themselves reflected in this school improvement plan? If they are, if they will, tell me how. If they are not able, tell me why not.
So as Dr. McKnight shared, the reimagining of the SIP was a result of the Domain One culture goal in the anti-racist action plan. And so if we are looking at it through that lens, then it is for students who we have not served well, okay? So it is designed to look at those students that have not met the benchmark. However, with incorporating the growth goal, it allows the opportunity for students who have already come in meeting the standard for them to show up in the plan and ensure that they are still being monitored and challenged and accelerated. But at the fundamental core of a school improvement, it's about identifying those students who we have not served well yet and ensuring that we are prioritizing them so that we can get them to hit their achievement goal.
Thank you for that explanation. I think it's important that we are bringing everyone along, and, and I also want to say that we cannot assume the student is okay, right? Also, that every child needs to be challenged, that everyone has a moving goalpost to, to process, to, to, to advance. Another question is, while you are developing this new format of SIP plan, who were involved? I know that you, you talk about local involvement in telling the story, but who designed the plan? Who were involved? Who were the players that designed this plan?
So initially, it was members of OSS WB. We sat down, we benchmarked, looked at other districts, we looked at some research, like the Wallace Foundation. What, what is good school improvement planning since the pandemic? Because it has changed, right? So there were a variety of resources we used. We initially did the, the framing out, like the three-year-plan idea, the math literacy well-being, but we absolutely then had to pull in Dr. Pugh's team. We needed to hear from our special education colleagues. We needed to hear from members of DELME. Because when we did our root cause analysis as a central office, we identified those students that we have not served well include our African-American, Black, Hispanic, students receiving special education services, and our English-language learners. And so we wanted to make sure that it was centered on those students while, again, bringing others along. So it was really a labor of love in terms of pulling in. Then, as, as John shared, there's also been collaboration with the Black and Brown Coalition, other leaders, MCCPTA, that we, we shared ideas with and got feedback on.
Mrs. Modrowski's got a question online.
Yeah. Hi, sorry about that. So I'm really excited to hear, you know, that you're doing this work and especially, you know, your active efforts to ensure family engagement. But having served on a school improvement plan committee for, you know, I don't know, 11 or 12 years or something, way back when, you know, frequently for parents especially, felt like it was sort of a checking-the-box to have the parents there. We weren't invited to every single one of the meetings, or we were, would only be there for part of the meeting. And so I guess my question for you is, what measures are you planning on using to ensure that the parents are actually active participants in this process? And then how are you going to know that? So, you know, what steps are you going to take to ensure that that's so? And what measures will you take if you feel like that's not the, the case at each school?
Thank you. So it started this summer when the directors and associates were visiting school leadership meetings. Many of them noted, I'm looking at one of them in space there, for three days, there were three parents, three kids, just in that space alone. We know family engagement's way more than three. But the questions, was it a diverse, were the three even diverse? Or were they your traditional, you know, PTA president, which we so appreciate that partnership? But we have learned that we have formal leaders in communities and informal leaders, and we have to make sure that we are giving equal voice to all. And so that was the one, the one stop that we were able to see. But it's the collection of voice data. So are they giving surveys? It's even how are they distributing their newsletters? So many of our principals now have a program that, you know, translates it in the seven languages, and it's not, you don't have to keep clicking the link and click the link to get simple information. So as directors are meeting with principals during supervisory visits, show us those artifacts. Let's talk about them. Going to events like Open House, we're talking about, how's that going to feel different? I use the example when Seth came to the table to talk about, Seth Adams, to talk about Lellic, and shared that 150 community members were there for a facilities meeting, which I don't mean to sound surprised, Mr. Adams, but traditionally, that's a really large number. My question immediately to him was, "How did you guys do it?" And he said, "We had members of the community call other members of the community. They're the credible messengers, not us. So how do we capture those best practices and share them among schools and then create structures of accountability for us going, observing at ourselves, asking families as we enter spaces with our principals and school communities?" So there are a variety of ways. But remembering to what John said, that it is a continuum, a continuum, and there are many factors at play. But the accountability piece is huge around that. Do you have anything you want to add?
Just wanted to add that I think this is such a great question, and you can't go through the process that I just described and end up with a meeting like you just described. That's the intentionality of this, that we need to make sure that we have helped all of our leaders understand the process to do it. If we just decide to do what we've always done, we're not going to have the same changes that we had. So I just wanted to reiterate that what we're trying to do is make sure that everyone understands the same process, so that when the directors do meet with their principals, they know what to expect as well. If you put up the last slide, I can, I can, or the last two slides, I can also just sort of relate to this. So just real quickly, I won't go through this whole piece, but I think it gets to Ms. Modrowski's question. We actually put this levels of engagement, it's in the board's Community Engagement Policy ABA. And so we are continuing, continuing that in the SIP process as well. And so what we are asking our staff to do is think about, what does engagement look like along this continuum? What does it look like to inform, consult, involve, collaborate? If you engage in those conversations, you can't end up with a meeting where you just have two parents who don't represent the school come to, to that meeting. We need to do things differently, and there are lots of different ways to do it. There are many schools who are already doing it, and there's structures that we can support schools to do. I'll just go to that, to this last slide that I also think connects. So we can go to the next slide. This connects to Ms. Modrowski's question. So this is the question that, what she asked is, is connected to with the question that we continuously hear over and over again, what's the accountability? So the first part of accountability is to make sure everyone actually understands what we're expecting them to do. And so we created this module. This past Tuesday, the ALT, the Administrative Leadership Team, actually went through part of this training so they can understand what this is all about. They are then going through the training with their departments, and we are creating the same kind of training for the directors who oversee schools. And so we can hold people accountable until we make sure everyone understands the same process. So that's, that's what we're, we're doing. The second piece is related to what I just said. Along with the module, there's an actual planning document that is similar to the SIP planning. And when school, directors go meet with their principals in, outline in this, on this slide, they'll have a common document that they can use to discuss what family engagement looks like. So we're not just guessing. There's a way they can go down this process. What were your goals? Who was your target audience? What was your level of engagement? What were the barriers you were trying to overcome? And then what's the result of doing all this work? So I'm going to now pass it on to Janita Love, my colleague, but I hope this connects back to what Ms. Modrowski asked.
Do you have school and family engagement questions, or can you hold them till the end of the slide deck?
No, I just was basically going to say, you know, I love, that all sounds really good, but, you know, some of my big concern is that we do have schools where, for whatever the reasons, the, the community feels very disconnected to it. You know, PTA meetings might have four people there, or three people show up, or the, the community is upset about something and not, not, not engaging. And I just, my concern is just making sure that if we're really going to make a change in the way we do things, as you said, that we're ensuring that we're making that happen. And I'm not really sure how to go about saying that specifically, but I just think that, you know, it's going to take a lot of effort in some situations to really make people feel like they are part of this in a meaningful way. And so I appreciate the efforts that you're putting in.
Brenda, do you have a family engagement question? You're a mute.
Yeah, I, I think what Rebecca's trying to say is the same thing I'm having a little bit of difficulty with here. It's not really difficulty. I guess you would say, I, I don't think, I think we always have processes in place, but the real issue is holding everybody to the same standard. And I think that's what she was trying to say, and it's also what I'm looking to see in this whole process.
Ms. Yang?
Yes. Thank you. The process does sound very thoughtful. Now, John or anyone at the table, do you have an estimate how much time commitment you are requiring the principal or the school staff put into this process?
The family engagement process or the school improvement process?
The, the family engagement process and the whole school improvement process. The family engagement process and the whole school improvement process, from engaging the family, to developing a plan, to evaluating later Tacoma. Do you have an idea what we are talking about, the time commitment?
So, I can't give you a number, but I know that when I was a principal, and I know my colleagues, the school improvement plan was our roadmap. It is what we did. And there were times I would even say to the staff, if we're doing things that are not aligned to our school improvement plan and what we committed, should we be doing them? What's the return on investment? Because our goal is to change outcomes for kids. So I would suspect arbitrarily, their spending of 90%, I mean, this is like their, this is their roadmap. When we are going in for supervisory visits, this is what we're asking about. This is the data we're monitoring. So, it should be taking the majority.
I think I didn't ask my question clearly, not the implementation of the plan. Of course, I'm a teacher, implementation of, but developing this plan and reflecting on this plan, what's the time commitment we're looking at here? Is it only in the summer for developing?
So Ms. Love will talk you through the
That will be helpful.
Professional, and when it started and what it looks like.
Hello, everyone. I'm Janita Love, coordinator of Organizational Development in the Office of School Support and Wellbeing. I'm here to talk a little bit about how professional learning has been an integral part of our school improvement process. And really, it's because we understand the need to create a coherent and aligned structure. I think a lot of the questions that we've had so far speak to common definitions, common understanding of what we're asking folks to do. So part of our professional learning actually started in January with our principals at our ANS meetings. And in that process, we began unpacking with them and their staff development teachers at the time, this process of data storytelling, and moved from that into our April ANS, where we began to talk about root cause analysis. So, our schools have had sort of a leg up on getting started, before they even knew that they had a leg up on getting started back in January. And our professional learning has continued in a tiered model. So if we go back to the slides.
Let's go ahead and finish the slides, because we're jumping ahead in the presentation. So let's finish the slides, and then we'll ask our question.
Although Brenda's beautiful, so I appreciate it. So on our next slide, you'll be able to see our tiered professional learning structure. So we created and partner with our Office of Strategic Initiatives and the Chief Academic Officer, a tiered professional learning structure, and we felt like this was the best way to tackle this reimagined school improvement plan. And so, our Tier One professional learning occurred throughout May and June. That's where we set expectations, we reviewed templates and processes, we supported schools through their root cause analysis, we helped them further develop their data storytelling, we had all of our 211 schools participate in Tier One training. And so, all schools have been trained through that process on the shifts in the school improvement plan. We have also done some Tier Two, what we're calling Tier Two drop-in sessions. So we've offered those through Zoom opportunities for schools to come together and really identify frequently asked questions, their problems of practice, they talk a little bit about their wins and their challenges, and we give them some support, some guidance, some information, a resource that they may need. We move in then to our Tier Three, and that's really where schools get their nuanced coaching support. It's differentiated, it's individualized to the school, and it's really where they get their most specific feedback on their specific work and their plan. And that is done in a variety of ways, with directors, with LASs, with other folks from central office providing that support. We will also hold one of our Tier Three drop-in sessions in the auditorium later this month and in August. You're more than welcome to join us, where schools will have an opportunity to work collaboratively as teams, but also have in space with them, content experts, instructional specialists, folks that can provide on-demand support if they have questions or needs. And so, we have really built this professional learning structure in a way that we believe gives schools the best opportunity to really not only just understand what the new school improvement process is, but have support every step of the way. Next slide, please. We also know that our work in school improvement is not just technical. And so, our professional learning has not just been about the technical pieces of SIP. We have also really dug deep into understanding what the shifts are needed in our ways of being and our ways of thinking about school improvement. An essential element of our professional learning has been anti-racism, anti-bias, and caregiver engagement, as Mr. Landsman brought to the table. We understand that anti-racism and anti-bias and caregiver engagement are essential parts of school improvement. They are not afterthoughts, they are not, we did it already and check the box. They are the grounding foundational work of what it means to improve schools for our students. We understand that school improvement must be grounded in the goal of supporting schools to foster environments where all students and families feel safe, valued, and heard, while also maintaining our system's commitment to dismantling racism and hate bias. So, we continue to engage schools, we continue to engage central office leaders in professional learning. We want to make sure that our efforts are working, so we're constantly checking in, we're constantly asking how things are going. We've actually since May, made revisions to the process based on feedback from our professional learning sessions. We want to make sure that our professional learning builds staff capacity, not just in filling out the paper, but in the intent of the process behind it, and that our support to school is differentiated and effective, so that we can ensure accountability. We have also created a, we're calling it the SIP Learning Hub on Canvas, and it is a one-stop shop for SIP. It has all of our professional learning structures, it has all of our recorded sessions, it has frequently asked questions. Folks are in there all the time, trust me, I know, because when it's not working, they email me and ask. And so, it is really a one-stop shop for anything SIP-related, and schools really are appreciating the opportunity to go back to something and re-watch it and say, oh, okay, now I can try that again. We've had a lot of schools that are using the modules as part of their instructional leadership teams this summer, that they're watching together and using that as professional learning opportunities as well. So, that was fast. My mom's going to tell me I talked too fast. But I would like to turn it over to Dr. Moran to talk about accountability and SIP.
Good to see you guys today. Dr. McKnight, Mrs. Celestri. So I am going to talk about accountability, so if we could switch to the next slide, please. All right, so I think before I start, it's important that we recognize that there has been variance in terms of the school improvement plan implementation across 211 schools. And that has been an enemy of progress for us. The variable that changes that is the supervision of the principal supervisor and the supervision of the principal at the school. That's the key variable, that makes consistency across 211 schools. As an office, as a team, we are very much committed to providing that standardized, strong supervision and support and monitoring. So I wanted just to start with that. It's been said, and this is a quote that I know we've heard over the years, that what gets monitored gets done, right? But what gets supervised consistently and strategically while providing active and relative, relevant supports gets done well. It gets done well. And so, that is what's going to be the grounding for what our work is going to be this year. In collaboration, and I want to also acknowledge, because Ms. Morse was very intentional around this, we involved a lot of principals in the development of the school improvement plan. It was put out in front of them, they reacted, gave feedback, we made adjustments, we, you know, sought out assistant principals, so that was floated around for a significant amount of time. We have developed a standard protocol for our office, and we also have done that through working with principals. And what the standard protocol is, is that we are going to go out with a focus each month on specific data points that are student achievement-based, that are around wellness, whether it's chronic absenteeism, or suspension rates, or operational needs. We each go out with the same exact question, the same focus, we're asking it at the same time. We know that coherence was a finding in our audit, and we know that these are all aligned with the assessment calendar, with our operational calendar, with the traditional events that take place in a school. So that is really going to ground us to provide strong supervision around all aspects, but specifically the school improvement plan. I'd like to add that I think one of the most important things for us to do as a team is to ask what people need. We are often telling people what they need to make gains in student achievement. We need to have the trust of principals and the partnership. When we ask them that question, they respond and give us the real answer with what the resources they need to move the needle for kids. So that should be a focus as we go out to schools as well. While the supervisory visits will occur every month, four of them are going to be completely focused on the school improvement plan implementation process. There is a cycle. In prior years, we had often gone out, we did a review, and then in the middle of the year, we did a checkpoint. That's not enough. We have to have a cycle of going and looking at the development of it, which is taking place right now, and goal-setting with principals around the specific standards. And I think that's important for me to say. Principal supervisors, principals are held accountable to standards, right? A standard is set at every single school, there are 10 of them, and we need to hold people accountable to standards. That's why they're created. So we go out July and August, we're doing goal-setting, we're doing SIP development, we go back out again November and December, we do SIP review, February, March, monitoring, and then in May, evaluate. Right? So those are four very structured processes where we're delivering feedback, where we're looking at their goal each time. I mean, this is all really driven by the goal, by moving the achievement, whether it's growth or whether it's achievement, it's grounded in those smarty goals that you guys have heard about. We're talking about those consistently at these meetings, but also in between. I think also what happens in between around the support is critical, the coaching up to these different checkpoints along the way that our principals receive from their directors, and then how we resource deployment. The timing around this protocol is critical. You go out in November, you're getting a drop of a significant amount of data. You're getting your DIBELS data, you're getting your MAP-R data, you're getting your MAP-M data. You have all of that data, and you're out there at the same time it drops with the principal to make determinations about what are the resources you need to move student achievement, whether it's for a specific racial group, whether it's for a specific grade level, if it's through our graduation validation process and we're, you know, case studying certain groups of students. It has to be timely. And I think that's the other thing about the school improvement plan, this idea that the goal is the goal throughout the entire year. The goal changes as the kids change, similar to how you change as a teacher in a classroom. You differentiate your supports, the goal moves a little bit, you shift and you keep growing. You don't stop. If you meet your goal in the middle of the year, you're not going to say, all right, great, you know, school improvement plan complete, right? You would then accelerate the goal. And that's what we want to see happen. We saw a great rate of progress this last year, we want to accelerate that rate of progress in schools. So if we go to the next slide. So I, in thinking about accountability, the time has come for us to return to a culture of accountability. The school improvement plan is an accountability tool. That's what it is. That's what it's been, that's what it needs to be again. It is a roadmap to results that isn't to be used by only a certain group of educators, students, or community members, not at just specific times, but a daily tool to drive school-community improvement, right? School-community improvement. As we strengthen our culture of accountability, we must communicate and reinforce that a culture of accountability isn't a negative thing. It's not a negative thing. We got to remove that as we work with our principals, as we work with one another. It is in fact a positive thing. Communicating clear and consistent expectations to schools and leaders, determining and providing the resources needed to meet these expectations, and communicating positive or constructive feedback based on performance and results. People thrive on what's the expectation? How am I doing? Right? Consistently getting that feedback, that predictability, knowing, front-loading questions when you're going to go out to a school in September, or November, in January. You know when I'm going to come and ask you, you're prepared, I've set you up for success. That's the key to really supervising and holding people accountable. So this will be a charge of not only the protocol, but it's also a call to action for our directors and associates. We need to grow. We need our principals to grow, and the number one reason why is because we need our kids to grow. If we don't grow, these achievement results aren't going to change. So we're going to have to push the envelope this year. We really are, on one another, on our principals, our principals pushing back on us through that shared accountability, but that's how we're going to get the results that we need. I just also wanted to say, and I know it's important that we get to the conversation component of this, the, one of the things that we just recently engaged in is we developed actions and expectations for ourself. We looked at research about effective principal supervision, and we committed really to enhancing our principal supervision by putting, you know, teaching and learning at the heart of everything that we've done. We have to transition away from this operational, drive-by supervision when there's serious incidents, to getting back to consistently focusing on teaching, learning, and results. That has to be our call to action. We are committed to doing that, and we're committed to doing it with, going out with a purpose to our schools, engaging instructional leadership, whether it's going into classrooms and looking and inspecting the instruction, and talking with the principal afterwards about what they saw, what the feedback they're going to deliver, sitting in professional learning communities, sitting in collaborative planning and looking at the quality of instruction that's being planned side by side with the principal. We have to, you know, be there to really foster the instructional leadership piece, and we are committed to that. And then the last thing I think we really need to do is, we need to bring networks of people together, because there is the social accountability piece, right? When you hear from a peer about what they're doing, whether, when they have a similar problem of practice that's grounded in their school improvement plan, and maybe Aaron is moving the needle on that, I need to know what Aaron's doing at Tacoma Park, right? I need to know, because I want to duplicate that, I want the same results. We have very similar kids, there's no reason why I can't apply the same instructional focus, the same strategies and structures that are working over here to work on my side of the street. So, I'll stop with that, and then I believe I'm turning it over to Ms. Martin.
Yes, go ahead.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Dr. McKnight, my name is Erin Martin, and I am the proud principal of Tacoma Park Middle School. I am also joined here today by our PTSA President, Ramona Diop.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So I'm going into my third year at Tacoma Park Middle School, and I've been in the county, this will be my 24th year in the county, and I say that not to share a statistic about me, but to say that I've been through the SIP process at various levels over the past 24 years. I've, in certain years, felt very inspired by the work that we are doing. I've done everything as a classroom teacher, as an assistant principal, and as a principal to use the SIP to ground us in what we need to do to serve children. I am very excited to share with you today, from the school perspective, how these shifts impact school improvement planning at the school level. I'm going to go ahead and read a little, because I could talk about this for days. So, "Through the new reimagined SIP process, we at Tacoma Park Middle School have been able to center our leadership on self-reflection on the conditions that we as adults are setting and we as leaders are setting. These conditions are being evaluated as either dismantling or perpetuating barriers for all students, and especially our most marginalized students. The first valuable shift is in the root cause analysis process. This process is again focusing on our school, on the conditions that we are setting through our leadership, our instruction, processing our leadership, our instruction, processes, and programming. We are keeping our causes focused on ourselves and not on a fix-the-kids mindset. Our theme at Tacoma Park this year is changing conditions for children, not changing children. Moving through this process with a leadership team provided us with a completely different, more-focused lens by which we analyze data. Historically, we have analyzed data through a window approach and landed on root causes that place the onus of improvement on children or other factors. This summer's, with the only criteria being, is it within our control or not? And this summer's leadership felt very different, completely different. For the first time, we engaged with the data analysis and root cause process with a window and a mirror. Further shift is that this process is designed to identify a complex, comprehensive problem that, with a mirror held up, forces us to explore the adaptive challenge and underlying conditions rather than technical solutions, such as elevating a singular instructional approach or practice. As a result, our focus is centered around using a street-data-driven process to empower all staff to identify, disrupt, and remove the underlying structures, processes, and ways of being that have a negative impact on our students, most significantly for our Black or African-American students and our Latinx students. In addition, the requirement to identify the levels of racism has been very powerful for the team. We have uncovered how we have allowed biased mental models to drive our decisions. This realization and the deep dialogue it took to get there has opened our team up to being more vulnerable with each other and more reflective about our leadership practices. It starts with the leadership in the schoolhouse. If we are to disrupt the racism that exists within our systems, processes, structures, and ways of being, we must be able to name it. And that we did as we went through our root cause analysis. The shifts in the SIP have facilitated very different conversations and provided better tools to dig deeper into the roots of student experiences, identify how mental models influenced decision-making, and supported our leaders at Tacoma Park Middle School, and how to disrupt within our educational program the barriers to student success. As a result of these shifts in the SIP planning process, the leadership team at Tacoma Park Middle School has committed to always disaggregating data, both quantitative and qualitative, by race and service group, to gain a greater understanding of our stakeholders' experience from and through various perspectives. Focus on the conditions that we, as leaders, are creating or not, with a goal of identifying and disrupting those that are not serving our students, especially for our Black and Brown students. Moving from making assumptions about what students need based on data to leading with stakeholder voice to make decisions about what students need. Moving from parent involvement to parent engagement to make decisions about what students need. I, as the principal at Tacoma Park, have committed to more authentically engaging and partnering with our PTSA to talk about what the barriers are to parent engagement and how we take this first year to really reimagine how we're engaging families, not just providing opportunities for them to hear what we're doing, to be active participants. And then, and all of that, in and of itself, has been a significant shift. We have felt it. We are inspired by it, not just the administration, not just myself, our teacher leaders on the team. After working through the first part of our SIP planning last week, I collected feedback from our leadership team, and here is what they say they liked about the shifts in the process. They said, "The shift to three years allows us to track the efficacy of the plan, engage in the leader learning and capacity building to adequately lead the work with staff and continue to dig deeper. So before we act as a leadership, we are building our capacity. And we feel that a three-year cycle allows us to really intentionally move through that." It centers the voices and experiences of our children and involves them in the process, which takes our assumptions about what students need and what staff need and what families and caregivers need out of the equation. It focuses on both growth and achievement. We also have committed, and this is something that they recognize is critical in the success and impact of the SIP, that we are racializing the SIP. And that is the only way that we will begin to meet the needs of students. And we now see the work of the school and the school improvement plan as one and the same. And this is from my teacher leadership body. So I thank you all for hearing about my experience. I thank central office. It feels like support. It feels like stretching. There's been stretching and growth already in the root cause process, just by the shifts. And inherent in all of that is a sense of accountability. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is that the end of the presentation? Okay, great. I'm going to open it up for questions. I'm going to go with Ms. Yang, Ms. Rivera-Offen, and I see Ms. Wolf has her hand up as well. If we could keep our questions and responses succinct so that we can use our time effectively.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, for sharing. And you, I think what I took out of your sharing is that we don't just talk about our students, we actually talk to our students, right? I think that is very important. Now, help me understand, who is involved in this tier support structure? When we talk about May, June, May, ongoing, ongoing, so who are the people involved in this tier? Anyone?
So, really quickly, that is a coordination and collaboration among central office staff, organize them, and school teams come and participate.
Okay. So there are principals, teachers participating. Then I have, another question is, in, I love that sentence from Dr. Moran, saying, "Return to the culture of accountability." That's music to our ears. So tell me, who's, who are the participants of the quarterly conversation? You talk about November, so who are the participants?
So the first ones right now are actually being done, actually starting next week, and they're entirely principal to principal supervisor for the first ones, because we're establishing goals that are personalized for the principal, that are grounded in the standards. And then we're going through data, and, you know, there's, there are, there needs to be the opportunities to have those one-on-one conversations where we can, you know, give feedback without other members of their team present. When we move into October, though, we will be doing meetings with either their core teams, which includes their reading specialist, staff development, teacher, math content coach, assistant principal, if they have it, with their admin teams at the high school level, where they'll choose resource teachers that they'd like to be involved, and at the middle school level, with their admin team and content specialist, staff development teacher as well. We also are going to partner with our teammates in OSIP, in special education, in strategic initiatives. And part of that will be, there is, in these meetings, there is the narrative that's set, right? But you, but you really need to inspect the narrative. And the way that we're going to do that at specific schools is by going on what we would call learning walks together, where we would go out and go into classrooms as a team with the principal and some of the principal's members to, you know, inspect what we expect and to see them in action, be able to provide some feedback on the status of the instructional program from what's being said about what's happening, and then actually what's, what is happening.
Yeah. Okay, so that's, that's relevant to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rivera-Offen?
Ms. Yang actually asked one of the questions I'm going to ask, so thank you for that. I am excited that, you know, that we have an old school improvement plan, like Ms. Radoski, when I was a parent, I participated in a couple of those. So, you know, I have mixed feelings about this a little bit, and I'm just going to share it, because I think many of you know that I'm pretty blunt when it comes to things. But I, I think this is great, but I think it was John who said, you know, there are barriers, but sometimes the language, at least for some of our students, are not a barrier, is the understanding of the culture, right? And I know there's two groups that we're focusing on. It's the Black students and the Latino students in this school improvement plan, right? And I cannot help to notice that most of our directors, who are in charge of implementing this plan, I don't see any Latinos. And please don't take this the wrong way, but there is, you know, when we talk a lot about equity and, and being able to reach the community in certain ways, that I, that concerns me. Not that you guys are not capable, but, you know, my reality as a student, as a Latina, as a new immigrant, as somebody, you know, is very different, maybe, than, than your reality as a kid, right? And having those perspectives are very difficult sometimes to, to understand. And having those voices at the table in order to develop a plan that truly is going to impact our community, I think, needs, needs to be looked at. I know I have said, you know, sometimes we need to look in the mirror and see, you know, the students that we represent. And that's important to me, because this is a large population, and we're going through some really hard academic times. And I think this is the worst that in the nation our students are doing, not just in Montgomery County, across the country. And math and English, I think, are the lowest scores we have ever seen in decades, right? So engaging those communities, especially our Black and Brown students early on, and engaging those parents, you know, I feel like there's this urgency of time, and I just want to make sure that we have all the ingredients and all hands at the table. So please don't take it as a way of being, you know, great criticizing us or not loving what we're doing. I think it's amazing, but please take it into account that if you have voices missing at the table, how we can actually improve that in order to be able then to see results in a year, or two, or three, on how we get these communities engaged, and most importantly, how we get these students in a good academic trend, so they can go on and, you know, have fruitful lives. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight.
Yes, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Oven Rivera, for sharing that. That priority is not just your priority, but it's a priority of the system. And I want to say that, and I also, in that breath, want to say, this is a very diverse community, and that's not a startling statement to anyone. But I do have to tell you, I recently did a professional learning with 12 of the largest school districts across the United States. And sitting with every single one of them, none were as more equally dispersed in terms of the representation of students. So I want to call that out, because that is a unique thing about Montgomery County. And I think that we continue to take into consideration who all of our population is, and we must embrace that. Earlier, we were having a discussion about how we are preparing to continue to have our students, who are the ones that represent this diversity, hopefully lead our school system, when we're all gone and retired and moved on. And we talked about the time that it takes in it. But at the same time, I also want to feel compelled to say that the people that are sitting here that are doing this work, they have proven results in many ways of helping to help the academic progress of all students occurring in this district. And that's why they are there. And while I will be the first to say, yes, there's always more that we can and must do to represent diversity, when we began this conversation, I said, "You see many people from different offices sitting here." Many of those staff members who help support this work are not in this room, but I'm proud to say that they do represent Latino backgrounds. Some are in this room. And so, you know, something that we will continue to focus on, but I do want to continue to share that we must acknowledge the progress that we've made. And I think it's going to be important for us to come back to the table and actually talk about what some of this diversity looks like in leadership in Montgomery County, so that we can actually look at some actual numbers. Because I'm going to go on record to say, I'm going to guess, and so I'm going to say this, that we're probably more diverse than we have ever been in Montgomery County right now, in terms of the representation of ethnicity across positions in schools, principalship, teachers, I know that, because we talked about that earlier today, and central leadership. So I share that, because it continues to be a work in progress. I wish we could fix it immediately and make sure everyone is here, but I also want to say, when you think about our area, and, you know, I've done a comparison around, you know, areas that do have more representation in, you know, in diversity. And we're in the DMV area, but I must say, it's also very different from where you see large groups of people who have lived in an area for a long period of time, who continue to grow up and be a part of, of that system that they live in. Montgomery County is a bit different from when we look at that comparison to places like Florida, Texas. And I say that, because these are districts that I'm working with and that I see. And so it's something that we just have to take into consideration, and that, again, nonetheless, that that's the data. It, in no way, shape, or form, will take away from our commitment to continue to do that.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. I'm going to go to Ms. Wolf, and then Ms. Harris, and Mr. Said.
Yes, I wanted to thank Ms. Martin for her presentation. I was very pleased to hear you say that changing conditions for children is what this is about, not changing the children, because so often, people blame the child for everything. And I also appreciated your saying, "We must be able to name racism if we are to disrupt it." Those two statements were powerful. So they tell me that you are clearly in, on the right direction, going in the right direction. It's, it's stuff that I like to hear. But I also just want to say, overall, about the presentation, I appreciate the work that everybody has done on this. It wasn't always clear to me where the equity unit was in this work, but I do want to say that all of our actions need to be linked, or they will just continue to be a bunch of activities.
Yep.
But I will be looking to see how we're doing. I hope to have some presentations through the Strategic Planning Committee about how this work is going. And I'd like us to remember that all of our work has to be focused on teaching and learning, and that the equity and anti-racism work that we're doing must happen. Thank you.
Dr. McKnight?
Yes, Ms. Wolf, I just wanted to say the Equity Initiative Unit, Equity Initi, Equity Initiatives Unit is in the Office of Strateg, I was trying so hard to get strategic initiatives right. It is within that office, and so that's why you see, you saw them, actually, John was sitting center of the table, because it is about centering that work. And as, you know, John talked about it from, from the Office of Strategic Initiatives. You had Janita there from the Office of School Support and Well-being, again, centering the audit and the focus in that, as well as, you know, Peter and Diane. So I'm so glad you said that, because that is our work and our focus that the board continues to see operally, oper, us operationalizing the anti-racist work plan in the work. And that should be the biggest difference, as Principal Martin just shared, that schools are experiencing. It's not that we create, it's like we revamp the processes that already exist, but it's how we do it, and how we approach it that is the biggest difference. And one of the things that they didn't talk much about today, and I know they have planned so much in this work, is just how they've also differentiated this for schools. Like, for instance, you know, Dr. Moran talked about, you know, a lot of how we have to depend on our building leaders to talk about the support that they need. But, you know, take into consideration, someone who's starting out new in the principalship, they may not know that yet, you know? So us doing that work with him, like he said, being there with them, going into the classroom... So us doing that work with him, like he said, being there with them, going into the classrooms, you know, it's that side-by-side work of helping them to be able to identify what the right resources are or leverage points to support. So thank you so much for, for raising that, because that's the center of this all.
And the only, the final comment I have, though, is that on one of the slides it mentioned the SIP was optional, or optional participation. I wasn't quite sure that I understood that, because if this is necessary work, why would the word optional appear anywhere?
Ms. Wolf, I don't, I don't recall maybe operationalized that.
No, it's on a slide. Hold on.
Slide? Maybe it was a training.
Oh, yeah, perhaps it was the training, Ms. Wolf, for the drop-in sessions. So what we do is we, for the first level of training for school teams is mandatory. Then if they want additional support, it's drop-in. So that's how we differentiate. But the SIP is something that is expected, a non-negotiable for all schools, that includes the goals that we outlined need to be a part of that, as well as the family engagement piece.
And thank you for that clarification.
Sure. And in terms of reporting back, I just wanted to add, when we go out and do our supervisory visits, they're very purposeful and we collect data. So we look for trends that we see across and amongst schools that then informs our response. So those are things that we're happy to share out on a quarterly basis, what we're seeing, what's, what are areas of strength and what are areas where we might need to reinforce. So that's one way to report out.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you so much, so much to really like and celebrate here. And I really do appreciate the way we are, as a system, focusing so much on coherence and theory of action in everything that we do and fidelity to the strategic plan and the anti-racist action plan. I keep thinking of, of Dr. Jopdis when we say coherence and theory of action. It was so, those were his, he was so consistent on that. And, and your emphasis that this is the way we do business. Now, this isn't another thing, these aren't boxes to check, this isn't something we're going to do once and then we move on, but this is the way we do business. And that's the way that we are going to consistently and, and comprehensively improve and become the best system that we can and serve every student well. And so I, and I, you know, multiple times during the presentation, we've talked about, and I love the way that you, you, you put it, as a leader of a, of a diverse school, dismantling, looking at every practice, are we dismantling the, the policies and procedures that have led to disparate outcomes, or are we perpetuating? And we talk about anti-racist audit and, and the longstanding ways that we have not well-served our students of color. I am, I'm hoping, and I think there were a couple of glimmers of this, in this, but, you know, I, I will say it again, I'm very, very concerned about the levels of attack our LGBTQ students and staff are under now, and how that is one group that, that crosses every demographic we want to look at, every race, every culture, every socioeconomic group. But how we look at how we're serving them and meeting their needs and supporting them in the ways that help them to maximally achieve, how do we do that? Because particularly now, the, a lot of students and staff are not safe, don't feel safe even identifying. So how we, you know, I'll be interested to know if we've thought about how we can particularly center some of our work about making sure those people in our buildings, those students and those staff members, are getting what they need, they're seen, they're, they're, they're valued, and I don't know. Observation question, how are we thinking about that?
Well, I, I actually, because there's someone very important here, maybe, that I would love for her to give the opportunity to talk. We have the, the PTSA president from Tacoma Park here with Ms. Martin, and they've been doing this work side by side, which I think serves as a, really a model for all of our leaders, for how closely they've done it together. So I just wanted to give Ms. Martin, her an opportunity, if they wanted to share anything.
Can you turn on the mic?
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. So we've been working close to close, and some of the ideas that we have was, we get, we have a parent cafe, and we'll get different ethnic groups to get together, talk about their needs, and select two people that are going to be representing them, and they are going to be the liaison with the PTA. And we'll meet every other month to discuss about what are our needs with the principal and see how we can achieve it, and then meet again to see if we had done it and what worked and what should we do again to make it work. And then also, as a PTA president, I'm going to work hard this year to, with our student body president, and then make all of them involved. We have minority scholars and all of them, and I'm going to pick every single representative and then make them part of our PTA member and then, so the student will be represented, the parents will be represented, and we'll have the staff also who will be represented.
Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you.
Yep, I'm very fortunate to have Ms. Diop representing our caregiver body this year and our students. I would, I would like to say, I think that's one piece that schools grapple with each year is, you know, when we narrow our focus based on our data analysis, if the feedback from staff and, and others is that if we name these specific subgroups, then are we leaving out? How are we serving other groups? And I'd like to respond to that by saying, our approach is not an either-or. Our approach is a both-and. We know that we will always continue to work to serve the needs of all students, of all backgrounds, not just diverse racial backgrounds, but, and ethnic backgrounds, but of all backgrounds. And as we move forward, a critical work of all schools is looking at how we engage students and, and how we are elevating voice through affinity group meetings regularly to understand that experience. That's going to be a critical process of building trust, creating a closer relationship, and really authentically engaging families and students.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and I do appreciate, I'll be looking at, as we're moving, and you, you kind of promised a little bit of an, of a, of a update as we move into the school year with this, this new sort of way of doing business, at, you know, engaging students directly, because I love to see this, this incorporation of a real view of no decisions about them without them, because they are the customers, they are the ones, there are more of them than us, they're the ones that know what's going on. And so I'll really be interested to see how school to school to school, especially at the elementary, well, not just, but how, how authentic student voice data is being incorporated, not just the, the high flyers, not just the presidents of the clubs, but authentically the students are being truly part of the process and making sure this, that the work of the school to improve the school is, is really representative of their daily experience. So anyway, thank you so much for all of this and everybody in this room that's doing this work.
Mr. Said?
I'm going to keep it brief in the interest of time. First, Ms. Martin, were you at Julius, Julius West? Yeah, you were my sixth, sixth grade administrator. So really great to see you. Thank you for all the great work you're doing. So yeah, that's really cool. And I just want to kind of acknowledge, as, you know, many people have said, the great work on accountability you guys are doing. I've heard the concern from students, parents, and just community members alike about the fact that not every school is, you know, meeting the requirements the same way. And so, you know, in that kind of, you know, I just have a small question. So I see you have all these, you know, plans to furnishing accountability, whether it be these visits, you know, these meetings and all that. But, you know, I think we all know, not every school is going to still even meet those requirements even with these measures. So are, what's really the next step after like, oh, you know, can you guys do this? And if a school still really isn't meeting the standards and not really following everything SIP wants them to do, are there any measures even after that to ensure that every school is properly meeting it past just visits or recommendations?
So, so the first would be ensuring that we've deployed the supports and resources that, that are needed, right? And so you, you provide those, those resources. How they're utilized at the school is, a lot of it is dictated by the, by the leader, by the principal. But like I was saying, we have a professional growth system where there are 10 standards. The principals, you know, we're, we're going out and doing our goal-setting meetings right now, where we review those 10 standards. And there's a, there's a system of accountability and, and supports that are provided through that process that when and, and if needed to be used, need to be used, because they're, they're there really at the end of the day for, for kids and ensuring that they have the leader that they need in their building.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll ask one question for the, in the interest of time. And again, it's about accountability system-wide, so I'm, I'm thrilled with what I'm hearing. And I, I think you got an invitation to the Strategic Planning Committee to present on how things are going throughout the year. But how do you, as the district leaders, how do you monitor this district-wise so that you have all these directors going out and meeting quarterly with everyone? How do you know? Your chart, who's doing well, who needs more support? How do you monitor it system-wide?
So there are a few ways. One, we have an internal mechanism within our office, which is a tracker. So it's, I can log on as the acting chief and see where has Peter visited and for what purpose. Someone, someone brought up the Equity Specialists, they are assigned. We just met to talk about how do we incorporate them into the support teams for schools that are having issues or where they need supports, not necessarily issues. So the tracking mechanism we have would show who visited, when, where, frequency, the focus of the visit, the coaching. And we always ask, the team's going to laugh at me, what is the impact? Because if we're going and we don't have an impact, did we just waste our time in theirs? There's got to be, there's got to be something we left them with. So that's one. The other thing we're working on with the Office of Strategic Initiatives are creating teams here at Central Office that are focused on the tracking and monitoring, and they are aligned to the milestones. And so that's another way where there are processes and structures internally here at Central Office, which will have the same frequency, schools are looking at it. So we are monitoring and able to, the reciprocal accountability piece.
Okay, thank you. I would like to learn more about that and also recognize the, I like the focus on the leadership, school leaders and directors as kind of doing, being the instructional leaders that we want them to be, not just the operations manager of a building or crisis management for directors and so forth. But I recognize that has to happen as well. So I just want to be, I want to recognize that I like the direction, but it is a huge workload because the crisis management and the operations also needs to happen. So these are very challenging jobs, and I, I thank you for, for the work. I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
And thank you for acknowledging the team. If there ever was a team of director and associates that could get this done, it's the group of individuals that are in here, and I'm so honored to be able to work alongside them and their commitment to our students. At the end of the day, it's all about our kids and changing outcomes for them. So thank you, team.
Thank you so much for the presentation. You know, I, as I say to people, this is where the rubber hits the road, right? This is where the change is going to happen. So the, a successful implementation of a school improvement process county, county-wide is how we're going to see those, those yellows turn to green and those reds turn to yellow. So I really appreciate the work. I'm very supportive and look forward to update, updates throughout the year. Okay, so we are now up to our agenda item nine, consent items. And I will ask my colleagues if they have anything that they would like to pull. I would like to pull item 9.1.
Yes, I would like to pull 9.16, Woodward's Road Future School Site Telecommunications Lease Agreement.
Thank you.
I have. Nine eleven, nine twelve, nine thirteen, and nine fourteen.
Eleven, twelve.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. So we're going to pull nine one, nine eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen. Can I get a motion to move the rest and block?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous with those present. Okay, so let's start with nine eleven. I just need to abstain from that one, so we can start with nine eleven.
Oh, that's me. Yeah. Sorry, it's been a long day. Long day. Just wanted to, got a couple calls about our whole after-school and after-care in our schools. So I just want, if anybody is here from staff that can brief us on the process, how that is selected, are we still doing it through CUF? Are we, do we still have the parent involvement, the school involvement?
Is this the same question for all of you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Seth.
You, you have to do this too? Oh.
Yes, that is, that is a great question. So, so as you know, and as the, you know, the information talks about, that there was a change in the overall process, actually it stopped. The process, and this is a, is a pilot process. So what we're going through right now is, it's, it's different than what it used to be. It's managed by MCPS procurement, but it is intended to, you know, go through a process, select for these four schools that do not currently have providers, and then come back and reflect on what improvements can be made. But what I can tell you is very different about this process is that each community filled out a survey. So every, every family received a survey that talked about in terms of what is important to them around the before and after-care program. It could be anything from services to, you know, to costs, to scholarships. That information was provided to providers as part of the overall RFP. The providers submitted through an RFP, and then it was a two-step. They submitted their, their, basically their application. It was reviewed to see if it met the criteria, and then it went into an interview process, again, to make sure that their, their approach meets the family's needs of those individual schools. So each, each one obviously went through that process for these four, and it was reviewed by a, a larger committee, not, not from an individual school standpoint, that, that is from the survey. But from a consistency standpoint, we, we created a community that reviewed each application that included everyone from community use public facilities to our, our, our union partners to, to, you know, obviously different principals and, and other stakeholders that are involved in the global process, but not from an individual school perspective. And then ultimately, what we're asking you to do today is to review this, approve it from a lease, and then we will obviously, community use public facilities would administer these particular leases. So it's a little different than what it was before. The, the previous was that community, the Board of Education basically assigned at the beginning the authority of community use public facilities to go through this process. This pilot process is we were doing it on the front end and then assigning the administration to community use public facilities after the procurement process.
So then, so my additional question would be the involvement of, of the, the parents, so the community per, per school. Each school has different demographics and different components. So just using like the Harry Tubman in Gays' Park, right? I guess my concern is, I'm just going to go to it, when we do surveys to families, the inclusivity of how we do those surveys, do we do it in Spanish? We do, do we do it in the languages that those parents can actually? And most importantly, sometimes even parents have a hard time with those surveys. So I just going, going to, we just heard about, you know, that this whole school improvement plan, this kind of, in my mind, goes hand in hand with that. So just assuring how we're getting that participation, because the care for children before and after school, in my opinion, are so vital to parents. And having been the chair of CUF for 11 years, one of the things that was one of our concerns and one of the things we saw is that the majority of parents who used the, the care before and after were never involved in the process of choosing who that care provider was going to be. And then there were issues of access and language and, and all that. And it created a lot of anxiety for the parents and for the kids. So I'm trying to see, I kind of like that we have control over this with my board hat, but I just want to make sure that, that we are mindful of that and who, who has that piece and who's in charge of the piece, so that way that we have the input, if that makes sense.
And that is great feedback. And again, as part of the pilot, the, the, the beauty of this process is while these schools did not have before and after-care, you know, sort of sister-adjacent schools were picking up the, the- were picking up the, the, you know, that, that work for them. So we were transporting students to those schools. So we obviously worked with the families that were already engaged and already involved in this, even though it wasn't at their individual school. But that is part of this process, is to go back afterwards and, and get feedback on how to improve it, including from the family perspective. But I can tell you, the schools like, and that's why you see different providers for each one of these, the schools like Harriet Tubman, the feedback from parents around what is most important to, to them for before and after-care resulted in a provider that focuses on, on different elements of before and after-care and what is, you know, how they navigate, you know, the tuition or, or, you know, different aspects of that community. So I, I do think there's some definite positives to build off of. We're not finished, but I do, I do take your feedback very seriously, and that'll be part of the process.
Mr. Said?
Yeah, so looking at 9.16 Woodward Road is future school site. So there has been, you know, a little bit of concern from the community, but I just want to look at the telecommunications transmission facilities policy. And so when doing these kind of leases, it must show that there's not going to be an impact on the school site in operation. So I just wanted to ask, what is the, the plan, if any, for the future school site here? You know, when will that happen? And just ballpark, obviously, because I know you don't have the specific details. But I know this is, this lease is going to take place in the next five years. Are there any plans in the next five years for anything going on at this facility?
And that's a great question as well. So we have, can't remember off the top of my head, but it's probably about 15 sites. And then we obviously have a whole slew of closed schools that are part of our portfolio. But before we would engage in any form of lease, we really take a step back and look at our long-term planning in that geography area. You know, so, so the Woodward Road site is, is actually located in the McGruder Cluster, but it is adjacent to Gaithersburg, very adjacent to Watkins Mill. So for example, this one, when engaging in a discussion around, you know, doing another lease or a five-year lease for this particular site, we're, we're looking at Lake Forest Development. We're looking at something like that in terms of what would that, what would that mean to a property like this? What is the timeline of it? Would we need that within that five years? Or is the development going to push out? Or is any of the enrollment growth going to cause any, anything that we would need that site sooner? So, so yes, we absolutely do that evaluation for every one of these leases. And while, you know, a Lake Forest type of development may impact this property at some point in the future, within this five-year lease, it, it is not something that we would be looking at from a, from an immediate CIP perspective around a new school.
Okay, perfect. And just to kind of reiterate, you know, it, it could go to 15 years, but every five years, we're going to have to reconsider it. So if there are plans in the next 15 years, they'll be reconsidered every five years?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. That's all the questions I had.
Okay. And as I mentioned, 9.1, it's the out-of-school time. I am a board member of one of the organizations, so I'm going to abstain from that vote. Are we ready to vote? Okay, so if we can get, get a motion for, to approve 9.1?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that is Mr. Said, Ms. Harris, Mrs. Evans, Ms. Rivera-Evan, and Ms. Yang. I will abstain. Okay, we no longer have them, so thank you. And can I get a motion to move 9/11, 9/12, 9/13, 9/14, and 9/16 and block? I said that.
So moved? Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item 10, which is information only, but Ms. Harris, I think you want to do a shout-out?
Yes. I did want to draw everyone's attention in the vast listening audience to items 10.1 and 10.5. 10.1 is our monthly construction progress report. I love that report. And then the 10.5 is the quarterly update on designing construction contracts for special projects. And I think both of these, especially the monthly construction progress report, go to how well and how much I appreciate the way the school system is, is, is managing our big capital projects despite all the inflationary pressures and the supply chain disruptions and the labor cost increases from the, you know, pandemic, post-pandemic timeframe. And if you look at these, we acknowledge in almost all of them, we'll say, we're still experiencing supply chain disruptions and, and things, so we're a little bit behind. But it's, we, we were, we were hoping to be, you know, 75% done, and we're, you know, 72% done. And I'm, we are doing a really good job as a system of managing these projects despite the delays, and that is yet one, a way that we are really looking to serve our communities well by getting these projects done and keeping them on track. So I am very much appreciative of that work and how these reports keep us apprised of how that work is happening.
Thank you so much for that recognition. So that is for information only. And now, if I could move 11, 11/1 and through 11/3 and block? Could I get a motion?
Some of them are moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. Okay, next item is 11.4, the appointment of student member of the board to committees. I need the resolution, please.
It's okay if we can just, do you want to just summarize the committees that are on the resolution?
I don't know.
The point, okay. So the, I'm sorry, it's, it's an appointment of Sammy, as a SMOB, to the Policy Management Committee and to Communication and Stakeholder Engagement Committee.
Okay.
For the, for his term.
Did I get a motion? Move approval?
I'll second, even though he would not take a place on the fiscal management committee.
All in favor, raise your hands. You vote, you shelf in, yeah. That's unanimous, congratulations. All right, board members, do we have any new business items? CNN 12.0 is informational summaries for information's purposes only, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands. And that is unanimous. We are adjourned.